Um, we actually have a large group here today. I suspect you're all here for the length of service award program. And so we're going to move that first to allow everyone the opportunity to leave early if they'd like. So someone presented.
If on you. Oh, there it is.
Good evening.
Longest to have the time. As more you have all the backup that was included. What we're asking. We have a large force of all volunteer firefighters that, you know, as you saw last night tirelessly are going to be hours that they're not going to get back for their families. There's a length of service award program that many, many other departments in our county participate in. And you have the list of those departments. I think it's twenty three six partners. We have a representative Patrick from the company that we have been working with to get a proposal together to estimate what the cost of would be for our department to participate in it. What we're asking for is for the board to entertain the idea so that our firefighters that had given thirty forty years, we get somewhere else is looking for what they've done. And the newer firefighters coming in to get some recognition for what they're doing. It's getting harder and harder to live here, especially when you're given half of your time to the problem today. So okay, I don't have anything else for you unless you have some sort of questions, but Patrick will probably be better off answering those. Thank you.
Thank you.
And there's a folder with information that we Patrick gave for the board to take a look at. I can't see Patrick right.
Would you like to come up?
Is this?
If you could explain what the program is for everyone who doesn't know what it is, that would be great.
Thank you. My name is Patrick. I am from VFIS, which is the victim of a fire or a stormtroop in your Pennsylvania. Thankfully, the weather held for me on the drive up here. A little windy, but it's not the worst for where. So what I thought I would do is leave the board and for you in the audience as well, go through some broad strokes, just basic what we voted here. And then I can answer, we can dig into any number on the on this paper that you would like to look at. So so in a sense, Lo Sap length of service award program is defined in this case, a defined benefit program. Where the way we quoted it was the maximum allowed by by New York, thirty dollar per year of service, fifty year maximum for total of the fifteen hundred dollar monthly benefit upon entitlement. Now that would be if you got every single year up to fifty years, you get a fifteen hundred dollar monthly benefit. But New York allows you to look back five years. So even someone with a twenty five year experience, give them twenty five good years of service, New York only allows you to look back five years, in fact, the preceding five years. So if if this were to go into effect, one one twenty twenty five, it would be twenty twenty through twenty twenty four is the most look back you could get. So the most someone could come into the plan with would be five years and thirty dollars or a one hundred and fifty dollar benefit at entitlement per month. So that is a a lifetime benefit per month. So if a member ended up getting twenty years of good service at entitlement age, they'd have twenty times thirty dollars or six hundred dollar monthly benefit for life. So they lived until ninety five, they would get that monthly benefit every year until like five. But it's also with a ten year guarantee, a ten year certain, which is if they passed away, maybe two years after they started collecting, their beneficiary would be entitled to the next eight years of payments. So the tenure guarantee. The way we quoted it was with a five year cliff vesting that is kind of defined by New York in in article eleven eight or. So they say five year clip is typical, you can go faster than that. I've never seen anybody go faster than that. But what that means is years zero through four are meaningless in terms of best thing if you have that fifth year, you are hundred percent vested to benefits. There's some actuarial assumptions on there that I don't think it's necessary to go into now. What's your questions? But there's also what drives costs here. I know that's an important consideration is how the plan would invest its assets. So what you get with VFIS, you have access to a three percent guaranteed floor group annuity contract. Guaranteed three percent every single year. That is not how you have to be. We do ask if you are going to do something like this to invest at least half of your money there, but you could look to outside investors. So if you wanted to take on a little market risk for higher returns. And in that case, lower costs, we have those options as well. And I included that in your packet. So that's an important consideration when you're looking at these costs. There's the green section and the blue section. The blue section has a lot of lower numbers and that's because that's the assumption where the plan would invest some of its assets outside of the market. A little more exposure to the market, raise higher gains, lower your costs. Some people are comfortable with that. We have a number of plans in New York doing that now. Some people aren't. Some people are very happy to be guaranteed three percent year after year. So just to touch on the cost of there are basically three different scenarios. You'll you'll see in the green section and the blue section, three columns.
I'm sorry, but there's no blue or well, there's. Oh, okay. I didn't have that. Sorry. I'm like, I'm not seeing a difference in colors. I'm not colorblind, but all right, thank you.
These topics are going to vary as we move across the columns, but just to give you an example specifically on the green section at four point two five percent. So the green section is if you were only invest money in the three percent guaranteed floor.
Okay, it happens. They're volunteers that we get.
So this would be the more expensive option because you're not investing outside. But to let you know what these numbers mean, the admin fee, so just looking at the sixty five entitlement.
What area is it? What area? Oh, I'm sorry. Televised, but you can.
So just to pick out a single couple, just pick out a single column. There's a lot of options here. So if you have questions, I can answer. But I would like to look at sixty five age entitlement. That's the first column in the green section. Five year amortization. So there's a lot on here, but the administrative and actuarial fee, that's the only money that would come to VFIS. So in this case, six thousand five hundred twenty. And these are all annual cost goals. The investment deposit normal cost is the ongoing annual contribution that you'd be putting in long term. The amortization, the investment deposit amortization is kind of that startup cost. With any plan like this, you don't have all eighteen year olds coming in fresh. You have people who are at entitlement age or nearing it. And so they already have some benefits earned if you were to start a plan like this. So so there would be, we would take that amount that we prefer to have an asset right now, and we would set it on a five year plan or a ten year plan and say, let's get caught up in five years or in ten years on that. Unfunded liability. So if you went with the five year option, that amortization would be about one point one five million. The recommended deposit, the worry, so this will be the total annual, totally annual for for year one through year five will be about one point three four five million. After that period, after the amortization period, the amortization drops off, you'll be down to about two hundred thousand, one hundred and ninety six thousand per year as a long term cost. Now, of course, all of these numbers change. If you look at a ten year amortization, if instead you want to take ten years to pay that off, your total cost for ten years will be eight hundred and thirty thousand. And then after that, hundred ninety six thousand. So that's the idea behind these numbers. As you decrease your entitlement age, the amount still up because if you entitle someone at fifty five, if you say you can begin collecting at fifty five, well, they have ten more years of of life to live and ages to get, right? So that's why costs go up there. But all of the numbers that I'm that you see in green go down when you look to look. So if you were to say, but we we'd be comfortable having some of our money invested outside of the market to to get higher gains or higher assumed rate of return. Those costs go down. So in the blue section, same sixty five age entitlements. In the five year amortization, you'd be looking at a little over a million, so one point oh six eight million. And in the ten year, six point six two or six hundred and sixty two thousand for ten years before that amortization drops. So there's a lot of decision making and a lot of cost fluctuation based on how the money is invested. But I think you can see in every column, you you you're basically choosing what entitlement age would be like. And the cost is based on how that money would be invested. I know I went through that very quickly, but anything in terms of plan specifications or any of the numbers.
Yep. So the green is used to guarantee three percent and the blue section is if we were to go out to the market.
Correct. Yeah. And you could use your own financial advisor. We could certainly recommend one. I left the recommendation in your packets. A gentleman named Ed Bird with Academy Financial has been working well beside us for this.
So can you explain to me if we have someone who's been a volunteer for the last thirty years? And we were to do this now and it starts January of twenty twenty five? What does that look like for them?
Okay, so for that person, it's New York law, you can only look back five years. And specifically the five proceeding to to plan startup. So if they gave a good year of service in twenty twenty through twenty twenty four, they would come in with five years of service. Earn that. Now you have to earn the first year to get those as well. So that would give them six years of service. At thirty dollars or a hundred and eighty dollar monthly benefit. Now, important to mention there too, they can continue to earn. Even though they're collecting, they can continue. If they get another good year of service, you could be eighty two. If you're still participating, you're still giving a good year of service, you can collect another thirty dollars that would just add your benefits. That's what we call post entitlement. Those costs aren't shown here. I did quote those in an email, so I can pull those numbers if you need to, but those those costs wouldn't be shown for at least a few years after plant startup. So they're not included at the referendum numbers because they're not year one costs. But I can give, I actually have the numbers if you want me to read them off. Like how much that will cost in a few years?
No, if we can get copies, I don't need to read them off. Go ahead. I do have another question.
No, keep going.
So being that it's a volunteer group, although I know our group is amazing, I'm sure not every group is as, you know, strong with participation. So can you please explain to me the difference between me walking in tomorrow and signing up to be a volunteer and someone who shows up for every call during the week? How do you, you know, because what I I would love to see more volunteers and give them a better benefit. But what I don't want is two hundred people walking in and thinking they're going to get a pension when they're not actually supporting the fire department. So can you explain that?
Absolutely. So luckily, New York is very detailed when it comes to Lo Sap. They they kind of wrote the book on it. They have the most rigorous set of laws on it. They define how to earn that good year of service. It's a it's a fifty point system and they literally write it down. It's in article eleven A. They detail exactly how you can earn those fifty points. It's a combination of a percent of total calls that you respond to plus meetings, plus leadership roles, things like that. But for good or bad, it's they define it in detail so that you have a perfect blueprint on where to go. So they don't make it terribly difficult, but also you can walk in and just hear.
Okay, I only have two more questions and then I'll turn this over. What if for some reason there's a gap of a gap of volunteering? So you are out of the state for some reason, you've been disabled temporarily. You know, you changed jobs, you can't volunteer this year, you come back. How does that affect it? So that you just lose that one year?
It depends. So if you, so there is a disability provision in there. So if you're, if you become disabled as a result of actively volunteering, there is, you you basically get your benefit beginning at that time. So so there's a disability benefit, there's a death benefit as well. And that is amounts to be the present value of the benefit. If you leave, let's say you, it's a five year cliff vest. So you get up to four years and you say, you know what? I'm moving out of the area or I'm not participating anymore. It's up to the plan to say who's terminated from the from the the Lo Sap. So they could say, well, if they moved away, they're they're probably not coming back. We're going to terminate. If you're terminated, the plan can decide when you come back, whether they want to grant you those years from the past or not. That's just something the plan can put into their document and say, this is how we want to treat these situations. Whether we want to start them back at zero or give them the three or four years they have previous. But if they have five or more and they move or whatever, that benefit will be waiting for them when they entitle.
Okay, and from the research that I've done, I just want to see if I'm if I'm correct or not. First, it has to go through a board of trustees and we would have to vote to move that forward. But then it needs to go to a referendum for the vote of the public.
So it's it's sixty percent at the political subdivision level, your level has to pass with sixty percent. And then a simple majority wants it goes to referendum. You know, referendum. That can be a special or a general vote. We can, we can talk more about that, but it has to, it has to happen between thirty and ninety days of the first vote.
It would have to start.
So so once you vote it, if it were.
Oh, after we voted, it would have to be thirty.
Thirty days later, twenty thirty and ninety has to, that referendum has to happen in that window.
Okay, but it could go through the general election or it would have to be a special election.
Thank you. Bob, our lawyer is.
I have it, so.
Yes, thank you.
What what happens to individuals who have already retired if they're not participate or they will be at that five year?
Oh, I'm so sorry. What happens for the individuals who are early retired possibly in the last year or two? And are still living, good thanks. What happens to them and their families?
Our article eleven A says if you want to grant any past service up to five years, they have to earn a year moving forward in order to get those past five. So if someone were retired and not coming back, unfortunately, they would not be able to be granted any years.
Yep. And then I guess I will go to the fire department. I'll ask the question, how many of your recent have you had, do you have any people who just recently retired? That want to benefit from this?
I don't know if they have retirements.
I mean, but I mean, do they not? I mean, when they just say, okay, we go out until we go out, right?
They shift into a different.
Based on the participation.
So it seems like everybody participates on some level, right?
So we'll have to actually read the guidelines for what that participation is and make sure they have it and can look at it and see.
Yeah. And one of the things that been brought up by your question, I just wanted to mention the cost that you see here were built under the assumption of maximum cost. So when we see that someone had been a member for thirty years, when I built the quote, I just assumed, okay, they're going to get five years of past service. So every time that's not the case, the cost would come down. Okay, so this was built under, again, the maximum cost you could see in here based on the roster that this provided.
Just do a couple of points to bring up. Madam, just so as you know, we've for the community, we've added significantly had money to the fund balance over the last six years. I think we had about five million. And that's part of that, I think, is, you know, we're able to realize savings or we don't have a whole budget because we have a volunteer fire department. If you look at some of the backup that was provided to you, the costs for paid departments and neighboring municipalities, and that's only the salary costs. You're right now, our fringe benefit rate village wide is eighty percent. And it might actually be higher for emergency service workers. And obviously, the the five year payback is our look back is as a to give, you know, recognition to the long serving members of the department. I mean, I think we have you know, many twenty, thirty, forty, fifty year members, so.
Yeah, that's it.
The I guess my question is life slave. I mean, I I think that there's it takes a while to develop the plan. I know that you've done the numbers, but before we can adopt this local law, it will take a little bit of time. So in your experience, is it usually done in a special election or is it done in the November referendum?
It's been done both ways. Typically, in a special election, you get a more favorable voter base, to be honest, but we've seen it done both ways. And you're right, there there is some startups, there's planned off the drafting and everything. I do want to just take twenty seconds, just mention what what we do as, you know, for that service fee, that's six thousand five hundred twenty eight. We we do all the monthly payments. We have a payment team that we we partner with that cuts all the checks, all the monthly checks. We do all the administration. If members have questions, they can call us. You get access to that group annuity contract. You get a dedicated pension administrator that you have a direct line to that will, you know, when you call, they pick up the phone. We always answer our calls. So our service is top notch. The what we charge is in in my opinion, based on the other costs when you compare it to what you would be contributing to fund this, a very, very small portion, but you get a lot for it. So we we would help you. We can be of help with the plan document, questions about referendum, all that. We have a lot of experience. We've been doing Lo Sap since pretty much since Lo Sap started in the early nineties. We have hundreds of plans. That doesn't mean that that, you know, you don't get the the service you certainly.
And so if so when we talk about, I mean, you know, obviously, if the sooner, the longer it takes to do this, the more people who might retire and not qualify for it. But it's possible that there are people who have recently retired who aren't going to be able to qualify for that. But when you talk about if somebody wants to come back, who is the plan? Is the plan? Is it the village, the village, the village? Is it somebody designated from your office? Is it somebody from the fire department? Like, how do they figure that out?
Very good question. So we'll use terms like plan sponsor, which will be the village. Basically, the plan sponsor is the sole fiduciary. So who's in control of the assets and making those contributions? There would be an appointed plan administrator from your side. So typically, it's it's either chief or or someone, you know, high up in the.
Treasure or somebody who deals with finances.
And then that's the person that has all the contact with us and that's kind of a conduit between village and us as the pensioner or as the Lo Sap administrator is that we actually only communicate with the people who you say we can't communicate with.
Okay. Yeah. Lou, I know you're on Zoom. Do you have any questions?
No, I think I'm I think I'm clear on this. I think you've asked all my questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The chief stepped out. He went on the call. Is there someone? I do I see a former chief up there or? Okay, I have a question about how many volunteers we have.
I think we probably have about two hundred, was it about sixty of which are interior certified? Ninety interior certified?
But there's also active that are interior, who's with other drivers.
Yeah.
So how many volunteers do we have who are actively participating? Give or take, just like an approximate.
You come to the mic if you can answer.
Oh, sorry about that. Yes, thank you, ma'am. And just.
But Robert Dacenski, I haven't been authorized by chief to speak, just going off the numbers, the five companies, each one averages around forty members. I can't tell you how interactive each company. I have a rough idea of what's in mind because I haven't been authorized by chief to speak. I really can't give you a number right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I can tell you there was about two hundred that we quoted.
Okay, so you quoted on them, but we don't know if they would qualify based on article eleven A for participation.
That's what that's why these numbers again are are the maximum cost, maximum startup cost. Just that's what you need to find out.
So I and I have sort of one more. I I do have one more question. So since we don't know whether it's a hundred, a hundred and fifty, two hundred, these numbers are sort of a guesstimate. I mean, they're they're accurate. They're high, but they're accurate for a given number, but we don't know. I'm making, I assume, and I and I could be, I'm likely, I don't know if I'm right or wrong, that in order for us to adopt the law, do we have to, because I guess we are adopting a law subject to referendum, do we have, we have to have kind of a more firm number and the plan documents drafted?
I I don't think you need to. I think you want to be as accurate as you can. Don't know that you need a full plan document draft. I'll leave that to your legal representation.
But I think isn't the language in the law that what has what has to be part of the referendum question? You have to identify a number of items like like what the court, what the annual court, what the initial cost is, what the annual cost is. So I think that that is part of the the question. Sorry, Bob.
That's far off the top of my head. I think, yes, you don't have to have a plan document project that the information, basic information. I'll go back and look at the statute. If it's something you want to think about, we'll go back and.
So I guess I'm just thinking about timing. It has, they they have to, they have to start January first of a given year. Right?
The point system, so so it's based on a calendar year. So it would have to be the point system. So when you are counting those fifty minutes and calls and meetings, that has to occur one one to twelve thirty. The actual plan here can be something different.
Yeah, I can't imagine you would start every single plan on this one day of the entire year.
We have a lot of one ones, but also a lot of free ones.
No, it's just in the in some of the documents on like the state website, it says that the plans start January first. I'm just trying to figure out like what would be a what? How you do it, like if 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 it's at a November referendum? Do you write the plan afterwards? Yeah, I'm just. Okay, I think the rest of my questions, I'd really have to ask the chief. Since he's not here, I'm gonna reserve those until I have a chance to talk to him. Is there anyone else who's speaking on this or?
I don't think anybody else is a chief.
So thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate your time. If you have any other questions for the chief to give you my email address, I'll leave a couple parts here as well. There's a lot, obviously, it's a big decision. There's a lot to be told behind all this. So if you have any further questions.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Is there anything that we discussed or we can find? All right. I I guess the question is, do we discuss it at the next work session? Do we discuss it? Do we wait?
Well, because we have more questions, we we have to talk to the chiefs and because the chief said to leave, this is something that has to go into the next work session.
Okay, so I know a lot of you are here for the fire department. We do not have, we have more questions that we're going to ask the chief when we can get to him. So we're going to put this off to the January work session to have another conversation. So hopefully we'll see you then. You're welcome to stay, but if you're ready to leave, we're going to move on to old business.
Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen.
And and to Patrick, maybe you can zoom next time as opposed to driving from New York, Pennsylvania in a in a potential snowy day.
Who was the first one?
Okay.
Who's the first item? It's Listwick. It's just just. Do we have a motion for Listwick? So moved? All in favor?
All right.
Okay, there you go. So it's.
To do what? So what do we have a motion for? I'm sorry, I just got. What did we make the most?
No, we don't have to look. It doesn't have a name attached. It's a.
I guess that was. Yeah, so go ahead, Manny.
When I remember we talked about it at one of the meetings and I wondered if you're how we can, you know, revitalize this. Yep. So we can revitalize this committee. I remember Bob said there was a question about if we had any, if we had to contribute any money to this. And I just think that was why I wanted it, wanted this as the backup, that these are their bylaws. Or this their agreement. So I just wanted to know what, if we wanted to participate, is there anything like stop, anything in this this agreement that they have from, you know, when they began this agreement in nineteen ninety eight, what can, what is stopping us from revitalizing this committee or being a part of this? Or being a part of this? It's not the city of America.
From retrospect, I wasn't satisfied. That the bylaw provide for entering into contracts. Leases, I think, for poverty. And if you're gonna do that, the money has to come from somewhere.
Yeah.
There's no real provision that's really very punctual. But that was just my concern.
And would you suggest that we? Because I know we participate in this report, so if we participate in this report, are you suggesting that we have like a budget line of an item of amounts to commit to? And should we go up that pass it, or is it something that we should? Because I want to address that concern. Like, I don't want us to really go into this and.
I'm just concerned about another group committing to the village to spend.
So from my understanding, there is an annual fee, or there was an annual fee at the time. I are they still active? Because we're not participating. Right, so we would have to actually get other people, and so that might change the charter. Because we're starting from nothing. So what is the question?
I'm looking for us to either start this up again or figure out if other groups are interested in starting this up again.
What is your proposed? Was your, what is your idea of how to start it up? Because I I've. I've spoken to um Neurashell. And they they were explaining to me how the program used to be and how hard it is to get it reestablished or to get participation. Um but then I also think, I've also, I forgot who I spoke to. It it I think the reason why it kind of like disappeared is because. Once they were on a track and they got themselves together, then it stopped on a county level. The county, the county wasn't really supportive on that. And I that could be wrong. I don't know, but that's what it was told to me. So. We're we definitely in in a age of individualism and everything is about me, me. And so I don't know what, how do you propose asking other uh municipalities? Because when I asked, it wasn't. People weren't so forthcoming.
I think I can provide a little more context on this. I was very.
Was I talking to you? Yeah, I think I was talking to you.
I I I was very active in it for a very long time. Um I I think, you know, one of the the things that really did keep us organized is we we had a force of nature who was. Chairing the committee and uh former town council when uh Phyllis Whitner. Uh and we had uh achieved a number of uh uh objectives. We'd gotten several grants that were. Uh there was an education grant that I can't recall if it was the Village of Amerenek or Town of Amerenek that. Uh got on behalf of the municipality, predated by working in government. Uh and then uh there was the grant to do a study for the a regional stormwater management district, which I was. Yeah, very involved with. Uh and we had gotten to a point where we had developed a report. We were, you know, working on legislation. Uh to create a regional stormwater management district at a state level, but. Uh there was little support at that time. For was a another level of government. So there's just no political support at the state level. And then, you know, things kind of, you know, petered out a little bit. Uh but you know, the genesis is that Captain Parker was looking to help resurrect. Liz would get us back together, uh really dealing with both water quality and water quantity issues. On a reasonable level. Uh and uh the uh I think it was back in late twenty. Twenty-one or twenty twenty-two that the uh then city manager of New Rochelle was gonna. Ask uh his corporation council's office to look at the bylaws, develop uh new bylaws and a new IMA and. Again, there's nothing really follows that, yeah. So that's kind of the short, short version of of Lizwick.
Do you want all of us, I mean, in the board, to? Uh you know, to ask the the various different municipalities?
I think so. I think it's just, I think we, I think this is another layer of mitigation. If we can kind of, if we can come together for any type of grant or any kind of. Conversations for people to tackle both issues of water quantity and quality. I think that would be very beneficial to us as a village, because all the water ends up. Here in our community, I just think we're not, we need to have some type of agreement or some type of meetings or conversations of what we can do for our region. For our area here. And if that's me reaching out to the past member, well, now those past communities. So be it, that sounds, that's great, but I just think I I I really believe this is something we should be doing.
I agree.
I've I've I know I have support from, you know, legislature to Parker. We've talked about it before. She's come to some flood mitigation meetings and and has mentioned it. And I think if we, if if Dan's mentioning it's like it gets to the state and kind of gets slow, then I'm happy to reach out to Shelley and Steve and. Our state representatives to figure out how we can garner some some more support, but.
Well, considering a lot of these signatures from ninety-nine, we've had like really big storms since then.
We've had.
So I'm I'm hoping that more communities will possibly want to. Um it's just taking on the legwork in terms of organization. So if you want to do it, you tell me what you want, you need me to do, and then I'll go ahead and do. Do that. Um I think this is a great opportunity for. For all of these communities that are listed to come up with a stormwater water management. Plan together, like everybody having the same um policies and so.
So Dan, who was, who was the representative from the village or not the name, but like their job, their title? Was it an elected person or a committee person or?
I think the the way the bylaws were, it was, there was flexibility in who the village could appoint. I recall me being the, one of the uh liaisons, but I recall when I first, I think my first Lizwick meeting. Uh Kathy was the liaison, uh Kathy Sable, former, she was trustee Sable then. Uh I think.
I think I think we had, it was, I mean.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I think it was, I think it was like a trustee and the village manager, the people that could have.
You know, it was usually a combination of, it was either usually professional staff or a combination of professional staff and an elected official.
And at one point, you said that they were in the process of reorganizing their bylaws.
I think attempting to. I think I think that was.
So who was, do we, who, do we know who was trying to reorganize the bylaws?
I think um the city manager, the retired city manager in the Rochelle was gonna have the um. Uh the uh uh his corporation council's office work on that. I was involved in the last drafting of the bylaws, which I think was twenty eleven.
So the, is that?
I can speak to that person, the person I spoke with that was telling me about this with. And see what they have a um a updated.
I know for sure twenty eleven was the last set of bylaws as I prepare them.
Well, I I mean, this fits into the requirements, you know, the governor's requirements for. Post-Ida money to try and have communities work together for both water quality and flood mitigation, so. I think we should. Do what we can to resurrect it.
So what does that look like?
I mean, I I think it's for if, you know.
Again, to see if they have any updated um bylaws or anything, uh proposal. And then are we gonna reach out to other municipalities?
And then I just think I want to look at this list of the other municipalities and we can start reaching out to their, either their boards and or and their kind of. Administrator or manager or whoever the head of their, you know, um municipality is.
Maybe we just write to everybody.
Yeah, because we can draw, I can have a letter drafted and we can just send it out widely and that'd be great.
We could also create a Zoom meeting and just. So instead of it being a lot of back and forth.
Yeah, we could do that.
If you want to connect, like create a date, January, give them plenty of time to plan.
Yeah.
So who's doing this?
I'll be volunteered for something.
I'm I'm happy to work with your staff, the director or myself, and to correspond with a meeting in January.
Thank you. So moving on.
So that's Manny and Leilani. Got it.
Mayor, can I weigh in on this?
Oh, look, it came through.
Um my my only concern is that, uh and I think it's a great thing that that we should, we we should pursue this, but the size of it seems uh strikes me as. Potentially unwieldy, and I have um uh uh I have doubts as to whether anyone. Of the other participants are gonna share our sense of urgency on the floodwater um uh part of it. So I I I, while I would, I would encourage it, I'd be be happy to support reviving this. I don't think it in any way should. Um uh preclude our our pursuit of bilateral or multilateral. Um agreements with surrounding municipalities uh uh to to deal with the things that we're. Uh we're most concerned about, because I can see potential conflicts here, that somebody might be more interested in water quality than water volume. And um and and we're interested in water volume. So um uh you know, I could see there, there might be, there might be um.
Wouldn't that be in the first uh, the, like, if we have a Zoom meeting? See the president's, and if they don't, they're not the ones uh trying to get the band back together, so we would.
In other words, we're all about flooding, you know, so uh uh you know, I'm I'm not really, uh I'm interested, but I'm not terribly. I don't have any sense of urgency about any of the other things that they uh that they address. It's uh it's about flooding and uh and I and and some of the um. The bilateral outreach that we're we're, we we have been beginning to do with Harrison and and some other places that 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 I think that is probably. Potentially more fruitful and 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 maybe, you know, using the county. Um um I I there there should be a parallel track here. It shouldn't be, we shouldn't like do this and then figure it's taken care of, because I don't think it uh. I don't think it will uh uh address all our needs. It's a sense of urgency that I think may be lacking there. And you can see that people aren't participating, so they're not, they don't have a sense of urgency that we have. That's all. I'm just raising that that issue.
Would you say that water quality is greatly affected by flooding? And so to separate the two.
Because some.
Because flooding, you know, uh Washington.
Well, yeah, but but let's let's say, you know, we're 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 gonna be moving a lot of water out into the, out into the sound. We're moving a lot of water. Uh more quickly um uh um out of our community and and in and 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 into the uh into the uh in into the sound, into the harbor. And that may uh that may um not uh, that may not be the same thing that a lot of people want, you know?
Really my personal experience in that, the first time I ever came to a meeting in the Village of Amerenek was in two thousand and three. Uh and it was my former boss and Phyllis Whitner to talk about the concept of. A, you know, the regional stormwater management district, and it was really more of a water quality. You know, endeavor at that time. And as soon as we finished the presentation, there were people in the audience who jumped on their feet and started clapping, so. Uh it water quality, I think, is is obviously an important issue in the village.
Oh, this is me. Okay, um. I need to know. Where are we at with the rental registration?
I believe last time we gave you an example.
Yes.
The reason we chose that example would be because it was tested in court. To be constitutionally possible. If that's the direction the board wants to go, you can grant.
Can we back up for a second for anybody who doesn't know what we're talking about? Can you? Can somebody, not me, explain the emergency shelter and the rental registration just quickly?
So it's more so, I really don't know why the, because I asked about why the uh emergency shelter, which was, I think, something else. But it's more the rental registration. It's a. It it came about because during, during, throughout the storms, there are individuals who are. In space, who are in living quarters that could be illegal. Also, it could be, um there's too many, too many individ, too many individuals. Living in one uh particular room or space. And so, but we don't have jurisdiction um to either take care or help these individuals. Um so our rental registration program would help us um meet the needs of of those individuals. And I, from my understanding, this is something that came to the board prior to me being voted in. Um and this is something, uh and this is like specifically in the Washingtonville area, that um. The CRC uh Community Resource Center was also in favor of um supporting this type of um. Policy.
So how does the rental registration help people?
Can you answer that? It was, so.
What will it actually do?
What will actually do is that. It will limit the amount of people in 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 dwellings, because we have a lot of basement apartments, right? Um a lot of basement apartments where people are getting flooded. And too many people in one room, and it like, what was it, Ophelia? There were certain air, um certain areas in Washingtonville where you're like pulling out ten mattresses in one apartment. And those things are illegal. So um the rental registration will be able to register the individuals that are um. Holding the space or the um owners of these buildings, but also helping the individual, the the renters.
And part part of it is, in order to rent, you have to have a permit from the municipality, and that and that permit gives us the authority to do the.
So if I have a three family house that I want to rent out and I don't register, what happens?
How does a violation of code work?
If I'm a landlord. Put this in place, and I choose not to register.
I have people living there paying me money. Then what?
You could also put in civil penalties.
This would apply to single family, and Southampton applies to single family houses as well. So if you are renting out your house or a house. And um. And I know in Southampton, part of the concern was summer rentals. I mean, that 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 drove a lot of it. Um and. I'm curious as to what, I know if I've tested and it won, what were, there were some changes that had to be made, right? When it, when, when it was tested, or did the, did it win, or it was, or is this law? It's on the work session for us to discuss whether or not we would like to move forward.
Yes, with making any law, yes.
We don't start drafting until the board, majority board expresses an. An opinion, says, yes, go ahead and draft something for us to consider.
I do, and I'm okay with drafting, but that's up to everybody else.
I agree.
I'm okay with that.
I like the idea. I'd like to take some time to, I started reading, I read everything in the packet. I would like to do a little more research, but. So the fee is. It's a per unit fee. I mean, I guess the question is, Bob, you are more familiar, I mean, with. With what got changed in the Southampton law, but as I understand it, it's a per unit fee. Um so what, it's one to seven non-owner occupied units at one location. It's a hundred and fifty per unit. So it's a hundred and fifty for a single family house. Three hundred for a two family house and so on.
We're representing this just as an example, really, for, you can set the fee.
And it's it's an annual fee with the expectation that. Every unit is is re, is inspected every year. I, you know, this is also something Jerry had proposed, and I and I I know he's, he's got another. Obligation tonight, but um. I would imagine we would have to staff up to be able to do these inspections.
That's my question. Will we? Or what what is the, like, like Sharon pointed out, um if, let's say, like, I'm not that registered, like, is there, do we have to add an additional fee? To people violating the code, yeah.
I think the the first part is more of an administrative operational question. Uh and I think we would look to add personnel to administer and enforce the law. Um as far as the mechanisms for collecting fees or, you know, establishing penalties, that that's more of a policy. Matter for the board.
But isn't, do we, do we have the staff to do this already, like?
I think that's why we, we would probably look to add some additional staff.
So what is it that? You have this on. Are you looking for us to just?
Yeah, draft to review and then. Yeah, draft to review and then you could always always also, sorry in interim do whatever research that you need to do because it's not gonna be voted on, so we all vote on it, so it doesn't harm.
The board has experienced with someone's multiple tracks.
I moved that uh the ask Bob to um start drafting up uh rest of the law for rental registration.
We can just go, I mean, we can just come to a consensus to have it on the work session, the first work session in January, maybe?
I I think we have the consensus already, don't we?
You have what you need to go draft. Okay, right. And we can better discuss them once you've got the draft.
All right, if uh if nobody minds, as we move on, I see that we still have police officers here, who I believe wanna chat with us, um Jerry's not here tonight, so Chief, do you want to?
Introduce them. So the reason why we're here is there is an item which you're finding in business. So Chief Drew is at the police department. So um this information was in the newsletter about two months ago, so the those markets department has attempted to achieve New York State accreditation on and off for over twenty years under prior two chiefs as well. Um it was always the intention to try to attain this accreditation. Um it was also one of the recommendations they came up as part of the police reform and accreditation committee that was formed back in in two thousand and twenty. So um what we did was Lieutenant Galvin, who was a sergeant at the time, was assigned full time to that position. Um it took approximately eighteen months, um but we were finally able to get to the point where we had assessors come uh to evaluate policies and procedures and that was in September of this year. Uh just this past Thursday, we went up to the New York State Accreditation Council meeting where they officially approved us as a New York State accredited agency, um only thirty four percent of the departments in New York State currently have that status. So we were awarded with two plaques um at that meeting, so I would like to at least read the one here. It's a certificate of accreditation that states be it hereby known that the American Village Police Department has demonstrated a high level of excellence and professionalism in the field of law enforcement by meeting the standards established by the New York's, the New York State Law Enforcement Agency Accreditation Council. The council is proud to award accreditation to the agency for the period of December seventh, two thousand twenty-three through December sixth, two thousand twenty-eight. Um Lieutenant Galvin was also uh the recipient of award.
So this is the John Kimbo Neil Certificate of Achievement, so awarded to myself, um which is an individual award, but it really it's done in individual accomplishment, it was really a team accomplishment. Uh I wouldn't be able to receive this without my colleagues assistance. Um so in recognition of your leadership and dedication as Program Manager for the Agency's Law Enforcement Creation Program, you received the benefit of criminal justice services, acknowledged your significant contribution towards assisting an agency in achieving accreditation.
So we just give you a little bit of background, basically what that means is the department we may or exceed certain expectations of quality, um that we perform in a professional manner that we have formalized policies in place that um govern our operational practices and our employees contribute to the department's mission, um it's also important to maintain transparency with the village. So um very big achievement for us, many, 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 many years in the making, um so although we have achieved it, we still have to maintain it. So what does that mean? So basically, as part of New York State accreditation, there are a hundred and ten standards that have to be met. Part of those standards is you have to document um and have certificates of compliance for every policy that you add for those one hundred and ten standard. So once that's achieved, basically every quarter, you have to make sure that those standards of compliance are still maintained. You have to maintain much better folders and make sure you have all those documents in place because they are going to come to do a reassessment in five years and they look back over those prior five years to make sure that all those folders for all those standards are in place. So although we finally attained it, we still have much work to do, it's an ongoing process, so I just wanted to share that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for doing that.
And and part of the item was uh possibly establishing stipends for the members of the department who are gonna be involved in that tedious process of uh record keeping to maintain our accreditation and some of this done in some neighboring uh from as we have the uh large month, please pardon, which is also accredited So we got there first. Oh, it was not budgeted in the current year. Um so we would be see if this on the board would like to pursue, uh it would require either a transfer or supplemental appropriation.
Right, so I know when I was on the P R C with the team, uh that was three years ago and that's when the conversation started. It took eighteen months, was done in September. So we probably had an idea it might be coming when we did the budgets, but it's not budgeted, that's
Yeah, that's correct and honestly, it's 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 not eight, I mean, for you, it's eighteen months, for us, it's twenty years.
For me, it was three years.
Over three years, so I mean, it's been I I didn't think we, it was just a matter of knowing when we'd be in a final position to get there.
And how many people are they at?
Is Jerry, I know Jerry wrote the email, I don't have it in front of me because I can't find it. Um how many people?
Yeah, so basically it's anyone who works on it, so it would be the the group that you see here um and one additional person who would not give but we would be adding an additional additional person to this panel to assist us.
Um my suggestion is I don't know, my, do you have any questions? Uh my only, I have a question for Jerry and he's not here and it's that I wish it had been included in part of our budget because I feel like we each, you know, it's, we just keep adding things to the budget and um not that there are things we don't wanna add, but I think sometimes if you, you know overshot at Christmas and then in January you get the bill, you're kind of surprised and many of us in the, you know, a lot, I I'm just, it it's not, I I wish that, I wish it had been put in the budget.
I don't I don't wanna speak for Jerry, so but what I do know, I think is as we were kind of getting closer and doing research and seeing that other municipalities were receiving stipends and that's how this came about as we got closer, um that's when that memo was drafted about about the stipends.
Well, no, he is the, he drafted this in August of two thousand twenty-two and that's, so I I that's, I just feel like that we have, we've gotta be better at anticipating and I understand that this, you have a whole, this is like, it's great, like the good news is you're accredited. Bad news is you have to keep the accreditation.
Right, and I think again, um like you were saying, we weren't sure when we would actually be able to
To do it.
Yeah, they get to schedule these things months and months in advance.
So congratulations, I remember our first, well, my first conversation with you many years ago about this, so I'm really proud to see that you were able to do it. So congratulations to all of you, um I would like to, and it might be in here and I just can't find it because we jumped ahead. To see the, some of the things that were done for the accreditation. Um if you don't mind just sharing that with me uh to review and then uh with Jerry not here and I don't know if you guys have any questions, is this something we can put on the January work session? Oh yeah, sorry Lou. No, no? Is everybody okay? All right, so we're gonna move into the January work session, we're gonna ask you for some of that information on accreditation and then we will talk to Jerry as well, when hopefully he'll be Thank you all and again, congratulations. Do you think in January we could like, you could like brag a little about what you did?
You'd be very surprised to do all the work that
No, I'd love to hear it, so we'll prepare for that on I think that would be really nice. Okay, so we'll jump back to our business. So we're gonna go back to one C, flood mitigation advisory requests at the MAC. Um are you, is that going through Leilani?
So I guess it was under me because when I was the liaison, I guess I'll talk about it.
Well, there's nobody else here, right, from FMAC?
People don't really talk during this time because this is work session. So we just do the explaining. But it came through um from the FMAC and it was put on the agenda based upon their request, um obviously the overall focus on communication with the flood mitigation and we kind of talked about this um at our last work session that you were here for, but you were here, um and the update, they want, you know, they want updates on the ACE project and they're really um they're really serious about asking for a full time staff uh flood coordinator, so I think that is the major ask. I don't think we, from our last meeting, did we um coordinate times that we were going to dedicate for the flood um flood mitigation committee if it was that we showed to their meetings. Although we did state uh at the uh at your not, what is it, inauguration, um whatever, whatever inauguration, but you're swearing in um that you would dedicate more time, you will be there at their meetings, but they're looking for all of our, the entire board's uh participation. Um and they're looking for um either a specific meeting or coming to their meetings. As well as the flood coordinator, so that will be obviously flood coordinator, that's something else that we have to put on budget line. Any like, any thoughts? Because honestly, we can talk about it all day long, but if we keep pushing it off to every work session people are not gonna be happy.
Yeah, I am I know we discussed like having, there were many discussions about if we wanted to add a certain meeting or at the beginning of every regular meeting, we were just gonna have like that be a session where we kind of communicate with FMAC, I'm open to any suggestion of what we want to do, I don't, I think adding another meeting I I just, as long as it's okay with staff, I don't wanna add another meeting for FMAC and us because I think that's what we have, we must be publicized and we have to notice and there's other steps that have to go along with it, so I don't know, I I'd rather be attached to or part of one of our regular meetings that we already have twice a month.
Nora or Lou, do you have anything before I end?
Uh I think if we do it at our if we do it at a regular meeting, I think it should be a meeting where we don't have a public hearing, I think, or another presentation, we have to think about how we schedule it and we could try it that way, but I'm I'm, I understand that it's maybe more efficient to do it at our regular meetings. But I also think that there may be a big turnout and maybe the first one needs to be a meeting
A special.
That's a special meeting and then we try to limit it to like a half hour because you know, otherwise
I think that's we also talk about, like if we're gonna have these meetings that it's kind of more targeted and controlled and and it has to be, it has to be a massive, it can't just be a meeting where we're coming together and we're hearing where we have, there's no target, there's no target, what we, what wants to be discussed, I think it needs to be very targeted, there needs to be an ask, there needs to be something that we as a board, it's because they wanna communicate with all of us, so what what do they want us to come and provide updates with, I don't think it's, otherwise we're blindsided and we can't provide an answer on on what they're kind of looking for, so I think if it's as long as it's, that's my one like ask of them is if they we do this, it's very targeted, has a very specific agenda, what the items they're looking for answers on and then we can go forward, I just don't want it to be a session where we're sitting here and it's like twenty different items, we're like, well, what what are we, what are we looking to achieve, otherwise it's just people talking in a room and there's no work actually being done.
So maybe we could schedule like a kickoff meeting, it's longer and then at the next meeting?
Yeah, cuz I'm I'm the liaison now, so I'm happy to bring it up, I think we're meeting December twenty-seventh. So I'm happy to talk to them then and to say like we as a board are are open to having you know, at me, uh one of those meetings, like let's schedule a kickoff for sometime in January to see how we wanna structure it going forward and I can work with their chair and work with them to determine like, the you know, my kind of contingencies of like needs to be structured, what are the goals, just because I just want it to be very I want to be work, I don't want to be a session where we're all just talking to each talking in a room.
Lou, did you wanna add anything?
Um whatever they, whatever we do, they need to come with an agenda, uh cuz I was I I didn't participate, but I listened to the meeting in which this came up and uh I'm not sure what they were asking.
Okay, thank you.
I will also, that's just one part, let's get back to the flood coordinator, what do we think about that, cuz you literally just talked about one part.
Let me, if I could jump in for just a moment, so the full time coordinator, um we did discuss and I still feel we have to follow budget, you know, with it, we shouldn't just throw something in in January because we said that so it needs to be budgeted and we need to look at other staffing to see as things change. Uh where does that fit in, is it a full time person, who does it report to, or is it a consultant, like what do we need, I think we need time to assess that. But with the expectation that something will be done and will be put in the budget for twenty-four, twenty-five.
I don't, yeah, I absolutely, I don't think Yeah, it's not a nine word in this budget, the next budget we have.
No, I wasn't expecting it and I also, I also would I there there's no expect, there was no expectations, I just wanted to make sure that their voices were heard because we were focusing on the um the the meeting and not the other parts that they were asking for, so I just wanted to make sure that we were addressing it and by all means, I wasn't trying to push anything forward, but um and also understand this is like your first first full time meeting, so there's things that you have to catch up on.
I also wanna, can I add to that to the coordinator piece, I think if we could see I think we need to understand like what the goals, like I think I have them in my head and we all have our
But they may not be the same as what other people think.
Exactly, I wanna understand what what are they, what do they see as the goal of that?
All right, so we need to clarify, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, if we go back in on some emails, I think that they had put that in and out. But I think that they put those um those those qualifications in that email.
All right, so we wanna clarify the goals, we wanna look at it for the next budget, see how much that would cost on, you know, what the market value is and also what staff are doing today, so there's not duplication of efforts, but that it is complimentary. Or taking something away, you know, to help in a different way, I would think, so we wanna look at the the job responsibilities that are being handled today.
Well, you um uh if I can uh jump in, the uh I I think going forward, what I what I was hoping to do in this coming uh uh next few months would be to um uh and I haven't done it yet, so I'm, I guess I was the preview, um uh the uh to ask um the the village manager uh what he has been doing as far as the river maintenance and all the, all the various things we're doing with flooding and get that all together in one place and kind of codify it, uh you know, with the the with with the kind of things we wanna can, we wanna continue and maybe that would be the basis for what we would ask a flood coordinator to do, that that could be something going forward.
Okay, uh so the other comment I would make is improved communication is one of the things I took from what Leilani said and I heard that as well. The flood mitigation advisory committee is now gonna have two liaisons, so both Manny and myself will go, which gives them two people uh to work with, I think that will be very helpful for them. And the ACE project, I don't know that that is specific to flood mitigation advisory committee, I think a lot of people wanna know what's going on with that, so I think we should consider having an updated every meeting because it might just be, it's not moving anywhere right now, but uh but we know that there are documents that need to be signed in order for us to move forward with any work that we would get reimbursed for, things like that, they wanna know, they wanna know where the bridges are, you know, when the bridges are gonna be taken care of, what can we do in twenty twenty-four? Where's the funding coming from, what's our portion, I think we can update that relatively quickly in meetings without it being a separate meeting.
Um so as far as the um there's we, the board adopted a resolution about the protocol for uh who's uh uh privy to meetings with the Army Corps, like the actual meetings and it includes uh village manager, the mayor and the chair of the uh flood mitigation advisory committee and liaison.
All right, so we'll need to get those meetings started and then we'll just start reporting out on them.
We'll be a little more specific about it.
Okay, does anybody have anything else to add?
Yeah, no, I was just gonna say, we do have one person uh on the topic of flood, uh participating by Zoom about uh providing some consult consulting services us for us to help us prepare applications for home elevations.
Oh, that's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda.
Wanna just move to that next
I would ask if you would move to that. Yeah, Mr. Rod Scott and he is on the Zoom. Mister uh Rod Scott and uh he is on the Zoom.
Thanks, our presentation for this.
Uh, yeah, we have Mister Scott from uh, uh, the firm that we're looking to retain.
Can you?
Yeah, he's, he's uh.
Well, we can see.
Okay, here he is.
Dan, before he presents anything, can you please explain uh, what, what exactly?
Sure.
I don't think everybody united.
Yeah, um, the village uh is looking to uh. Work with homeowners to seek grant opportunities to uh have home elevations. So they would, you know, basically elevate their property out of the flood pain, making it flood safe. Uh, the applications, even though uh the homeowner is kind of responsible for everything. The village is the sub-applicant, so we're the ones who submit the official applications. The money would typically flow through the village. So we're seeking some assistance so that we can make sure that the grant applications that we submit. Are of the highest quality that are the most likely to get funded. Uh, because home elevations uh can get fairly expensive and. The elevation is typically the least expensive part of it. Obviously, site work, but there's information that the homeowners will need such as, you know, flood claims history, uh, you know, quotes. Uh, you'll need to have uh, uh, an understanding of how high their home needs to be elevated. Among a variety of uh ancillary topics, so uh I think Mister Scott can speak a little bit more to his experience. Uh, helping communities, helping uh municipalities uh seek that grant funding and. Being successful in seeking those grant funds.
So if I understand, that means that you've already started work with a few homeowners.
Several homeowners, yeah.
You would like to open that up to more homeowners and he might be able to help with that.
He might be able to help with that and be also might give us the tools that we need to help develop. Uh, the uh best applications we can. And the most complete applications we can because i- it is pretty onerous for homeowners to get some of this information.
But it's the village helping individual homeowners for their, their property.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess I'm on. So good evening. Uh, thank you very much. It's great to watch uh local government in action. Uh, my name is Roderick Scott. I'm a certified floodplain manager with over thirty-five years of uh general contracting experience. Uh, first started in repairing buildings from flood and fire damage and honestly, after. Several hundred of those, if I never hold another family in my arms, after being flooded or have their house burned, I'll be okay. Um. I have four lovely daughters. I live in coastal Louisiana. I'm the proud grandfather of a ninth grandchild this year. Um, I've elevated fifteen hundred structures in my twenty years in this part of my field, uh, my career. Um, so I graduated, as I call it, from repairing them to mitigating them, so we never have to go back and fix them again from flooding. Um, we're in a very unique time, which a lot of folks at the local level, even at the property level, don't quite fully understand. Um, the increase in, well, the changes in the climate are increasing our flood risk. Um, our flood risk, our floods are becoming more frequent and more intense. Uh, because of that, the nation and the federal government have decided to forever change. The subsidies that the old buildings in the flood zones used to uh enjoy. If you had a building, if you have a building that was built before flood map was issued, you traditionally late seventies to eighties. Uh, maybe even mid-seventies along the coastline in some places. You paid five hundred dollars a year and you could flood twenty times and you got your damages repaired and. And that's why we're twenty billion dollars upside down in our flood insurance program. And unfortunately, I'm gonna hand that to my children and my grandchildren as a debt. We're paying ourselves the debt that we've incurred, which none of that makes any sense anymore and it's not gonna get any better. We're gonna see more flooding. Um, I happen to live in a community that is right on the coast in Louisiana, on the coast of Lake Pontchartrain. Which is on the, the north shore across from New Orleans. So New Orleans has a thirty-foot levee around it. I have a five-foot seawall. We've had seventeen floods in seventeen years, three of them were nine-foot surges. But my town is now eighty-six percent retrofitted, elevated. Uh, we have a few of the commercial buildings left to do, which we really need to accomplish. But when we took our seventeenth flood and our third nine-foot surge in Ida, which I'm sorry for your experiences there, I. Understand it was, it was pretty bad uh with that heavy, intense, short-term rainfall thing that we're seeing more and more. Of, um, and it's good to see the recovery continuing. That's, it's something we just have to keep going after. And it's not fast and it's not inexpensive, but we were back in business. In a week and a half after a nine-foot surge of water in our town because the water went under the buildings. We cleaned up. We, most of the commercial buildings have figured out how to wet floodproof. But what I'm getting at is that. The flood insurance, it, we have ten to twelve years left on these increases every year on the flood insurance. Until it's really unaffordable for these old buildings. Down where I live, we're combining that with the collapse of the wind insurance industry because we've had five hurricanes in twenty-four months, which is. Never seen before. And so the wind insurance industry is collapsing. And you're probably already seeing the ripples of that effect in your wind insurance along that coastline, although you don't have to have. A hundred and fifty mile an hour uh wind protection on your structure. So what we're faced with is I approach the end of my career, wherever that is. I hope it's another twenty years of helping. Thousands more people get their buildings hardened is that um, we've got to hand it off to our children. Uh, these buildings will outlast us. Um, hopefully, we can hand them off stronger, more able to handle these events that are coming at us. Uh, we certainly have to do it with the old buildings in order to retain their property values. The banks are extremely concerned right now. Um, I'll give you a, so with my experience. I and several others in this private sector that's growing quickly called the flood mitigation industry. I'm the board chairman of, uh, of the Flood Mitigation Industry Association. Uh, this is in a, a private sector association of a six-hundred-billion-dollar retrofit that's coming at our country. It's much like when President Kennedy said, we're going to the moon and we said. Yeah, how are we gonna do that? And we built a workforce and we went to the moon in ten years. We are faced with having to retrofit our buildings unless you're gonna protect them with a levy certified by FEMA. I understand you've got a core project. I think that's wonderful. We've got multiple core projects, of course, down here in Louisiana. Um, and now they're moving to do these elevations and dry floodproofing instead of only levees. Uh, there are over a hun, almost a hundred thousand buildings. Under study right now for the Corps of Engineers to elevate and dry floodproof. I would like to not only be engaged in your community. Uh, to help with the elevations. Uh, we've got software that we've perfected over the last couple of years. Uh, to estimate these projects, the scope of work, the budgets. You can't get a final budget until you get the grant. You hire the engineer and architect, you get your design, the plans designed. And then that's your fine, then you put it out for a final bid, but you can get estimates. A lot of contractors are pretty familiar with this uh process. Um, city manager approached me uh about this opportunity. I reviewed your community and its flood maps and its flood history, which is. Quite extensive. Um, and, and I would, I would be honored to come in there and help you all um. Get the property owners that are really what, ready to go at this point. And then do maybe some public outreach to educate, educated property owners make good decisions about their properties. In this country, we've elevated over a hundred thousand buildings in the last twenty years. We estimate we have to do three million more. Uh, we're just about to create a financial system where the banks are gonna loan the country the money. And then we're gonna loan the property owners the money uh to get these projects done. Uh, that loan is gonna be forgivable for our lowest income property owners. Um, we need to make this a, an equitable situation. The grants are aimed, forty percent of the grants are aimed now. At the uh income-challenged neighborhoods uh in our communities where our workforce lives. We've got to provide safe housing for our workforce in order to supply the needs of the. Uh, businesses that we have in the rest of our community and you are a coastal community, so a lot of your workforce is in the service industry. So uh, we're here, we're, we're ready to help and uh I just thank you again for the opportunity to join you tonight and. And talk to you and be willing to answer any questions you have.
Two comments, just to gotta uh give the board some additional information, you know, Rod just mentioned, you know, the uh targeting money towards. Uh, you know, uh, workforce, workforce housing or workforce uh individuals. Uh, if you were, if you look at a map of our floodplains and a map of our lower moderate income areas. Guess what? They're, they're the same. Uh, and the second item is that uh elevating homes. Is the top priority as listed in the village's hazard mitigation plan. So, you know, this is, this is a priority for the village to help people to be able to put them in a position to, you know, not just help themselves, but have. You know, help to get this done.
So the portion of money to pay for whatever time we're putting into it and then whatever the cost of consulting would be. That coming out of FEMA money, is that budgeted? Where, where did this come from?
Well, we're proposing to charge it to uh the village manager's contractual services budget and there's sufficient funds in the budget for that.
And this is ten thousand, is this every year or is this is?
Well, I, I think we're looking at, you know, a hundred and twenty uh dollars an hour to, to the house. I, I think, you know, we can. Engage the success of the program and if you wanna continue, I, I would hope that uh, if we can be successful in getting homeowners. Grants to elevate their homes, uh, I would, you may want to continue with that service, but.
Continue, continue with the service or are we also learning in the process? How to then be able to do it ourselves as well?
It's a little bit of both because uh federal regulations are imposing and ever-evolving. At the same time, so it's a, and, and even though, you know, our money comes from. The state, it's a pastor, the money comes from federal government to the state and then from the state to the municipalities.
How many homes or how many homeowners are being assisted right now?
Uh, we're currently uh working with uh three homeowners, or three properties to try and uh. Uh, uh, you know, get them elevated. We've received grants for two additional in the past. And I, I think there have been uh, several homes in um. The Oriental and Shorikas area where they have uh done elevations on their own. Um, so. There, there are more homes that have been elevated and obviously anything that's new has to be built in accordance with our.
So if we're using village.
This, Greg may have a comment.
If we're using village resources to do this and help get grant money for individual homeowners, I would hope you're gonna. Find a way to help more than three homeowners cuz we have more than three, that's.
I think, I think that it was the three that stepped forward. Um, there was a try to put, there was a push from that, it's like a committee of, of, of uh. Community members who are requesting this. Yeah, they're like, just similar to the Washingtonville neighborhood, they call themselves a, uh, raising their house, whatever. Committee and they try to put a push out there to um get more people to come forth. Um, but they're just, it hasn't. Quality attracted, but it is a need and also um Tony Gilbert, who was the past chair of the flood mitigation committee. Also, I, I've had a meeting with him. He's like, it would be great if we do. Like if we use, let's say, he, he used um the area Howard Hillside and Lester, but or Howard and Hillside, Nostrand, all of that area, that. Pocket area. And if we can use that as a template to raise the homes, then you could use that in other ar- areas of the um, of the commu, of the community. So this is just, it's almost like this is the, the starter. And the pilot in order for us to do, to get.
Education. I have a question. Didn't we, did we not set aside money for this? I thought we said an ARPA money or something.
Although there was money set aside for uh grants to help people. Um, but I, I do want to recognize our place that this other, you know, not in, yes, yes, yes.
So you're on TV.
I, I just wanted to mention that we do try to coordinate so when, when folks are interested in, in elevating their homes, uh. We will also often get calls in the planning department or in the building department. And so we want to make sure that those people are provided the correct resources. So we, we've always. Um, indicated to them to contact the, the village manager's office. Um, and I did want to remind the board with the recent uh law that was adopted, T L W. Uh, that does provide homeowners the ability to elevate their homes uh in some circumstances without uh going for variances. Um, and in the few days after that occurred, I did get a couple of calls from residents who were interested in that. I did let them know to reach out to. Uh, the manager, just so everybody knows where to go and so we can start building a queue of, of folks. Um, and start elevating homes and increasing the resiliency in our flood zone.
Awesome. Anything else?
Um, I, I have a question for Bob. I assume that this is something we can do. It doesn't violate gift and loan provision. We can. Right.
There is a benefit to individual owners. I think it was a general problem.
Benefit to the village too. I mean, it's, it's a, it's something that we've talked about in our, in our comprehensive plan.
Exactly.
Yeah, I think, you know, technically, the village applies for the grant funds and we're the agency that. Or the sub-applicant, so. Money flows through the village.
Is that something you need to check, Bob? Because it's ten thousand now, but depending on how many.
May I add just real quick that um FEMA has a process for. If uh you expend some money to get the consulting services to help get these grants put together and they are funded. You can then apply for reimbursement of that cost. So it's a uh, it's a pre-application reimbursement, basically. To uh, to help the, the community for having gone out and expended the funds to get good applications and they're funded. And then, um, then you have, and I understand you have a grant uh, uh, staff or grant company on. Mine. So my job is really to teach everybody how this works so that when I'm done, you can carry the ball from there and uh. And, and we get more, remember every trade works when we elevate buildings. We'll, we will have a lot of activity in your plumbers and carpenters and. Foundation crews and you want good design. We, we've got the National Park Service has now issued the flood adaptation guidelines for historic structures. Uh, so you can look that up. Uh, our community is featured in that and I had a little bit of a hand. I got a couple of scars, but. Uh, we finally came around and got them published, so.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions? I don't know, Lou.
Lou?
He's usually quiet sometimes.
Well, this is precisely what, uh, I think uh, this is an, or this is evidence of the, of the sea change that's occurred. In the last few years and where things that were not the um, the village's purview or things we didn't get involved in before, we're doing now. Uh, like uh, the, like maintaining the rivers, uh, li- like making sure the uh, the people can get help. This is precisely the uh, the thing I think we should be doing and uh, and I, I, I can't. You know, I wish we had more than four underway, but once we do, once we, we uh, we help those four, I'm, I'm sure you'll get a lot more. So I think we need to start. And uh, and I'm, I'm, I, I can't be more enthusiastic about this.
Need to use flowery adjectives, it's, it's not my personality, but uh, there are some exciting grant programs out there. Especially some programs that are a result of the uh, uh, infrastructure uh, uh, investment and jobs act. And the state, been talking to state a little bit about that.
Good thing that he mentioned that um, you can get reimbursed through FEMA. Sorry, I'm so sorry. I said, um, I think it's a good idea that he brought up that we can get reimbursed for our services through FEMA.
All right. I, I, I'm, I'm very supportive of this. I'm also a consultant and I think the scope and, and, and like you, I'm an historic preservation, I'm a preservationist. Um. I, I think that we need to have a more specific scope of circumstance, of, you know, scope of work. It's just sort of like an hourly rate, like, you know. Is there a limit to how many hours on a certain application? And I also get the sense that. You're, and you're not interested, it doesn't seem to me that you're interested in doing this on an ongoing basis. You're looking to give the village the tools to do it, that's. But I just think we need to be a little. But I just think we need to be a little bit more specific, and I know you got, you know, you were contacted last week and there was just a conversation, but I think we have to have a little bit. Tighter scope of services.
Yes ma'am, and I saw your video on YouTube and I fully agree with you and scope of work and, and I do my research and um. And taking care of those buildings and making sure they look good when they're done. Cause we're gonna leave them to our children and their children, so uh, they gotta look good. And I, I encourage all of you to go to Google Street View and Street View, uh, Mandeville, Louisiana. That's the, the community that we've, well, actually, my wife just retired, is thirty-five years planning director there and. She was really the one that worked with all the homeowners, I did a couple of the projects there and. Some all over the country, actually, some up in upstate New York, as a matter of fact, in the village of Owego, got them started, so. I, it's, it would be an honor to help you get started, we'll introduce you to some other communities, your staff with those communities and do kind of a. Community, we call it a, a flood mitigation exchange of communities now, uh, to, to learn from those who are already ahead of you. To build your speed and capacity up.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dan's going to Google Maps right now.
Um, do we, Dan, do you wanna stay with Grant since there's a?
Oh, yeah, if you wouldn't mind, I can, yep. So, uh, Greg and Morgan. Yeah.
No, I'm asking, what are we doing? Cause I didn't, I.
Oh, okay. Do you want an updated scope of work?
I think, yeah, and maybe, and honestly, I mean, I, yeah, I do, I would like an updated scope of work and I don't know if we. Our next meeting is just the accounts payable, but maybe we could add that.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Do we have consensus on that?
Hi, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all, look forward to working with you, uh, we're gonna change, change how, how you are resilient, it's really great, thank you very much and. Hope you have a great evening and holiday, we'll be in touch, I guess, so thank you.
Happy holidays.
You know. You be a gentleman.
The presentation. Okay, so let's finish this one and then we'll see.
Hello everyone, um, my name is Morgan, I'm a graduate intern in the planning department with the long time, Greg. Um, and we are pleased today to present the findings of our economic development strategic plan. Um, this by way of background for this series here, this is an update of the last economic development study that was conducted in twenty fifteen. This is a quick overview here of this presentation, um, we can put it up on the, this is what it looks like to see, um, but. The findings accumulated in the thirty-five P strategic plan, uh, that is coupled with research, but today's presentation also focuses specifically. On the recommendations and insights as a planning department. We also briefly discuss our methods, how the village has changed since the twenty fifteen report. And some other key points on the community engagement portion that was conducted by.
One here. No, no, this is.
Uh, this is item two B. Now, why was it some?
While you're finding that, I'll just ask quickly, we have two pages of agenda here, which is a whole lot. Is someone else in the room? I know some of you are here to watch or to speak, is anyone else here to present?
Or to talk?
Or to talk.
On what item?
Just on my item two B.
Okay, so that would help.
And, and sir? You raised your.
Uh, I'm here with.
Alright, this is all the same group.
Okay, great, thank you. Anybody else?
Sorry, Mark.
And so here's the binary trading area that the news contains in the key report. Um, despite the way of background, it's intentional that this encompasses nearby municipalities. Um, in planning practice, it's important to incorporate a three mile buffer, uh, based on Brown's law of retail gravitation. Um, and showcases Mamaroneck's um, aspect as a regional destination and that's, that's why we chose it as the primary. This is a more detailed breakdown of the study area here, um, it's more tailored than the twenty four, twenty thirteen report. As you can see, it encompasses the C one and M one zones, which were not previously studied in the past report. And the dots here also represent the businesses that fall within this area that we studied in the report. So here's a quick overview of our strategic plan and methods and conductive analysis. Um, so in by background of how the population has changed since the last report. The population and median household income have significantly increased since the last report, the average household size. And median age actually slightly shrink, um, this is important for planning practice as it's indicative of how we should modify potentially the housing stock. As well as to businesses within the village, um, as well as how we want to meet that changing data demographic. In this twenty twenty-three version, uh, we also conducted an inflow and outflow analysis. This is to illustrate commuter patterns and local workforce figures. This type of analysis informs how the job market is performing, as well as how residents are responding to things like gentrification. By this analysis, we were able to show that there are less individuals overall employed within the village, um, by about eight percent in twenty twenty-three than there were in twenty fifteen. And we also were able to show that there is a lower paid jobs in the village as well. The twenty fifteen report also did not highlight the impact of e-commerce, so in this report, we focused heavily on e-commerce and. Wanted to conduct that as a large part of our community engagement, the survey. Uh, it's also important to note that our analysis found that um, with the pull factor, which essentially indicates how many. Residents are spending their capital in the village versus going to neighboring municipalities, um, it is zero point nine, the baseline line is about one. And in twenty fifteen, it was three point three, this figure is important to note that it doesn't uh, incorporate e-commerce and so it's. Sort of less used in practice for planning today, um, which is an important data point to note as well.
Second, that just means that people are shopping elsewhere, they're spending their money elsewhere, uh, whereas previously, there was more money, more people coming to the village and spending right here than.
Interesting.
Thank you, Greg, um, and in terms of the survey as well, we were sure to ask residents, um, how they were. Using e-commerce and when they're shopping uh, online trends like, so we actually found that the number of village residents participated in the survey. Um, they shop online significantly more after the pandemic than prior, however, uh, residents also noted that they visited the village downtown. Just as frequently as they did prior, so it's still a destination, but not necessarily spending that capital there. Um, and then the re, the recommendations and insights section, which the remainder of this presentation will focus on, really uh, calls for. Retail mix and miserability within this strategic plan, but also highlighting that note of e-commerce. Um, and then just quickly back to the survey, that was open for two weeks, we conducted outreach of English and Spanish, it grabbed, it garnered six hundred and seventy responses. Um, and key concerns from the survey were parking, retail mix and downtown atmosphere. Other key milestones of the analysis that we won't discuss so heavily in this report, you can concentrate, um, include existing building conditions analysis. Comparative policy analysis, so really looking at permits of other neighboring municipalities such as Scarsdale, Larchmont, Harrison, um, et cetera. As well as a case study contrasting the retail centers between March five and Mariner.
Can I ask a question now, or do you want me to say it for you? You know the breakdown of, of surveys between Spanish and English?
Yes, I do, seventy-one percent of English, oh, sorry, seventy-one percent Spanish and the remaining were English.
Wow.
Um, there's a full breakdown in the report, it's while you're passing around the circle.
Okay.
I think so.
Is it? No, no, like seventy-one percent. Oh, you're talking about the demographics, no, the respondents on survey, like there were six hundred and seventy survey responses. And both of them, I would assume were from the same question.
Yes.
Yeah.
Got it, got it, got it, no, no, yeah.
Um, the report will be there, probably tomorrow, and then the key appendix of the breakdown of full response.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
You move on to the next, so uh, as discussed, it moves through each recommendation and Greg, please feel free to jump in. The boxes I present, um, but our first recommendation would be to establish a business recruitment team to help guide and make some retail within the village. Sixty-eight percent of respondents surveyed noted that an increase in retail mix would actually encourage them to spend time in running downtown. Um, currently, most respondents stated that they are venturing to neighboring municipalities, um, such as Larchmont and Ride instead to do this. Because you don't feel that we have that retail mix downtown. Um, best planning practices for economic development to optimize retail mix, including forming a team and a panel of advisors. Um, to help recruit and match tenants to, to meet that ideal mix, um, this could be similar to the I A C, Chamber of Commerce. Um, and would be made up of local business experts and influencers to help match landlords, um, and prospective businesses to meet that demand.
I could just answer the question you posed, but it's in the report, um, it's five hundred and ninety-nine English responses and seventy-one Spanish.
Thank you.
No questions on recommendation one, I'm happy to move to two or.
Go ahead.
So our next recommendation here is to implement uh, zoning or code changes to an improved quality of life and maintain village character. As well as to remove some red tea, um, within open businesses in, in the village as well. So the many respondents in the survey specifically concerned about smoke shops in the study area. Um, so a potential expiration could be to amend the village code or permit requirements to limit the number of smoke shops. Um, to improve the study area character, you can also additionally explore, um, allowing to go coffee shops, removing other barriers. Of entry for low capital businesses, um, to increase the diversity and to bolster the business, uh, mix within the study area and remove red tea.
Uh, just to, to talk about that a little bit, um, this is related to the zoning issues list that we sent a while ago and it's really. I think primarily within the C two that we're talking about, the special permit for certain restaurants only within the C two. Um, that, you know, and even the zoning board, you know, this was brought to the zoning board, they, they actually agree that, you know, a coffee shop. Shouldn't have to go for a special permit if it's in, in the downtown. But I'll let them speak for themselves when they send you guys, remember.
And they will.
And they will.
Great, um, so also from the survey, we learned that residents were concerned about the amount of trash or waste, as well as facades within the study area. Um, another key active tactic could be to engage business owners directly and communicate the concerns. As well as helping to, um, you know, initiate things such as trash containerization to improve the character of the study area as well. We also recommend, um, expanding some definitions to allow for nano alcohol establishments within the C two. So things like nano wineries, distilleries, cideries, that can help, um, with experiential businesses in the downtown for as well. And lastly, um, we'd like to recommend allowing some non-conforming structures within the C one zoning district that. Sort of already fit the, the character of the neighboring downtown area, but um, by code aren't allowed to rebuild in the events of, you know. Need to, um, and Greg, if you could expand a little bit more on that, that might be helpful.
This is, um, this has been kind of a, an, an issue for some time, when the moratorium study happened, and we were looking at the forest of the village.
Mm-hmm.
Um, specifically Halsted Avenue, as well as Mamaroneck Avenue north of the train station, or a section that we sometimes call the T O D. Um, the T O D is, is less constrained, but in some areas, you'll find that the traditional building that is there now could not be rebuilt. Uh, unless it was destroyed by a fire or some other reason, I think. You rebuild under the not performing code, where you're allowed to rebuild within a certain time period. Um, but if you were to try to do anything on certain C one property that exists today. Um, perhaps they're falling apart, perhaps they're not in a good state of order, which there are a few, um. There's nothing really that you can do, the second you demo that building, uh, you can't build really anything that fits the zoning code. In any meaningful way. Um, I'm sure there are exceptions, this is kind of, I'm, I'm saying this in general term, you'd have to look at, you know, every site has specific issues, but. Um, it is something that was noted during the moratorium.
So.
Specifically Halsted, it's, it's just a kind of a mishmash of different building technologies, you know.
So, yeah, but, so when they, when we, when we adopted the zoning code in nineteen sixty-eight, it was aspirational.
Yes.
And, and it hasn't come to fruition, not that many buildings have, so, so it, so basically, we might want to go back to a pre nineteen sixty-eight form. For certain buildings.
For certain, for certain areas.
Um, so the next we have here is parking management, and this was a real hot button issue in terms of the survey respondents. Over half selected that more parking would draw them to downtown Marinerneck, which is in the study area specifically. Um, our first strategy would be to revisit the initial study that was conducted in twenty fourteen by Walker Parking Consultants. Um, there were a number of recommendations that were listed but not implemented. By the consultants, including the first, uh, a creation of a no parking zone along high traffic areas. Um, to increase spot availability, and this could be coupled with an increase in enforcement technology. Uh, this would allow for more spots within high traffic areas, um, and free up parking, maybe people as well. Next would be the creation of a fifteen minute loading space, um, for quick transactions or takeout along specific areas of the study area. Uh, it's also important to note specifically on this one that this aligns with post-COVID trends as well, we've seen a lot more people. Specifically the study who, um, are using these areas to pick up food, pick up online orders, things like that. And then last thing would be to mitigate the imbalance of available spaces between permanent and metered slots at peak areas. Um, to improve, to improve shared parking in high traffic areas as well. Coupled with this, uh, we also explored the potential to implement aesthetic improvements, which actually aligns with the comprehensive plan. Um, such as removing the plastic canopy, if we go back one slide prior, it's in photo, removing the plastic canopy. Um, installing lights along the rear side of the Marinerick Avenue, make, um, folks feel more comfortable parking in the back lot as well. My fourth recommendation was to activate further partnership between planning, um, and this business recruitment team with existing businesses. Uh, so this could have three positive outcomes, the first could be to minimize seemingly vacant storefronts, um, which would improve neighborhood character and give. Small businesses or home businesses a chance, um, to potentially stage their pilot businesses in Marinerick Avenue, um, or in the study area as well. This would also improve character as less vacancy is, you know, is more, less of an isolate, uh, to put it in plain terms. Um, this partnership would also provide an added benefit, benefit of deepening the understanding between local officials. Planning officials and the business community, really opening that line of communication. Um, residents also who were sort of being noted that they'd like to see pedestrianization of street, streets seasonally, um. This would be in terms of street safety, which I know is also a tenant of the comprehensive plan. Um, but also results in some added business benefits for, you know, uh, businesses along the pedestrianized areas. And we could even explore bringing back, um, things like the jazz festival or beer festival or other events that the community might be interested in, you know.
We also received comments about that.
Yes, we did receive.
What were the comments?
Um, in support of bringing a padding festivals and their examples were the theater festival and the wine trail, I think.
Jazz festival was big, yeah, in the, um.
I don't remember jazz festival.
I don't either.
In the report, um, we did include snippets of the comment sections too, so folks can see the one segment was, uh, like simply hit in terms of just. Uh, examples, but we can move to recommendation five. So this is a nice segue, um, talking about making Marinerick Avenue specifically a complete street, um, like I said, the, a key. You know, uh, objective from the comprehensive plan was to increase, increase street safety. So as such, we can revisit some existing studies such as the twenty eleven Sound Shore Community Study. As well as potentially leveraging some of the information from the town's bicycle route study recommendations. Um, to help make key action to short, uh, to help take, take key action in, um, improving the street safety within Marinerick. As well, um, another idea that we had was to shorten or look for opportunities to shorten intersections on Marinerick Avenue, so, uh. We're proposing potentially between Marinerick and Palmer to expand a plaza area, we'll go to the next slide. This is a conceptual rendering, um, it's. This is a conceptual rendering. It's going to only provide an expanded plaza space that's free of parts, creating third spaces for folks like youth or, you know, just anyone who's looking to spend time downtown without having to spend capital. Not only would this be not a benefit, but shortening the crosswalks would help those who are not necessarily as able-bodied or those who are aging to reduce cross time, which improves safety. And this is all great because it doesn't interrupt any safe public parking spaces, so we wouldn't need to remove any safe spaces as well within the downtown.
I did want to just mention that this was included in this report. This is an economic development report, obviously, but having folks be able to access the village downtown in a safe manner, whether by foot or by bike, is something that's beneficial both in terms of parking, but also in terms of the general environment. And and that in and of itself is a way that people can kind of use for downtown. You know, it it's like an intangible benefit in people's minds, which can help with economic development. I know it sounds kind of out there, but I wanted to mention that. It's not, I know it seems kind of divorced from economic development, but specifically like the place making spaces, a plaza like that in the downtown, those are the kinds of investments that, you know, we've seen it like in downtown Greenwich, they did something similar with their intersection, shortening the crosswalks, making more spaces like that. And it is an improvement to the business district that does have benefits for businesses within that sector.
That's correct. So this next recommendation is family-friendly programming. So there was a real ask for specifically within the aesthetic community, we the programming in the village that doesn't necessarily have to incur on Sunday days, but in all that day, in all weather events as well. So this could include potential partnerships between the planning department and vacant spaces to put on these events. So think things like class workshops, community talent events and more. It's also an opportunity to bring in some of the maker zone initiatives. So the building typologies in terms of footprint actually work really well for this, so that's another potential partnerships there. And we'd also like to do this in partnership with the recreation department. It's your sort of a sample palette of events guaranteed in my parks is sort of an aspirational potential as well. And then next, we encourage matching the retail mix with trends and behavior based on what we learned from the survey. So while there is a clear need for grocery and sort of these generic type of these stores within the study area, e-commerce competition is real, and so based on other planning studies, we encourage the potential shift or just addition of experiential and activity-focused oriented businesses. So some examples here, we have seasonal pop-ups or craft fragrance spots, it really can be anything. But just thinking outside of the box that it doesn't necessarily have to be something where it can be based on Amazon, there are other sort of experiential businesses as well. Next would be to revisit the maker zoning initiative. So as you know, the industrial area redevelopment steering committee commissioned a series of studies and presentations to draft legislation on the maker zone over the district as well as expanding some use definition that can help bolster and maintain relevancy in this area. While not adopted, we recommend revisiting these plans to help potentially vitalize the district and enhance sustainability of the area and meet some of those needs that we discussed before. And we'd also consider extending the current zoning code to allow for things like top rooms, again, in that same vein of experiential drawing people's business lingering around the area as well within the entirety of the park. And last but not least, very topical, given the recipe quickly before this, but we recommend creating flood-related commercial building standards. So we all know that businesses within these areas are disproportionately impacted by heavy flooding in recent years. And the New York City Department of City Planning published a resilient retail or resilient retail guidelines specifically for commercial building standards for versatility. And sort of some things have been implemented with the PLW protocol law. However, we encourage wet floodproofing as well to be a key tenet of this. It's important to note that we are not recommending dry floodproofing. Wet floodproofing actually does not implement or sorry, impacts the adjacent or offsite properties. It provides more storage unlike dry floodproofing. So you wouldn't be experiencing rain runoff, rain runoff on nearby properties. It would also be coupled by a PR campaign for ensuring that, you know, commercial building owners and businesses within the area are aware of these guidelines and really circulate around the village. And then lastly, it's important to note that these improvements are human scale. Human scale streetscapes are a key part in ensuring, you know, economic activity is strong rather than, you know, a street forefront that doesn't look inviting. So it's important to emphasize that as well.
I just wanted to butt in with the flood design guidelines. I think it's important that should another flood event happen, which fortunately is likely that another one will happen. That during recovery, that businesses should be made aware of these kinds of interventions when they're rebuilding, because there are ways to address flooding in retail area, you know, in existing retail spaces that don't require raising the entire building, elevating the entire, the entire building. And while we've been doing some of that, there are other ideas that are out there that can improve some of our retail stability.
And wasn't our fire department the one on Mamaroneck Avenue? Wasn't that, wasn't that wet proof? When they, when they fixed it? Was it, it was something?
It was, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we did a lot of work to basically make the building available. So if it floods, it floods, but we elevated lockers, we installed new materials, so.
But was it wet proofed according to what I'm looking at?
Wet floodproofing, it means that you're, the building isn't going to accept the water and that all of the critical items are above the.
Yeah, and the example with volunteer firehouse is that after Ida, it was shut for like almost nine months, I believe. After Ophelia, we were back up and running in a couple of days.
But the damage wasn't as.
The damage was not as.
There, there are obviously limitations. There are some, if you have, if you have A foot by ceilings on your first floor retail and flood event is at seven feet, base flood elevation, there's no place for putting the, there's limitations to this.
Obviously.
In places where you can, there are ways to do false floors and have, you know, the merchandise or the equipment, you know, the kitchen equipment actually elevated above the ground floor on platforms within this thing. I don't know, you know, you have to look at specifics.
That's all our recommendations in terms of summary of the findings, but as discussed, the reports have figures we are sure of that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Greg, is there anyone here from your team that's supposed to be speaking as well?
No.
I have a question. So how, do you have a proposal to start implementing? I mean, do you have? And.
Yes, we have a draft implementation table that we can share as well that outlines key deliverables for these applications.
Yeah, we, we, actually, you'll notice when you looked at the, yeah, the plan, it follows the same template as the top plan. And so we have a similar implementation.
Okay. That's for January?
Yes, it's done. We have. We'll share with you.
It's not in the, it's not in the final report, but we have it ready to go. We're just going to tweak it based on any thoughts.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You've made some, we, we've had some recommendations about zoning changes, like daycare centers and other facilities in the C one and the C two, so I guess that might be all a part of it.
Yes, that was considered.
All right. Table based on what Mamaroneck's companies are doing in terms of things like weekends as well.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions or concerns? Many? No? Lou, do you have any questions or concerns?
No, I, I love this. Love it. The only, I'd love to see us try to recruit some, some desired businesses, which is, I brought that up more than a year ago, but this is a great start. This is terrific.
I mean, I guess the next step is for you to come back.
There's implementation table that we can share with board. Do you want to? Should this be synthesized with the existing, the outstanding?
Yeah, so, yeah, I'll synthesize this with the zoning issue with memo from May, and I'll bring it to the board and then, and then it'll be kind of whatever policy, you know, direction you want to go, whatever your priorities are in the board.
And some things may be easier to accomplish than others, right?
There's living group, but then there's also more complicated things, but maybe more pressing. So, you know, I will make my recommendations in terms of how I view it, and then it will be, you know, your priorities and your schedule.
Meanwhile, we may get some volunteers for the implementation committee, right?
There's stuff that we had. Yeah, we did have some items for sites regular meeting. There's some items that we're, we have on the regular meeting as well. You'd like me to go over those and discuss those and give you, yeah, answer any questions on those?
We're at seven fifteen. We're going to be going into executive session at seven thirty. Do you have something that's a priority that we need to get to right now? We've been hold over other things for, after the meeting? Is there anything you want to get in the next fifteen minutes? Well, is there any, I guess the question is, in three, is there anything the staff has to get, another stuff?
There's some items for types.
Essential for tonight?
You know, there is the one I forgot, Post Road, the impending, the state's going to be resurfacing Route One in twenty twenty-six. And right now, they plan to do a complete streets concept on a section in the village of Larchmont. We wanted to talk to the board to, to see if they want us to approach the state about, see if they can expand a complete streets concept for the entirety.
I thought it was going up to the Chavanne here, and it was just whether or not we wanted them to go further.
It was only, right now, the complete street, so with the state, they're resurfacing the entire thing, but they're specifically looking to do that complete streets concept, kind of like what Dragon Morgan just referred to for a section of Post Road in the village of Larchmont. But they're not going to do anything else. I mean, this is kind of a generational opportunity that we have here to see if we can get the state to make Post Road a more attractive road for alternative means of transportation, specifically cycling. And I know that the engineers that they've selected to do the work for the Post Road concept or the Larchmont concept are company called Barton and La Judas, who work very closely with the town of Mamaroneck, and HVA, who is working with the town of Mamaroneck, the village of Mamaroneck, the town of Ryne on multiple projects. So we can approach the state, we can approach State Senator, Mayor, Assemblyman Otis to try and, you know, see something like this. There are some corollaries, but I don't want getting, I don't want to get too bogged down with what's happening on Route Nine. But, because that could, that's another half hour discussion.
And you need, when do you need the resolution adjusted?
Well, I'd like to, if we can get something for the first meeting in January, because, you know, twenty twenty-six is going to be here a lot sooner than you think.
Weeks. Is everyone okay with that?
I think he's okay.
That's good. Lou, you good with that?
I'm, I'm sorry, I missed, something was going on. What, what, oh.
Okay.
What was the question?
Well, are you good with, with moving it forward to the next?
Yes, 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 yes.
So we, we have a one, amending a previously approved parking restriction. Item three A, there was a error I made in a resolution. It's ten feet longer than it needs to be, so we're just going to ask the board to revise that parking restriction to allow a homeowner on North Berry Avenue to get better visual access when entering and leaving his driveway. The next item is the traffic signal at Mamaroneck Avenue and Prospect. For lack of a better term, it's failed. It needs to be replaced during the course of design. We've determined that we're going to need to reconstruct sidewalks, relocate rampways, and we've also discovered there's an ADA, a non-ADA compliant ramp, which also needs to be replaced. So it's going to add some cost to the overall project. But, you know, we're already in design, so I wouldn't want to wait a month for the board to, I'd like to avoid waiting a month for the board to act on that item. It's a twenty-seven thousand dollars in additional design fees on top of originally thirty-six, so this is an additional twenty-seven.
Hey, Dan, that's that, that area right in front of the, the railroad trestle, right?
No, no, that's, that's Mount Pleasant, Mamaroneck.
I'm sorry, sorry, you're right, you're right. I'm sorry.
Then, and that's a separate item, but we can discuss that.
This is coming down from the library to Mamaroneck Avenue.
That's correct.
Got it, got it.
We're going to try and incorporate some interesting technology there. The next item, we talked about the home elevation, I guess, well, the board wants us to hold off that until January. The, it was an item for the workboat for the Harbor Master. There's a little bit of an interesting tale on that one. We scheduled a bid opening for last Thursday, December seventh. The, one of the vendors submitted a bid. The, it kind of got either misdelivered or, you know, delayed in delivery from the postal service. So when we, actually, when we conducted the bid opening, there were no bids. But we had, we knew the bid was mailed on the fifth. It was attempted to be, it was attempted to be delivered on the sixth, wasn't delivered. And we, the post office called us after the bid opened and say, oh, we have this express package here for you. Come pick it up. And that's, and there's a caveat in state law that says, or there's a controller's note and opinion that says if you receive zero bids when you conduct a bid opening, you, you have the ability to go to the open market because the bid process is not meant to be to go on and on and on if you receive no bids. So the controller's opinion was included in the back of our material, and we're asking that the board will authorize us to purchase the workboat, which had the post office been successful in delivering to us, we would have had a different resolution.
And is the bid close to what you had?
Yeah, the board established a budget of a hundred thousand dollars. The bid came in at seventy-seven thousand, but there's some ancillary motors and other equipment that we'll need to do, but it's in line with what we, what we estimated. I'm sorry.
Ends up being around ninety-five. Is that where it looked like? Ninety-five thousand, is that where it looked like?
When everything's done, after the engine and the lighting, yes, but it should be within the budget that the board adopted. Next, we have a couple of IMAs with Westchester County. The first is memorandum of understanding for what's known as the Westchester Records online website. I think people can access it, but they can't download anything. We have like free licenses that allow us to access the site, download deeds, download maps, download anything that's publicly, anything that's available for free, and it's, it's a very helpful and useful system for us. I'm probably on it a couple of times a week. I know Gino's been on it. I know Greg has access. We're. Yeah, it's, it's.
Twenty dollars a day.
It is a phenomenal system. Then we have a IMA for mobile radios. This is an interoperability matter, so we can communicate with other police emergency services agencies. The county provides us the radios. We just have to pay for the installation. Next is a prisoner transportation agreement. The county pays the village to very people who are incarcerated to and from the county jail and the village court. And the latest agreement expired as of the end of last year. And we just got the successor agreement. It's a two-year agreement that brings us through the end of next year. We have a joint waterworks item, which is rehabilitation of the park lane. Uh, we have a joint waterworks item, which is rehabilitation of the park lane water storage tank. Let me find that item. It's, it's a joint capital project. I think the cost, the village share was something like two hundred seventy six thousand dollars. Uh, the, the shares are based on the prior year's water consumption. So typically on annual basis, the village is somewhere between twenty six to twenty eight percent of the overall water usage in the district. Um, it's fiscal impact is, oh, actually, I'm sorry, is five hundred seventy one thousand two hundred dollars. Uh, so that means it's about a, close to about a two million dollar project overall.
Yeah, Foreman and Stan.
Then, then we have, uh, we're asking to establish some special reserve funds. Uh, since the dissolution of the border control, the franchise fee and public educational grant payments, which formerly went to the town of Maranick, are now coming to us and we're asking uh, for the establishment of special reserve funds, so we can properly account for and distribute that money as necessary.
Yeah, just, just the joint water works. It's, it's, it's five hundred and, I mean, I, I'm completely, I think that establishing a reserve funds for cable is a great idea, if, because we want to be sure that we isolate those funds and use them for LMC. But, um, it's the water works. It's five hundred seventy one dollars. Right. And so that is, that comes out of our
It's either.
People, it's, it's paid for by.
For the water.
The water piece. So it's paid for by the water fees.
It, it is paid for by the water users. Uh, the, the way the resolution's written is it's either funded through, uh, the water fund, fund balance or, uh, issuance of debt.
But if we were to fund it through our village fund balance? I mean, are you saying village funds or are we going to try and?
There, there's a separate fund balance for water fees.
It's a separate, it's separately funded through water fees, not through our regular taxes.
That is correct.
And we have enough money to do this because I feel like it's a big chunk.
Well, I mean.
I don't know that it was anticipated.
Well, I mean, and that's why the resolutions are prepared in the fashion they are, to provide the flexibility to charge either the, um, uh, the, the fund balance or the, or the, or through the issuance of debt. And when, uh, the clerk treasurer's office prepares a debt issuance, uh, it'll identify all of those items. Uh, but this is, this is a joint capital project, uh, with the village. My understanding is that we have to accept it as a joint capital project, uh, and then we're responsible for funding our portion that's per the, the enabling legislation that established the water works in nineteen twenty seven. And I, I see that I passed the test, Mr. Attorney.
Uh, is this, I guess, if we, we have no discretion to, um, that might, that's, I guess that's my question. If it's a joint project and the water works is authorizing the project, whether we agree or not, right?
That's correct. The issue, the only issue is whether it's a joint project or a local project. Just how it's paid. That's all you're asking of the joint waterworks board makes these decisions.
We're not approving the fund. We're just deciding how the village is going to, going to cover an expense we've been told that we, that we are obligated to cover.
And you're acknowledging that in this case, it's a joint project. It could be disputed as to whether it's a joint project or a local project. This case. Chair based on what is. Decision before they buy the joint water.
Uh, so I guess my question is, where's the money coming from? We're spending it, but where is it coming from? It's going to come from either the water fund or maybe our reserve fund or maybe money that we bond and, and I think that's something, that's probably something we should be more on top of. You know, knowing where we are in those expenses.
Okay, I think then, I think it's, it's, it's in any case, it's paid for by water rates. Or it's, there's a reserve water fund. There's catch water rates or there's bonding that would be really, that service would be paid from the water.
Yeah, I, I think, I know that, you know, it's, the water fund is, uh, you know, it's analyzed and it's part of the village's annual audit. Uh, I think it's part of the, uh, financial paperwork we give you on a, on a monthly basis. So, you know, we are actively monitoring it.
Let's see.
Is there, is the question better?
No, no.
Uh, the last two items, just, we have one piece of, uh, one vehicle to declare surplus. Say twenty eleven Ford Crown Victoria, which, uh, Ford Crown Vixx are, I think were antiquated the day they went off, went off the line. Uh, and then, uh, the public scheduling, public hearings for the, uh, uh, the, uh, submissions for, submissions for the Hunter Tier.
Well, yeah, but I think so, that was scheduled for, we were, these are the, the resolution on the. Regular meeting agenda, um, gives the dates of our next two meetings and we had said we were going to have separate meetings. So I think we have to, you know, we can, we can discuss it at the regular meeting, but we weren't going to do it during, during our meetings. We're going to dedicate separate meetings to do it. That was what we have told the public.
On the regular session, the backup, those two dates, which are our regular meetings, she thinks they should be two different dates because the regular meeting will be so past, it should be a separate day. That's all she's asking.
Well, we can discuss that. I mean, I, I'm, I, we could do it either way as far as I'm concerned, but if you want to have an extra meeting, but I think we can, we can certainly schedule a public hearing for, uh, two subsequent regular meetings.
Okay, so we could discuss that though.
Oh, and one item, which is the, um, uh, the old coast road, uh, drainage and pedestrian improvements. Now we have a resident here who was interested in the conversation, uh, and Gino's been, uh, uh, coordinating with our engineers on this project and so that we have included in the capital budget, uh, but, uh, he can speak to it with more detail and clarity.
More to be brief, uh, to hear a speech about a project that encompasses both flooding and, uh, safety, pedestrian safety concerns. A project, uh, location encompasses an area along Old Post Road from West Boston Post Road to Oriente, and it also includes a drainage management that runs from Boston. And then, uh, uh, on. Um, before the level of received, my care, I've broken up into three phases. Phase one is the drainage analysis. Uh, I've, uh, spent some time speaking to resident board members. The flooding issues that they've experienced over the years from some of these intense storms. Uh, uh, there's also noticeable flooding on Boston Post Road, uh, that can extend sometimes from a bridge belt all the way up to. That's actually just, uh, what you see in the background is, uh, an existing catch basin bubbling up over taking on water from Old Post Road and West Boston Post Road, all leading out into the pond at the, uh, and near Hampshire Country Club. Uh, this was from Ophelia. Uh, you can see how water bubbling out and just flooding the street in the area. And this was in front of unit six oh one, that's adjacent to the, the terminal pond where ultimately all the stormwater winds up draining to see water actually coming from residence home and, uh, on residence property flooding onto the street and then winding up into, into the pond. So what I, what I done, what I did, thinking that it could be an obstruction, uh, or blockage and the pipes some damage, uh, we utilized the CCTV, uh, truck that's co-owned between the village and the town of Maranick, and surprisingly, the pipes were in actually pretty good condition, uh, with no blockages. So we kind of have to figure out a reason why these pipes are underperforming from some of these larger events. Uh, so first phase is broken up into four sub-casts. We'd like to get a KRF in, to conduct the survey, uh, to kind of get the, uh, approximate drainage area. Uh, basically from along Boston Post Road, Old Post Road, and, and then yet the eternal pond. Uh, we want to also incorporate stormwater flow monitoring. We'll be installing a flow, flow monitor and a rain gauge at one degree upon structure to, uh, measure volumes of rain and what's coming through the pipes within a four week time span. That'll help us understand the characteristics of the existing system and, uh, it'll assist our consulting engineer to develop this hydraulic model. Snip, the third and fourth phase will be existing conditions. They will develop the H and H model, review existing utility maps, develop the GIA's, the GIS-based drainage area, prepare the hydraulic model to, to model the existing conditions and provide recommendations to, uh, what we can achieve for proposed condition. Um, and then we'll, we'll review a conceptual level of the sign. Uh, part two and three kind of coincide together. Uh, the pedestrian safety, there is no sidewalks along Old Post Road, uh, just merely a yellow strip. It is a, uh, an area where, uh, Safe Brooks School has been identified as a high traffic area for children who walk to the Maranick High School or the Hobbit School. So if the board decides to move forward with that and also a drainage improvement plan, we can kind of go, uh, kind of plan it up together, where we do improve the drainage in the area and also add sidewalks. Can I ask any questions? Trying to keep it brief.
Last six.
I could talk about this for a lot.
Excuse me. It's not usually a work session.
It's a work session.
Uh, I have a, I mean, usually, I mean, I don't know. It's up to you. I mean.
That's the question.
My, I have a couple of questions. One, we adopted a resolution a couple of years ago before you were village engineer to, to, um, to plan sidewalks for here. And I don't know whether that ever happened. I mean, that was, that was.
Sidewalks have been.
Okay, that's, we adopted a resolution two years ago to cost out sidewalks. That's number one.
Okay.
So, and I understa, and I, and this isn't a question for you. This is a question really for, for Jerry and Dan. Um, and I know we keep saying it's in the budget, but we don't have a capital budget. We have a huge five-year capital spending plan. And I really don't know where the money's coming from, but we went from like a fifteen thousand dollar project to do sidewalks to now two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars to plan this really big project. And I am not questioning the need or the efficacy of the project. It's just, we are just, we, we're not spending money in any logical way. We're just saying, oh, it's in this big hundred and twenty million dollar pot, a list of things to do. And we don't actually have a commitment. And we, uh, one of the things that we didn't get to tonight was our capital, you know, our capital budget. And with the parameters of what the budget committee has recommended that we do, so that, you know, we know how much we're borrowing, how much we're going into debt. And we just don't, the, we're, this, the fiscal impact is two hundred and twenty, two hundred and twenty four thousand dollars, which is for design services. I don't know whether it should have gone out to bid. I mean, it's a lot of money and maybe a bid wouldn't have gotten a lower estimate, but, um, that's, that's not the fiscal impact. The fiscal impact is how it affects our budget. And that's, this isn't a question for you. This is just a global question of we have to get our financial house in order because we keep spending, spending, spending without knowing what the ultimate impact on the budget is. And we haven't budgeted for this. That's all. Um, so I thank you for your work. It's just, this is the horse I continue to beat.
Yeah, I mean, as far as this, I think we've.
Yeah. Well, you know, there's something, again, it was broken up into three phases. And what you see there and are in front of you is, uh, the two hundred and twenty four thousand you talked about is phase one and two, with phase three being the implementation of the drainage improvement projects. Uh, we don't have to implement these sidewalk projects right now, but we can implement the hydraulic study, which gives us an idea of what the existing system can handle. So we can determine what deficiencies exist and what level we can provide improvements to. Uh, so that's kind of, we could, you know, talk about phase one, that I think that's fifty four, fifty six thousand for the, uh, the eight inch analysis. And then we could always put phase two and three if we decide to move forward with the drainage improvement projects.
But.
Encompass the sidewalk project.
But this really started with having safe sidewalks for children on the, on the, on, on Old Post Road to walk to school. I mean, that's really, and that's, and it's morphed into something much bigger.
Right.
And again, we have been told for years, we can't afford sidewalks and sidewalks are sort of a small part of this project. And so that's, that's, I'm, I just feel like we're not prioritizing. And I'm not saying that this isn't an important project, but everything that we get asked is an important project. And we don't have a fiscal plan.
Well, I, I think the reason we, we combined this is because it's work that's taking place in the same general area. It would, you know, you, it would be, you wouldn't need multiple contractors to do the work. Uh, so you'd probably have some sort of savings on mobilization. But, you know, listen, it's, it's a fair point as far as sidewalks. Like, you know, there have been requests, I think, going back several years for a sidewalk out here and you know, it's, budgeting is a series of, you know, chosen priorities.
So we haven't done that work. So we haven't done that work and it just keeps getting pushed on the agenda. Although in the last, this meeting, you did put it on the agenda with, with backup as in terms of a plan. So I.
Been on since November with.
But yeah, I'm sorry. No, the actual plan, because it's, we've talked about it. We, we have talked about it, but this, with this agenda, it's like, this is the first time I'm actually seeing like a plan.
It, well, it was on the, it was on November twenty seventh too, but.
No, I.
Yeah, okay.
But I'm saying, make it precedent because there's going to, we're going to, every meeting, there's going to be something that comes up where we're going to have to spend money. So if that's can be the first thing on the agenda for the next meeting, that we just do that right away, because every week we can't keep saying, well, we haven't talked about, we got to talk about, talk, let's talk about it. So we pushed it to, so that we even act, we couldn't talk about it.
So just one, uh, the old business, the, the direction that we've been given as a staff in the preparation of the agenda is to have the items that are the longest on, up top. So, yeah. If, if, if you want me to deviate from that, I'm, I'm fine with that, but I just want to make sure I understand.
So even like I put in the email today, there are a few items that coincide with, there could be a few items that are on the agenda that have to do with flood mitigation. Put them all next to each other. Put everything that has to do with budget items next to each other. Put anything that has to do with presentations and try not to put three presentations in one meeting if we can help it, if we can help it. So, um, and then, but again, next, the next, the next meeting, the budget should come first because it's honestly something that we said that we, we need to figure it out, but we still haven't figured it out. And that doesn't sound right to me.
So let's put it first.
Just put it first. That's it.
direction is for me to make it the first item on all this.
Well, I think it's going to bounce up. It's going to drift up to the first now.
Yeah.
But just, just to, just to Dan's point, the, the, but what was happening was things were being pulled out of order and things were, uh, were lingering on the agenda for months. So that's why the date that it first got put on was how it got prioritized, just so that we wouldn't. I'm the only person who was on the board at that time, and it was just a problem because things would get pulled out of order and stuff wouldn't happen.
Well, now it's seven forty.
So.
And I, I would point out too, that somebody from this board needs to be with the staff when the agenda's drawn up. Uh, it didn't happen this week and we should make sure that, that somebody's there to, when it's drawn up. That's all.
Lou, I was supposed to do it and I was not able to on my first week, but I will make sure it happens the next time.
Um, ma, ma, before we, I know you're running out of time, uh, Mayor. If, if I could just explain one G. Uh, we don't need to talk about it. Can I do that?
Uh, can you do it in like two minutes?
I can do it less than that. Um, essentially what that is, that, that, that's, this item at this point is, uh, is an elaborate foil request from the staff. Um, uh, I, uh, I wanted to, I want us all to focus on, um, uh, accessory dwelling units, our policy on them and, and, and what we can do to allow them and restrict them. And it's different from, uh, what the governor proposed a while back, which was a blanket, uh, um, uh, prohibition from our, our, um, our restricting them to, are actually taking in action and, and, and addressing it. And what I asked for were, um, uh, the, the law as it applies to some of the um, controversial litigation that's come up, uh, recently involving citizens against each other and, and the village, the model, uh, dwelling unit. Um, and the cost that the litigation, uh, this land use litigation is costing us. So we understand that it's not, um, that doing nothing is not cost free. And, and, and I would like us to, to, to drill down a little bit going forward and see how we can allow some ADUs and restrict them and control them in a way that would make sense for this community and maybe end some of this, uh, nuisance litigation. That's, that's it. That's the, that's, that's the whole thing there. So essentially I, it's, it's information the staff collected. I'd like everybody to look at so we can, uh, we can talk at a subsequent work session.
Okay.
Good.
Sounds good. If everybody's okay with that, is anybody ready to?
Um.
Yeah, I mean, uh, make a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Uh, wait, we gotta do a motion. Under one oh five one F of the New York State Public Officers Law to discuss, um, the appointment. to discuss, um, the appointment of, uh, a chair of the Committee for the Environment and, um, under one oh five D of the New York State Public, one oh five, one D of the New York State Public Officers Law to, um, discuss litigation, um, specifically Grasso versus the Village of America.
Thanks.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Right.
Hi, everyone. Welcome tonight. It's nice to see we have a big crowd. I'm very sorry that we took this long. We had a very long session, a very productive one, but very long. Um, so that it, oh.
I'm going to come in the executive session. So, second.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay.
And then we, I guess a close to work session. Yeah. I make a motion to close the work session.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right.
And now we have to open.
Yeah, we can open. I'll, I'll do that. I'll make a motion to open the regular reading.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay, we are officially open. Uh, would everyone stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic of our wishes. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice. Sally, do I have a? Okay, the first item on our agenda is the Committee for the Environment Annual Report.
The Mayor, what is Mayor?
Um.
I am David Freeman. I am the immediate past Chair of the Committee for the Environment. We thought that both as a matter of transparency and as a matter of accountability, uh, it was useful for us to report to the board and to the community as to what we've been doing over the past year and equally important, what remains to be done uh, on environmental issues in this village. We appreciate the opportunity to make this presentation and, uh, in light of our busy agenda and, uh, the fact that we're starting a little late, I promise to keep this brief. Number one, uh, at first and foremost, we participated in development and supported the enactment of the Comprehensive Plan. It's the first comprehensive plan for the village since twenty twelve. It is a hundred and seventy-four pages plus indices. It's a pretty impressive document. We're particularly proud of chapter five, the environmental potential, chapter and chapter seven, the environmental sustainability chapter, which we had a significant hand in writing. There are dozens of very thoughtful, uh, recommendations for land use, transportation parks, preservation of neighborhoods. Now the challenge will be not to let this document sit on a shelf and gather dust to actually implement its recommendations. Number two, on open space, we initiated and brought into being the first new public park in the village. We tried to figure out when the last one was, we couldn't. So it's been decades since we've had a new public park. It's the Rockland Pocket Park, which was, uh, inaugurated this October. We took an abandoned uh, and overgrown municipal lot uh, to build a new park which people can enjoy uh, implanted with native plants that support pollinators. It is the first park in what we hope will become a string of parks along the Mariner and Shell Break Rivers. We call it the Mariner Greenway. We've identified twenty-three parcels, most of them are publicly owned along Mariner and Shell Break Rivers. We envision a linear park, think, for example, the High Line, where people can walk the entire length of the, the Shell Break, the Mariner Rivers within the village and potentially hook up with parks in, uh, similar parks in neighboring communities, such as the Town of Harrison and the Town of Mariner. This park, once completed, will provide recreation to underserved areas. It will, uh, provide habitat for native plants and pollinators. But really most importantly, for this community in particular, it will provide flood control. We will remove invasive species. We will plant the banks with species that thwart water. We will repair broken culverts. We will properly contour the banks uh, along the river, so they will act as a sponge during flood events. We will be applying for funding from Long Island uh, sound study for in, for actually engineering this part. We have the concept, now we have to engineer the park so it actually works and we can actually establish it. The committee will be working, uh, with the flood mitigation, advisory committee, the tree committee, this board, uh, and others in the community to make this terrific idea into reality over the next couple of years. Third, we've pushed the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation to release Taylor's Lane to the community for productive use. For too long, this seven acre uh, piece of open space has been fenced off as a no man's land in a community that badly needs open space. We have urged DEC officials to complete their work, which includes a completion of a, a management plan, an amendment of the record decision, so that fence can come down. And we hope that both of those will happen over the next year. Fourth, we have uh, pursued, uh, aggressively pursued certification of the village as a climate smart community. This is the Department of Environmental Conservation, a program that sets benchmarks for concrete accomplishments for municipalities, provides technical support and, again, importantly, money. We've already gotten ten thousand dollars from DEC for our work in this area. And we hope to get, uh, a lot more over the course of the next couple of years. Ellen Silver, the coordinator of this, uh, climate smarter task force, will provide additional details, uh, in, in a couple of minutes. So those are four of our biggest initiatives. And I'm going to give you only a partial list of the other things we've done because time does not permit meeting. Let's talk about all of them, because rather than we'd be here for a long time. We championed, had supported and provided input to amendments to strengthen the leaf blower law and to streamline permitting for solar panels. Those are both on the agenda for this evening. Uh, we have, uh, promoted healthy composting and encouraged the village to adopt a new policy for village property. We've successfully encouraged the village to adopt an environmentally friendly purchasing policy. We have successfully urged the village to plant native plants in municipal parks where feasible. We've had with the freeway authority to, uh, encourage them to adopt policies to mitigate the impact of I ninety-five as it flows through our watershed. And, uh, that's only a partial list. Uh, actually, I cheated a little bit and made a complete list, which I can pass out to the board when I'm finished, uh, my, my, my remarks. We also have sponsored, because we think, uh, public uh, education and community participation is important. We've sponsored a, a large number of community activities, including two community cleanup days, Monarch Festival that got people to show up on a rain day.
Yeah.
Uh, a, uh, a going to be an home event, library, uh, and we participated in Earth Day events with the Cub Scouts in Central School. So we've had a very busy year. Um, we've done a lot, but there's a lot left to do, including uh, implementing the Comprehensive Plan, certification of the village as a climate smart community, enacting a law to strengthen protection for wetlands and wetland buffer areas, installation of additional ele- electric vehicle, uh, charging stations and enactment of an energy stretch code. And for Tom, thank you for your support over the last year. And we'll turn this over to Ellen.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Yeah, I'm gonna pick up where he left off. Um, thank you, Mayor, for having us here tonight to give everybody an update. So David and I actually were behind the formation of the Climate Smart Communities Task Force through the Village of Mariner. And we came before the board and established this task force through resolution in the live twenty twenty-one. And just wants to come before you tonight to give you an update on where we are, which is, we're at a very exciting juncture, um, which I'll explain to you. So we work as an adjunct to the Committee for the Environment. We are a separate task force. A lot of our members are duplicate and we work with, um, obviously you and village employees to get our work done. So the Climate Smart Communities Program is a New York City program that's designed to help local municipalities, legal communities, and reducing greenhouse gas emissions and adapting to the effects of climate change and just becoming a more green, more sustainable community. And within this program, it's really a roadmap and there are a hundred and sixteen total actions that communities can take. And the Village of Mariner, up until this date, has completed nineteen of those actions and it's all points based system. And we've now earned a hundred and sixty-eight points. So we're at the point where we are now eligible to file for a bronze certification, which I will be doing in the next, in the next week. It's just, at this point, paperwork. Um, so that's an exciting, uh, milestone for us and we expect to actually get that certification. To put it in context, in Westchester County, there's nineteen bronze communities and four silver. Um, if you could just go to the next slide. Thank you. So this is sort of our list of nineteen actions. If you just want to take a look, I'm obviously not going to go through all of these. Although some of them were really, I call them backfill. They're things that the village had done that we had to upload all the documentation into the, um, into the state portal to prove that we have done this. And some of the most impactful items and things that we've done, like the, uh, residential organic waste program and the food circle recycling, um, obviously, as David just mentioned, adopting the Comprehensive Plan. Um, we had to write a memorandum on top of that to really highlight all the sustainability elements that went with that plan. Um, all local forestry program, which is basically a tree lock. So there's a lot of things that the village has done already that really positioned us well. But things that we've done sort of to further our progress in this program this past year are we work with village employees to do a, um, uh, a fleet, um, inventory. So we inventoried all the fleet, all the vehicles that the, that the village owns and across departments, which is really an assessment and there's future, um, actions to be done. Like, once you know what your fleet looks like, then you could take actions to try to really, um, make it more energy efficient. Um, we had our second, uh, repair cafe, uh, which was a great event in October. Um, we now have a presence on the village website. So if you go to the website, you can see we have we have a webpage which really explains the program and explains what we've done in the program. Um, so, as I said, we now have a hundred and sixty-eight points of this program, which is phenomenal. And if you just go to the next page, I just want to highlight what we are hoping to accomplish. Yeah, if you can move that over. What we're hoping to accomplish in two thousand, um, twenty-four. And we're really sort of on a path to try to get to silver status, which would really position us as a climate leader. I think right now we're kind of middle of the pack in the county. But if we were to get to silver next year, we'd really be, um, seen as a leader. And it's, you know, it's bragging rights, but it's also, as David mentioned, there are grant opportunities. We've already earned ten thousand dollars in grants and I think we can do more. Um, but just to rattle off a few, we're hoping to get, um, electric vehicle charging infrastructure put in place, um, which is a really important action. We're in the process of, um, writing a climate action plan, which is similar to the sustainability section of the, of the comp plan, but there are differences. Um, having a fleet efficiency policy, um, rightsizing, uh, putting in place the unified solo permit, which I'm not sure if it's being talked about tonight or in January, but that's an important action. Um, we are right now doing another community campaign for energy smart homes. And then hopefully we'll pass the New York Stretch Code, which you also have talked about at this meeting, to really just put in place an energy code to get ahead of where New York State is going to eventually be. So with those actions that we're planning on doing in twenty twenty-four, we would be, um, getting another fifty-three points, which puts us at two hundred and twenty-one points where silver status, we need three hundred points. So we're, we're getting there. And, um, I know that was quick. I know we don't have a lot of time, but, you know, please look at our webpage. There's a lot of good information there. And again, thank you for your time.
Uh, before we open this up, we do have, I think, the Board of LMC. Are they here? Uh, Matt, would you like to come up? We're gonna go to four J. If I can read this.
Okay, well, good evening, Mayor and Board, and thank you for having us here. Good evening to our wonderful community. I'm Matt Salt, Executive Director of LMC Media. For those of you who don't know us, uh, we are the Community Media Center that serves our community in Larchmont and Mariner, and doing so for the past forty years. We cover everything from municipal meetings to school board meetings. We have a robust intern program. We have a future filmmaker project, which is taking off this year. We'll be paraprofessional staff with our student filmmakers. We cover events such as Saturday's, uh, tree lighting event down at the harbor. We have parades and of course, we're opening our studio on the avenue shortly, which will be available to all Mariner residents free of charge. How is that, you may ask? Well, that is due to our cable franchise fees, which come in. These are independent dollars, these are not taxpayer dollars. These are sent in by the cable companies and they are intended for use to fund community media centers such as LMC Media. So we're here, uh, to support item four J, which is a resolution authorizing the creation of trust accounts for cable franchise fees and head grant funds. I want to thank our board members who are here tonight to, uh, also, uh, support this, this resolution. Uh, raise your hand if you're with the LMC Board. Thank you, Mr. Warren. And, uh, I'd like to also thank Sal, who's our technician this evening and, uh, helping us broadcast. So thank you, Sal, for, uh, always being here and the rest of our LMC staff who worked so hard and diligently to provide this community with our news, information, entertainment and, uh, anything else that you can think of that a community media center does, which is quite a bit. Um, so I don't know if there are any questions that the board has regarding this resolution, but I'm certainly happy to answer any of them. Questions?
No, I mean, I, I just, I, I, I guess we should just say that, that the structure has changed a little bit. So there's no longer a board of control, which was comprised of the three municipalities. So every municipality, well, Larchmont's not involved in the Town of Mariner. Oh, the Town of Mariner and the Village of Mariner are how, are receiving their, the peg funds, but they are for use by LMC. So this is an account to segregate them so that we can give them back to LMC where they belong.
Lou, any questions? No questions? Okay. Continue your good work.
Yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, everyone.
Uh, does anybody have any comments? About, about LMC?
About LMC.
Okay.
Okay. Um, okay, so I, I make a motion that we adopt the resolution to create the, uh, trust accounts for cable television franchise fees and public education and governmental peg grant funds.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Okay, now we all have to talk for public comment. And if you
Thank you.
If everyone stepping, bye, guys. If everyone stepping up could say their name, that would be very helpful, please.
All right, uh, good evening. My name is Luis Pitoz, uh, resident of the village for many years. I live on Rockland Avenue. I have seen hancher ads that say taxpayers will owe fifty-eight million dollars if we lose that lawsuit. Would insurance cover this? Or do the payer, taxpayers have to pay it? And the next question is, do you plan on taking the board of education plan to get free land from hancher seriously? Our schools are overcrowded and we should look into the plan to get free land for a larger school that happens. Thank you for allowing me to present those questions and concerns.
Thank you. Um, thank you.
Usually during public comment, my
I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. Usually during public comment, we do not respond. It's just the public has the comments.
There's no response or answer or
We have to be able to discuss that with ourselves, but usually during public comment is you making your comments, we taking in, taking your, your comment, it's our questions into consideration and then we will discuss.
Well
I will make one comment.
Uh, sorry.
Uh, sorry. I'm gonna make Uh, sorry. I'm gonna make one comment. Um, I think you asked if we were taking the school MOA seriously with Hampshire.
Yeah.
That is, if I, and you're gonna correct me if I make a mistake. Uh, it is only if we settle or they somehow got the property. So it's not. It's like a safety net for them. They will get land from Hampshire if something happens between the board of trustees and Hampshire. So I, I don't know if that answers the question.
But will full transparency, like you know, the doubt will be connected occur? How will it occur?
If you're asking for us to give an update, it's currently in litigation. So I don't know that there'll be a new update. Um, you want to answer, huh?
Could taxpayers pay for this?
Yeah, I think we're gonna have to get an update for this, but um it's just, it's still in litigation. There's, there's no settlement on the, the horizon. There's nothing happening. It's just sitting in litigation.
Or at the end, do the taxpayers end up paying the bill?
I don't know the answer yet. I would have to get you an answer.
Is that what happens both of the time?
I don't know the answer.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carlos.
Hi, Laura Body, Washington Street. I'm a member of the traffic commission, but I'm speaking as a resident. And as representative for Washington, the Labor Association. I'm here to make a comment in regard to an item that was on the work session this evening. That is very concerning for all the stakeholders in the village of Maranick. It is the rental registration. I don't know how this benefits. The residents of Washingtonville or the residents of the village of Maranick, whoever. We are flood victims. We have barely, barely recovered on our own. We do not get a tax break. We do not get a tax break for being a flood victim. But somehow, there is a law being created to penalize. Homeowners. I don't know how we could fathom. I, I'm, I'm surely disheartened by the whole concept of. Now you can have, oh, own a home in the village of Maranick. Pay your taxes barely. Forced flood insurance that costs us thousands of dollars up on top of our homeowners insurance. And all the expenses that we incur just to recoup from what has happened repetitively, you know, in Maranick, regardless of what. To begin to think that you can charge us a hundred and fifty dollars per unit and then come in and, you know. Come into our own living space and regulate our apartments that we, we maintain on our own. I don't understand the concept of creating a new law that can benefit who? The tenant? What about the homeowner? What about your residents? What about your stakeholders? We have a plethora of laws already on the books, policies and procedures, code enforcement. Why are we making sure that the laws that are existing are already policed and that we're correct co- collecting revenue from that? This is nothing more than a money grab at our expense. Who is it benefiting? I don't think any of you could give me an answer, but I know who it's not benefiting. It's not benefiting your homeowner and your stakeholder. It's benefiting a tenant that is transient. If there's an illegal apartment. Everybody in this room could point out what homes are illegally occupied. What does it take a law to be written on top of laws that aren't enforced to mandate the enforcement? Who's benefiting from that? So I have to pay you to come into my home to inspect my property. And pay you my taxes and then on another penalty on top of that yearly. This has to be rethought because I, you might see me as standing here alone, but I'm sure there's plenty of people in this room. Single family, multifamily dwelling that would tend to agree that they're not going to allow that to happen. So basically, if I choose not to be a part of that program, you're gonna enforce this law. And you're gonna come and you're gonna drag me to court and you're gonna penalize me. But you can't keep your parks clean. You can't keep your streets clean. You can't pick up leaves. But we're gonna create a new law that we're gonna enforce at and penalize the taxpayer and the flood victims. For code enforcing that you all turned a blind eye to.
Read stack.
Force the codes that are already on the books, the laws that you have, and start getting your money grabbed there and leave the taxpayers alone. Where's our benefit? Where's our tax break for being flooded repeatedly? I don't get anything. But instead I have to get. What am I getting? What's the profit for being here? And you're only benefiting the tenant, not the landlord? The code enforcers can figure out how to penalize the illegal apartments and how to penalize the overcrowding. And how to penalize the illegal apartments. You have laws on the books already. What are we doing here? I know I sound angry because I am. I've had enough. I've flooded three times since I did. Three times and I'm not the only one. And now you're gonna create a new law to penalize us even further. How about creating a law to give us a tax break? How about creating a law that you could give me dry wells, bioswells? How about French drains? How about doing something for us, not against us? I don't think that it's fair. I think it needs to be nipped in the bud this evening. This conversation shouldn't have been had. And if you're gonna do something for one side of the world, you need to do it for everyone and find a benefit for us instead of penalizing us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, ad, um, before you come, before you, just before you speak, Bernie, it's not to interrupt you. Thank you, Laura, for explaining yourself and expressing yourself in that, and on, on that topic of rental registration. It, in my head or in my view, is not, not necessarily to penalize because it's still the, whatever we asked of Bob. Was to resolve a, to draft up something. Now, I can totally hear you and if it, if that's the um. If that's the views of more than just one person and because you spoke, while you spoke, there were claps and I can hear the claps. And it could be, it could be for any person who is not represented here too. So. I could take in consideration all of that in terms of not penalizing in terms of maybe uh fees, not having fees. But us to figure out, because I am in agreeance with um enforcement. Because we talk about that in, 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 in the traffic committee and what enforcement looks like and either the lack of enforcement around this community. So if that means taking away the fees, but I still think there should be some type of registration. And maybe looking in within the building department to see how we can really then um uh penalize individuals with. Um, illegal apartments. But we can look into these things. So this is literally a like, it could be a conversation at the end of the day. It's not, it's not set in stone. It's something that we're looking into, but and, and so all of it. Nothing is set in stone yet.
But it still doesn't make sense because you have a legal two-family, three-family or five-family dwelling. You're registered. You're on the books. You're going after the people that are following the letter of the law. We shouldn't be folded into where, who is not.
So we're, uh, it's, uh.
I pay my taxes. I pay my home, homeowners insurance. I pay my flood insurance that's in the thousands on top of, because it's forced flood insurance. Because I have beachfront property that I didn't pay for. That I have to pay a fin, uh, uh, a fee that you can't believe on top of it. I'm on the, we're on the books as a two-family house. This is double jeopardy and redundant. And, and you're going after the wrong people. And the codes are already in place. If you enforce the codes that are already in place. And you did it when you were supposed to and continue to do that going forward, you wouldn't have to keep recreating laws and backpedaling to cover holes. That you already have bases covered for.
Okay.
And I shouldn't have to allow you to enter my home to inspect it. That's my job. That's my domain. You're infringing on my privacy.
Thank you, Laura.
Thanks, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Not burned?
Have you tripped a lot? I'm gonna just piggyback on what Laura's saying. Not saying it just to you. I completely missed the work session, but I know what this is all about. And I'm, I can't agree with Laura anymore. The codes are not being enforced. I have had the building department, I've had the building inspector. Come to the home very right next door to mine. Clearly illegal apartment, clearly overcrowding. They're not enforcing the laws. You, you and I both know, we can walk down a lot of streets and we can see the overcrowding. We can see if we open our eyes and wanna see. We have parking permits in most of Washingtonville. I'll say my street somehow is exempt. I don't know. But if you have ten people from one house, that's a two-family house. Going for the parking for them. Something should be telling our enforcers, there's something going on. There's too many people in that house. There's too many families. We have to figure out how to stop the loopholes that some of these people are jumping through. But they can create the overcrowding situation. And God knows, no one should be living in a basement apartment in Washingtonville. No one. It's dangerous and somebody's going to die. Let's address that before you start charging me. Because somebody's gonna be dragging me to court because I tell you right now, I am not paying. For my legal two-family house that I do everything right in because someone else is not.
Evening, uh, Bernie Camara, FMAC, speaking for myself in Washingtonville. Um, the dam came up, uh, last work session. So a couple people are saying that why are we spending money on the dam? Why are we spending money on the dam and the, and the, and the studies for the dam? We are spending money on the dam because we flood. We flood, okay? So we need to do these studies. Uh, sixty-five percent of the water that comes in and floods us. Comes from upstream. So put it in perspective, ten, every ten feet, we get six and a half feet from somewhere else. So we need to do the, the studies. There's this thing going on where's the discussion of who owns it? What do we have to do to own it? Okay? Nora came up with a, with a question for Mr. Spolino about who owns it and the spillway. Okay? So the talk was the regulations then and the regulations now. So the regulations have changed. So the spillway is not in regulations right now. So they are liable for the regulations because they own the dam now. So now, we got the meat hook in them, okay? Westchester Joint Water Works has done nothing for us for flood control, okay? So now it's time to come to the table with them. They, they have to sell us the property for a dollar, okay? Whether they like it or not. We acquire the, the uh, the properties from Harrison. And we build a dam that's gonna give us flood control, okay? And the reservoir is part of the flood control, okay? In- increase the capacity of the reservoir, put a three-sided levy around the reservoir. Build up around the dam so it holds more water and it holds it back, okay? These are all the things I've been thinking about and they're coming out. And this is gonna segue, okay? Because we are not decommissioning this dam. If anybody wants to decommission it, fear on the board, figure this. Because the person who didn't decommission this dam in nineteen seventy-seven, who was in Maranick, did the right thing. Because this dam holds back water and it does do something. So Mr. uh Gino came up and says it's only gonna raise five inches of water at the confluence. That's five more inches that somebody else is gonna get flooded. That's five more inches of somebody going into someone's first floor. Okay? So I will segue into my next comment, which is the meeting for the FMAC, okay? And Mr. Young, uh, I don't know why he doesn't get it. That we need to talk with the BOT, the FMAC. Because there has been a broken chain of communication there, okay? Leilani, you saw it all happen. You were right there, okay? We asked for something. He, he has said, Mr. Young has said, all we do is complain and ask questions, okay? Of course, we're asking questions. There's no transparency. We don't get any answers about the ACE. We don't get any answers about the dredging. We don't get any answers about the cameras, the SLR. Okay? We get no answers when we ask the questions. We come up with idea, that was another thing. We don't come up with ideas. Okay, we come up with nothing but ideas. And they're not heard and it's far, very frustrating. So let's clean the slate. Let's clean it now, okay? And we will have productive meetings from now on and they need to happen ASAP. If you have to do a work session with all of us, not ten minutes of a work session. That's not gonna hap, that's not gonna work for me. It can't be ten minutes. It's gotta be a nice discussion on what has to be done and where the, where the uh. Where we go from there. It would be beneficial for the BOT to be educated. From what the FMAC has been doing for a year now, okay? And have changed all and everything, okay?
Thank you, Bernie.
That's that. The renters fee, I wanna talk about the renters fee. It's, it's just not, I don't think it's the right thing to do. Renters have renters insurance. Uh, you know, from, for my case, I have a second floor. They don't get flooded, but I have to pay for that unit. It doesn't make sense. Doesn't, it, it, it's just not, it's just not there. If you give me some good ideas, then maybe I might do it. But instead of doing something like this to protect someone who's getting put out for flooding, we should fix the flooding. I've been saying it for a long time.
Thank you. Um, I do have a couple comments for you. Uh, do you wanna go first? Uh, so I think you and I have already spoken, but for everyone else. Uh, going forward, starting this month, there will be two members of the board of trustees at every flood mitigation meeting. That's, I think, gonna be on the twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seventh.
It was moved. Um, we have had a conversation about when we will. Try to um find place in the budget to assign somebody. Whether it's a consultant, a full-time person, whatever, we have to figure that out and make sure that there isn't overlap. Um, with duties that are already being done, but we've taken that from your meeting. I think it was September twenty-ninth or September twenty-eighth.
Yes.
Um, so that will be coming. And so we are go, and we are gonna be looking to give you more regular updates, meaning out in, you know, these meetings. So it's a little more transparent on the Army Corps. The cameras at the last flood mitigation meeting, we talked about bringing it back to the board to remove the cameras because they're not extremely useful, is the opinion. And that we could maybe use that money towards something else. So that's coming. And then the rest of it, I have to get your answers.
Yeah, no, no, I'm, I'm not.
No, we did not.
Give for answers.
No, no, but.
Just, I'm just standing to, to, to say there's a little bit of pushback on why, why the FMAC wants to meet with the BOT. You know, and then it has to be a spurf, uh, a specific agenda. We've had a specific agenda.
Yeah, okay.
We've had specific things that we wanna get done. We've had specific uh, uh, things to put in front of you. You know, we shouldn't be asking for a resolution and go through. You know, we shouldn't be asking for a resolution and go through this one, that one, that one, it gets to you. We shouldn't have to go through a resolution when we didn't even need the resolution for the study for the reservoir. We didn't need one. And I didn't know that. But I found it out, and I found out the hard way, which I waited months and months to, to get that study for Catherine Parker to say, send me the email. And it was, and then, and then it was, we didn't need the resolution there.
I know.
We didn't need to go this one, that one, this one. This, it's gotta be transparent. We need to work, the FMAC needs to work with the BOT, not only the BOT, village manager, or whoever's gonna be the village manager in the future. Mr. Sarnoff, because he's a key role here. And Gino has to be at these meetings too. It's everyone, it's all hands on deck.
Thank you, Bernie.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bernie.
Did you wanna? Bernie, we have heard you and the flood mitigation group, and changes are going to be happening. I know you will hold us accountable, so I will see you at the next meeting.
I just, I just didn't like the tone tonight, that, for what, the reason being that, what the meeting's for and I just didn't like the tone at the work session of, we need specific things.
I understand.
Idea, come on now. Those were all put on the table. Please, you can't. They can't, you can't say that anymore. Okay, I just wanna clear the air. I wanna clean the slate. I'm handing the olive branch out. Wanna take it? You can take it, but
We're right here.
Believe me, there's storms on our out.
Hey.
Hi, Amy Siskin, and welcome to our new mayor.
Thank you.
I'm gonna try to stay within my three minutes. I, I wanted to pick up what Bernie said cuz I, I was at that meeting, and we did say there would be a resolution to return the cameras and without money get river cages, so it's not gaslighting you. Um, so I wanna speak about three issues that I spoke about now that we have our new board in place. The first issue is, we have an empty seat here. We have the highest-paid village manager in the entire county of Westchester with twenty-one thousand people, and he can't be bothered to show up to, is this the fourth meeting that he's missed entirely? Um, I, I know he's on the agenda to, to start to put a request proposal. I would encourage us to move forward with that as quickly as possible. We actually need to have somebody who shows up for residents since we are paying him. Uh, number two, I wanna again follow up with this DEI proposal that we pushed through for ninety thousand dollars. I'm gonna request that we do this the right way. I have an expertise in DEI. I can tell you ninety thousand dollars is a ton of money. And we do not need eleven months of training for our employees. The only employee that I know of that hasn't done anything that breaks DEI code is our village manager who filed an EEOC complaint that was blatantly homophobic. Outside of that, there's no major changes in our village. We've always been diverse. Our employees do not need eleven months of training. If they do, put together a request for proposal, and let's get bids. The entity that was awarded ninety thousand dollars of business was created three months ago. So, let's find different people to bid. Third and finally, I would again request, we have a Board of Trustees that has, has issues with antisemitism in affiliation. I would ask again, this is for free, I know you're all busy, it doesn't have to be done yesterday. We have a local rabbi who has reached out and offered to put together a training, spend an hour with her, and let's learn. We have a large Jewish population, we have issues on our board. I listened to that board meeting two or three times ago. It's, you sounded like the presidents of Penn, Harvard, and MIT, and frankly, the old board should be ashamed, sounded tone deaf and unwilling to learn at this time, which is really important to learn. So, please avail yourself of the local rabbi. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I just, I just wanna make just one comment, just to, just to respond to Amy. I think that, um, you make good points, and um, I think Jerry would have been here tonight, but he had a personal emergency and couldn't be here. Um, but I do, I, I completely agree. I think he needs to be more present in our meetings. Um, and I think that, um, it, I think if we could, I, I think that the contract may have been let for, um, the, the first DEI. I think that, that the contract's executed, I don't think we can redid it. Um, we might be at that stage. I do think that there is no reason why, that's the only DEI training I, that we could have, and I think that initiatives like having a rabbi who made the offer talk to us, or talk to the public, doesn't, it's, it's ongoing. You, you know, it, it's not, but I mean, it could be a, a community, it could be for the entire community, cuz when we meet as a board, we meet publicly. And I think that, um, that those are the kinds of things that can happen on a regular basis. It's not a one-shot deal. So, thank you.
Um, may I say something, uh, Ms. Mayor? Um, uh, two nights ago, I attended a meeting of the Emergency Operations Center, uh, chaired by, uh, our village manager, the highest-paid village manager in, in Westchester County, by a few hundred dollars. Uh, and I think the best one we, uh, we, we could possibly, uh, uh, hope for. And, uh, he, he chaired that meeting. Uh, I was the only elected official to attend it, but that, that's okay, everybody, everybody's busy. Um, he
Not everybody was invited.
Was invited, Lou.
Okay, all right, well, okay, all right. So, so I, I, I shoehorned my, my way into the staff meeting. Um, but, but they, they they were up all night, he, he met again at four o'clock, they were ready to respond. Uh, and, and he, he's a guy who gets out of, up off his desk, goes out and fixes stuff. And to hear him maligned as somebody who doesn't show up is offensive, just because somebody has a personal beef with him. And, uh, I think this board should defend its staff. He's an excellent village manager, will be, will be, uh, uh, he'll be missed when he's gone. And, um, and I'm not gonna let that go, uh, unchallenged, all right? That's it.
Okay, Lou. Let's, um, hi, Lou.
Uh, this isn't a debate, all right? You had you, you had you say, we're done.
You're addressing me, so I'm gonna address you back. I have been here, and our village manager has not been here, nor given the village manager report for three consecutive meetings before today. That's his job. For the rest of us, if you don't show up for work for the, for three major meetings, you don't do your presentation, that's grounds for firing in the regular world. So, thank you.
Thank you. Still waiting on that recession, Amy.
Hello.
Oh. Good evening, I'm Anna Blanco from North Chasworth, and I'm a student at the high school in Higginberg Program, and I want to come tonight to speak in favor of trustee Ron's plan, um, of affordable housing. Um, I think many essential workers fall within thirty to sixty percent AMI. Implementing policies that cater to income bracket ensures that those who contribute to our community's well-being, that is teachers, healthcare workers, and service industry professionals can afford to live in areas they serve. By focusing on a broader range of residents, the affordability of housing efforts begins to become insufficient, because family in need is not receiving the aid that's significant enough to make a large change. Um, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, and Tyler, I'm also junior at the high school, I think, as Anna so eloquently said, um, New York as a whole and our community are in the middle of an affordability crisis. Um, it's not just a question of the character of our community, the quality of it. If those who make up like the bedrock of our community can't afford to live here, it'll shrivel up. Um, I think trustee Young's proposal, the ADU proposal, that was, I believe, on a work session agenda. I think there, a few people came and talked about it a couple weeks ago, few, I think misconceptions surrounding it, but I think that considering how severe the issue that we face in our community is, we have to be looking at all the options and assessing them for everything that work, everything that they're worth. It's one tool among many we can use to solve this problem, but um, just to look at a few, it's a very effective way, um, to get private, uh, private people to use their property and be able to create these acceptable housing units, and basically creating the housing in the issue rate of the problem. I think a lot of the issues we see in our community, for example, the overcrowding in Washington, what they talk about, yes, enforcement, I think that's good. But you have to look at why these problems exist in the first place, otherwise, we're never gonna solve them. There are clearly people here who want to live here, and what's the solution? Just like, kick them out of their house? Like, there has to be a solution better than just more enforcement. And to do that, we have to actually address, like, the issues undergirding that with, like, review stuff. I think a few of the the complaints, um, about the proposal, I think they're genuine, but I think that, um, it's important that we look through these and don't enter these conversations with like a closed mind and just not considering those problems. So, I, there are like genuine issues against the proposal, but I'm worried that some people come here and just like are against it, and then aren't willing to listen to arguments, or perhaps changes, compromise that can be made to this policy to make it better and to uh, meet those complaints that people have. So, for example, I think someone talked about how it would basically be the village subsidizing these new homes, but, I mean, if you look at it, if they're building a new ADU on the property, that's going to increase the value of the property in the assessment, and then the village is gonna get more tax dollars. So, maybe the village doesn't have to offer these tax breaks to incentivize them to be built, but that is just an example, one of the issues we can look at and compromise on and figure out where we have common ground. I think that we have new leadership, there's been a lot of talk about like, um, like a new, a new council. I think that we should use this and other issues as an opportunity to prove that and actually look at the issues as they are and see them. Um, it's concerned about overdevelopment. I don't in the case of ADUs, I think that's blown up. People use like California and San Francisco as like a boogeyman and try and paint the policy as bad without looking at what it actually does. I think the model ordinance says that it would have to be eight hundred square feet or smaller, or the, or sm- or smaller than the size of the primary dwelling, whichever is less, and that would have to be accessory cottages at least six feet behind the original building. It's all, all of these studies show that it is very minimal effects and services, I think. The result of the policy would be more tax revenues for the village. I think a lot of these are overblown, but things can be done to address those problems. For example, I saw on the agenda, uh, for the flooding problem, uh, an exception to the ordinance where it wouldn't be a button places that are in the flood zone. So, if there are concerns there, we can go through them and address them. I think this is a good opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Hannah, I'm also a junior at Marinac High School. Um, and I also wanna speak about, um, the, the inclusionary zoning policy Rollings, uh, trust that Ron's proposed at the work session last week. Um, the updates in the Marinac zoning policies proposed are necessary. The village of Marinac has an average median income of one hundred eighteen thousand. This is below Westchester County's average cost of living, which is around one hundred and thirty thousand dollars. By prioritizing affordable housing for families making between thirty and sixty percent AMI, inclusionary zoning could be utilized to get guaranteed financial stability for the working class. Moreover, inclusionary zoning is not a one, is, inclusionary zoning is, can be tailored to each municipality, each community. That gives us the flexibility to really consider what will benefit the village of Marinac the most. We can take, we can take into consideration overcrowding, flooding, all the concerns that so many villa, uh, village members have, and create a policy that increases the production of affordable housing, drives down the price of housing, and makes the community accessible to a much larger population. Um, and also, this policy would not just, would serve the people of Marinac, the people who live here, the people who have lived here their entire lives and no longer can afford to live here. Um, but I mean, we would, this policy would make the units that go up in the buildings more affordable, not build more buildings or create more, um, or create new units that would contribute to urbanization. Um, those who live here, those who have lived here for decades can no longer afford to live here, and this is a major problem. Inclusionary zoning amongst other tools such as government subsidies and just other tools to encourage housing production solves the problem of overcrowding, um, and just a lack of affordable housing in general. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stuart T. Kurt. If the meeting's any indication of how the rest of the year is gonna go, you're gonna have a lot of long meetings. Um, I would suggest that board should revisit your procedures. Um, and maybe extend the public comment time, but you do need to enforce it. By simply letting people speak for as long as they want, you basically create a limitation you can't enforce legally. Um, DEI, the contract. I don't believe you need to honor this contract. This contract was clearly done in violation of New York procurement law. It wasn't a sole source. There was no RFP given. And as Ms. Siskin said, it likely could be done for much less money, much less. These are gonna be virtual training sessions. You could go to the whole country. There must be hundreds, if not thousands, of people that could do this. Um, Ms. Body's comments about enforcement, I completely agree. We don't enforce half the laws we have on our books. This board passed a new chapter, three fifty. In that chapter, you required that operating permits were given for, I believe, thirty different activities. Many of them very important to enforce, like hazardous materials, um, buildings that have public occupancy for more than a hundred people. We don't enforce that law. I asked the building department for the required application for an operating permit. It's been six months. I've been told it'll be another four months before I might get a response. You're, if you're not requiring permits for operating, you're not enforcing it. Um, I was happy to see at the work session that there was actually a certified floodplain manager in the village. Certified floodplain manager is a requirement of the National Flood Insurance Program. We haven't had one for four years. We've been through Ida, we haven't had anybody to do that job. We need to make that a priority and get him hired. And the last thing I'll do is tailor's length. I hope the board will update, um, the public on exactly where that is. Um, you know, I came across an article in the Love Hut the other day where, you know, in two thousand fifteen, village manager said, we're almost there. That's eight years ago. I, I would hope this can get done pretty quickly, and we can get on with using that space for the public. Thank you.
Thank you. And Stuart, we are going to be reviewing those things, and I do understand tonight was a long night. I did not want to walk in and just tell the board what we were gonna do, so we're gonna have to have a conversation. Um, but thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Barry Lou Salano, and we're in San Antonio Gardens. Um, I'm here in Jersey, um, is going to be a starting, I guess, interview on the paragraphe fees for voters. Um, these are going up a lot, and I realize we've lost a lot of four or five years of built cars, we did a good job, building everything. This is not something that's done, it's mainly needed, and they did a good job. But, um, okay, ten, a ten-foot thingy on the dock was four hundred fifty-six dollars. Have a thirty-foot boat on a moorin', it costs four hundred fifty dollars. For a locker, Percy's was a hundred dollars. I understand it's gonna be doubled to two hundred for an entire year. So, that's over a thousand dollars just to keep your boat in the water. And the moorings, that's a little brady for the village. That doesn't cost the village a penny. Cuz the boat owners pay for all the ground tackle, and they maintain their boats, they maintain their moorings. And the village makes a lot of money from benders between the boat ramp, the launching ramp, and all the kayaks that are, every year there's blood and water. And there's, I feel like we're really being pinched. Yeah. You own the boat, doesn't mean you're a millionaire. But it's gonna get to that point where that's the only people I can afford to have boats here. And yet, like, half the time, the pump-out station doesn't work for the, uh, to enter the heads of the boat, and that usually doesn't work. And like, what are we getting for our money? It's getting very expensive. And I think, you know, this money is not going towards maintaining the waterfront, it's going to frivolous things that the board's been spending money on. frivolous things that the board's been spending money on. They've been spending money like they have a rich uncle. And I don't, you know, I feel like the benders are paying a lot of unnecessary money to our village. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else? Yes.
Hi, my name is David Chalkum. I'm the president of Fairly Green Condominiums. I apologize in advance for my call. Um in the work session earlier, it was a proposal to engage AKRF to use the existing mapping of the rainwater drainage system to measure the flow of rainwater from Boston Post Road, Old Boston Post Road, Fairway Green, the retention basin at the bottom of Fairway Green and the outflow from the retention basin. I'm going to tell you today why this study is important to the village and time sensitive. During Ida, rainwater from Post Road, Old Post Road, Equinox, McDonald's, and the man feeding underground rainwater damage, rainwater drainage system from other parts of the Marinac that flowed through Fairway Green caused over five hundred thousand dollars of water intrusion damage to homes in Fairway Green. The damage was caused by improper placement of catch basins on Old Boston Post Road, downtown to Equinox, failing to properly feed into each underground vaults and rainwater flow more than the discharge capacity of the drainage system. The proposal seeks to identify the catch basins that need to be repaired, the new catch basins that need to be installed, and to measure the flow of rainwater, the system through the system, so as to identify where the capacity needs to be increased. The study needs to fund immediately. Since Ida, we have seen other less powerful storms cause similar flooding issues. Another storm with the ferocity of Ida surely right around the corner will be catastrophic. Also, as the village strengthens its effort to process and bring water quickly and efficiently, it sends increasing amounts of rainwater through the drainage system, through Fairway Green, down attempting to get down to the retention pond and out onto the homics and to the waterways. The problem is increasing, not abating. I know that other areas of the village experienced tremendous flooding from Ida and other storms. However, the area that I'm talking about in this proposal is different for two reasons. Firstly, the problems around Boston Post Road and Old Boston Post Road areas are caused by the inability of the village's systems to properly process rainwater. These problems are not the result of rising rivers, the streams, or tidal inflows. The village has responsibility, corrective systems to keep pace with the rising waters. Secondly, the proposed study and the resulting corrective work is within is within the village's financial abilities. The village does not need any help from state or federal government to fund the study. The accompanying estimate of the cost of the total project are all within the village's reach. For these reasons, I urge you to fund the proposed study immediately. And when I add one other thing, there was some talk at the uh work session earlier um about uh there wasn't any talk about how this water drains. And basically, the water from the post road and from the old coast road go through Fairway Green and join up with the drainage system that we installed at Fairway Green. And when they join up, it overwhelms our system. The uh the system was just not was built forty years ago when Fairway Green was built. And it was just not, neither the village's system or ours were uh built to process the quantities of water that the village is putting through nowadays. So please fund that study so it can keep the damage in your life safe.
Thank you. Sorry.
No, no.
Anyone else?
I just have a question for Dan, for Dan.
It was a question.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, I'm sorry. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'm a landscaper.
What's your name?
Robert. We're trying to find out what's the law that the village of Marinac imports you for the leaf blowers.
We're soon to get it.
Should be.
It's on the agenda. We're on the agenda. We're moving past the uh public comment area.
We're, no, it's gonna be on the agenda, two items.
Thank you.
Two items. Uh can I, Mike, wait, David, wait, don't go. David, can you, David? Come back. Uh my, my question is about your, not for you, it's for Dan. So maybe ten years ago, the village did a project on Fairway Green. Do you remember what was that? What did that involve?
Was it on Fairway or was it on uh Cove? I think that may have been Cove, cause I think it was um.
Worked on, there was work done. Uh there was, the village did somewhere, maybe you'll remember. The village did somewhere on Fairway. Oh yeah, you were right, sorry, I thought you weren't, but the village did work on Fairway Green.
It it doesn't strike a a chord in me, but I can ask.
Well, well, that the Fairway Green did uh run a uh large drainage pipe uh to the retention pond from the other side of the the road. Um because we used to help ourselves, but I don't think the village was involved in that.
There were some, I mean, I remember there was some agreement where the villages' workers had to be indemnified for going on private property, cause it is private property.
I I know we have easements for Fairway uh for Fairview, for Fairway. Uh I said, the only, the only one I can really recall in the last couple of years in that general area was we, we did some drainage work on post on Cove Road, which is private. Uh but we have easements for.
It wasn't there.
And I I'll ask, I I just does not, it does not seem familiar to me.
Okay, thanks. Thanks. Sorry. Thanks for coming back.
Um we're gonna open up the hearing for PLL T two zero two three, um chapter six exempting certain solar panel projects from BAR review. Uh do we have any comments?
I'll, I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Hi.
And maybe Bob looks like he wants to explain it.
This law has been for you in several iterations. It it basically uh allows for the installation of solar panel without return criteria without redo by the NIMBOK for the, just like any other experience change. They're part of the uh approval of board of that surely.
And and it'll get us sixteen, is it like sixteen points to Climate Smart Community? It gets, it's something.
Second point.
Six points, okay.
Yeah, then.
Yes, okay. So it also gets a six points to a Climate Smart Community and a ten thousand dollar grant.
Yeah, well, we guess is the points is adoption of the permit. But this is a hurdle which we've identified that we'd like to pass, clear it up, so we can get to the point of being able to adopt the permit to get the points. So it's a precursor to adopting the permit, hopefully.
David Freeman again. I can share the music privately. We strongly support this law. Uh but we emphasize, as as Dan said, it's a first step. It's not really a solar permit law. It's a law that takes their way in obstacle. But we're hoping that after we pass this law, you'll move quickly to actually adopt a solar permit law with the solar permit that has been uh developed by the New York State Energy Administration. That's, that's our community. So these, these do go forward.
I kind of, I'll make the motion close the public here.
Second, all in favor? I'll make a motion to adopt this law.
Second.
All in favor?
Okay. Um next, we're gonna open a public hearing on PLL AA twenty twenty-three regarding use of leaf blowers.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, is this, Bob, do you have an update for us on this?
This again prohibits gasoline powered leaf blowers. And what it does is essentially coordinate the village's law with the towns and so things, so the car spot, when there are inconsistencies in terms of when you can use leaf blowers.
The town, is it the town?
Any comments?
Go ahead.
I'm gonna see this the last time we see. Uh David Freeman again. Um on behalf of the Committee for the Environment, we strongly support this law. Uh we note that we already have a leaf blower law. It was amended a couple of meetings ago. This is an improvement and it's consistent with what we had recommended earlier, which is to make the dates consistent with the village of Larchmont, cause that's been a source of confusion and anxiety for people. Because different jurisdictions have different rules. And also, as I read it anyway, eliminates the municipal exemption, which we thought was important, because I think the village should lead by example and not do things that it's prohibiting other people from doing. So we very much appreciate the amendments that have been proposed. We think they're an improvement on the existing law in the environment's adoption.
Thank you. And any com- any other comments? Did you have any comments that you wanted to make or just?
Like that's a lot, a large one in Marinac.
Well, you have to come to it in my.
Evening, board. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mayorship. Um David Smith from Hampshire Country Club. Um we are managed by Hampton Golf and Hampton Golf's uh president and owner is MG Orinder. Um MG not is not only the um president of Hampton Golf and manages Hampshire, because all he was the thirty-third president of the PGA of America. And has quite uh an abundance of experience in golf operations. Um he was not able to be here tonight, so I am speaking on his behalf um from MG. Uh my name is MG Orinder. I'm CEO and president of Hampton Golf, which operates over thirty golf and country clubs in six states, including Hampshire Country Club in the village of Marinac. I'm reaching out to comment on the proposed ordinance regarding all electric blowers and the impact to operations that it imposes not only on us, but many other operators in the village. We pride ourselves on being good stewards of the environment and have had for over five years handheld battery driven blowers and will continue to do so. Those are for smaller areas, areas around the clubhouse, um sidewalks, stairs, patios. Um the truth is with the electric blowers, they need to be recharged every thirty minutes or so and charged from an electric source that leaves a carbon footprint. Not to mention the impact of battery disposal. Lead acid batteries have protocol for disposal. Lithium batteries, the jury is still out on. We don't know the impact, what they will be. These electric blowers are not equipped for large spaces such as parks, schools, or golf courses. And the buffalo blowers that we use are necessary, especially in the fall with an abundance of fallen leaves on a great uh sizable property. As well as aerification um and other large maintenance initiatives undertaken throughout the year, not only by us, but for village uh employees as well. The buffalo blower does come in a, in electric version, but not battery driven. So in order to use these larger buffalo blowers, we would need to purchase a generator that is not able to be plugged in. And both noise and environmental impact is probably greater than what you get from gas blowers. This would be a hardship not only on us, but many others in the community. And I I can't imagine your parks and rec department is in favor of this either. Um we all believe in the same equity as Mr. Freeman uh alluded to, that you would need to enforce this across all concerns, both public and private. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else?
Um yeah, my only comment is that um it all comes down to enforcement. Our leaf blower law has been on the books for, I don't know, fifteen years. It's never really been proactively enforced. Um and unless this village is gonna make a commitment to enforcing it, the new law, it's gonna be the same thing. People are just gonna ignore it. Um so you know, you can pass whatever law you want. I mean, I've heard from people who live in Larchmont, it's the same issue. They're not enforcing it. Um so whatever, I mean, I don't have a problem with you passing it. I just don't think it's gonna be meaningful. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Me again. By the way, congratulations. You enforce the law, we're in law here. Why don't you let us at least to use this lower in the wall and when you have a lot of leaves in it springing up. We don't have to do it in the summer all the time. I lose the last work for fall cleanup and spring cleanup. So we can go to work. But it's impossible to work without it in, in, in the ball, all the things we have and uh spring cleaning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chris Bodie. Uh I am the golf course superintendent at Hampshire Country Club and I uh am opposed to the gas powered uh ban on leaf blowers. Um the Hampshire Country Club uh I have to take care of around a hundred and twenty acres of land, which is home to over two thousand trees. As that is an extreme amount of leaves that I have to clean up. And according to your law, you're telling me that I have to only use three electric blowers for my property, that right now I'm using ten to fifteen to clean up on a daily basis. Uh during the months of uh April, May, October, November, and December, uh anywhere between forty and a hundred man hours per day. I'm, I've spent uh cleaning the property, uh using these gas powered blowers uh while I'm, all I'm doing is piling them up and I'm mulching these leaves and trying to be as, as environmentally friendly as possible. And I'm using those leaves, spreading them out, so I can use them in this organic fertilizer. I do currently use electric blowers out on the golf course uh around homes um in the surrounding area for uh noise suppression. However, it takes close to five to ten times longer and an additional manpower and with the, because of the lack of power that these blowers uh uh provide. and an additional manpower, and with the, because of the lack of power that these blowers, uh, uh, provide. Just the tea and green areas is five acres of my hundred and twenty acres that I need to take care of. Um, I try. This law, uh, will be de- detrimental to, uh, a lot of my management practices, such as, uh, basic mowing of the grass. Because of golf course, the grass is mowed anywhere between a tenth of an inch to a half of an inch, and the surface must be clean for these mowers to operate, and I have no other option. There's no other equipment that I can use to cut this, uh, to cut the grass that low. Um, on a golf course, it's, it's expected to be as clean as possible so that people can find their golf balls as easy and to keep up, um, uh, the beautification of the course. Uh, aerification of greens, tees, fairways is a process of removing cores and replacing the soil, uh, with sand. Um, these blowers are used to remove the debris that is, uh, pulled up out of the ground. Um, and without that, I can't, uh, uh, I can't complete this process. And there's no other way to remove this soil. I can't use rakes. I can't use shovels. Well, uh, gas-powered blowers are the only thing that, that works. Um, it is challenging enough with the restrictions, um, that are already in place, uh, through the village, uh, with the mandate of no blowers through, through the summer. Um, and I have to sacrifice a lot of details that I would like to improve. Um, not to mention the significant amount of increased physical labor that would be required uh, to have to hand rake all these leaves to pick them up. So, in conclusion, uh, uh, it's basically impossible for me to clean up a golf course with three electric blowers on my property. Um, it's just not possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone want to close for the, oh, we have more of our names.
Good evening. Good evening. We are in Chester Park, correct? Speaking for myself. Uh, when you guys first started talking about this law, we had Jeff here, and he was telling you about Florence Park, uh, being able to handle that with his guys in an eight-hour shift. If we went with electric blowers, it would take me three days, he said. Uh, so, we just had a big rainfall, and I don't know if anybody's passed by Richville Road, but you can see all the leaves that are out there. The one thing electric blowers will not do is move that stuff. You know, and with, with you guys, guys here talking about flooding from Old Post Road and Old Road in front of Equinox and Richville Road, when you drive down there, and the leaves are covering the drains, you see the water's pushed out into the middle of the road. So, you know, I think what the landscapers are saying, what they're saying is that there's times of year where, like the summer, where you have your windows open, and you don't want all that blowing around. That's understandable. Um, but when you need it to do cleanup, having two thousand trees, or having Richville Road a condensed area, having Tomer Courts and other condensed area, uh, it just doesn't work. I mean, it's a good law in theory. Maybe in ten, twenty years where you have the, uh, technology and electric blowers, it, it can work, but like most of the guys will tell you, an electric blower, if it's a single one, it's a battery, lasts a half an hour. If you can get four on a backpack, okay, so now you have to have a mobile charging unit. Because how do you charge four batteries? You know, you get an hour, I think they pick you back, so you probably get an hour out of, an hour and a half out of four. So you have that in your pickup truck. How do you then charge that for the next six hours of your day? So again, my matter, we, we did the bad law. We did the puppy mill law. We do laws that other towns do, and it's great to be in conjunction, but sometimes you have to step back and say, we don't have to, you know, so goes the needle, so goes the thread. You don't have to always follow what they do. I think, I, I tagged a bunch of you guys in a video. I wanted you to see the aerifying process. You know, if you can picture, like, the Harbor Island or even the golf course, a fairway. Now, you have a blower that drives down on a tractor, which will push whole line of, of the plugs, and you keep doing that. For you to do that, a fairway, you'd probably need ten guys, you know, going side by side, doing that. That would totally limit what you can do. Now, I don't know, did we see the, the villagers exempted themselves from this law? No.
So, just, I think to clarify, we, the, the, the ga- gas leaf blowers were already banned. This law revises that law and removes the exemption for the village. So this law is really about aligning the dates with the Larchmont dates and making it apply to the village.
Okay.
So, it's not, it's not necessarily, we're not, we're not discussing gas versus electric, because we already banned the gas.
Yeah.
I mean, I know it's being discussed.
During certain months, but we're looking at a total ban of all gas laws, right? Is that what this law is?
That's what, that's what we, we already did that.
We already have that in place now. This is, this is to allow a type of, to allow just gas.
No.
No. I mean, it's just electric, sorry.
No, that we did that. We banned gas.
And we have, I've seen, but this we're doing is to allow electric.
Exactly. But we already, we are.
Already have gas banned. That's, that's.
Right. So, I, I just.
So we, but.
So, you can, you can get in lines.
But so, gas blowers are banned.
We did that, Ben. I want to say, what was the date that we, that was September, October?
Yeah.
That we passed the first law?
It was a couple of months, it was.
In the last two months, I think.
Mm-hmm. It was effective November seventeen, okay? So, at, at New York State, so, but actually it takes effect in May. Um, and so this is to make sure that the village is no longer exempt, and that the dates align with the, with the Village of Larchmont dates. That's where we are now.
So, so, just so everybody here knows, you can't use gas blowers now anyway.
Right.
Not let it go either.
Use.
I don't acknowledge either.
It doesn't start till May of twenty twenty-four.
Right, twenty twenty-four.
Twenty-four, but it's, but that, that, it, so this is simply about not exempt, including the village. Including the village, and changing the dates to align with the Larchmont dates.
So we could play some time. Yeah, I did. That's what I was, I'm sorry. That's, that's, that's what we're figuring out, because I think the majority of people here are not aware that there is a ban.
Oh, we didn't. We did not know.
Well, it's, that takes effect in May.
It takes effect in May.
In May.
It's not gonna be reversed, so it is, it's on the books.
Well, this, this law doesn't reverse it. This law includes the village in the prohibition.
So what's the point we're talking then? Why you let us talk? It was the time here. You already knew that.
Well, because it's a public here. I mean, I guess.
Sorry. I'm sorry. Namely, respect you, talk. But if you guys already knew that the law was passed, we didn't know what the sense is for us to be in topic.
Well, 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 sir, and you're allowed, you're allowed to object to it. I mean, if you, if you want to express your opinion, it's, it's perfectly valid for you to tell us that, that we're wrong. I mean, that, that's fine.
Yes, we do, but it's not gonna change anything.
Well, unless we change our mind, no.
What's, what's the sense to talk? While we, all the landscapers, people, that we live in Amerenac, would have a letter sent to our home that this law was passed on email. We'll touch pay and register.
I, I mean, so, I mean, we had, we had, we had a public hearing, you know, sir, we had, I think, I think there were two public hearings the fir- the first time we passed it, and there were people who came and spoke, and I mean, I, we don't send a letter to everybody's house every time we pass a law. I mean, I think we're at, what number law are we at now? That's not, I mean, there's, there are public notices, and people, people.
Then they send the letters when we're gonna pay the taxes, we like though.
But they do, they do, they do send the tax bill. They do send the tax bill. They do send the tax bill, but.
We can get no help at all from this village, from nothing, only to pay taxes, let's say. While we can get two weeks, three weeks in the fall cleanup, that we can work and pay our bill and pay the taxes to this village, and pay our bills too. Or in the spring cleanup. You bend it in the summertime. I'm fun in the summertime, but how we're gonna work during the whole season when I'm blowing? You guys have a better idea than that's how we're gonna work? We're gonna be back to be a hundred years ago, be back to be slaved through by hand? You guys having better idea to help us?
I, I think what, I think what, it's not just with, what this gentleman is saying. I think it's just a consensus of just in general. So, if we listen to what people come up and say, or they come up here and say it present in the meeting, or they speak to us on the street, or however, if something does not work in, in all regards, and try to figure out a middle. And but also understand as residents, like, sometimes, and not all the times, it, while something may benefit the community as a whole, it may not necessarily always benefit you in general. So it's just taking into consideration all of it. So, I don't know. I think Bob stated what this law was about before, uh, putting up the public hearing. So.
I agree with you. It doesn't benefit all us.
Right.
It benefit all the homeowners.
No, I get, I get it.
And every week, all this landscaping, we quit working for three months. I wanna see who's gonna cut his breasts. I wanna see who's gonna clean all this house. Who's gonna clean? The snake is gonna come in the house? I don't know who's gonna come in the house, if it will maintain? I think we're so lucky to have people that they're still doing this work. And you guys, you guys wanna put us out of work? Let's see what's done. You guys wanna put us out of work? We want that. We asked you for two weeks and two weeks, none of it now. So guys, not to do with that, yeah, good night. My life is a sky, so we're abandoned. Thank you.
You won't.
We can probably have a committee for the environment. But I understand that managing a golf course is a completely different kettle of fish than most suburban properties, so you know, if the board feels the need to come to some agreement with Hatcher, then I think that would be a fair thing. I think one of the issues we have with the leaves is that they're all on them. The, the reason they're blocking drains and on the street is because they get blown out there.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And I think, yes, they're trying to restrict the noise and the, and I realize it's, you know, different opinions are linked. I've said before, I think we should be encouraging people to mulch leaves in place, right? That I don't end up on the street. Um, there are health benefits to the operators. And I think, and I applaud the other, I think the other change you made of this law was, um, regarding enforcement.
No, I will. I, I thought so too. And I'm looking at, and, and I, and I didn't catch this when I was reviewing it last night, but we didn't change that. This law doesn't change that provision, so it's, it's, it still says it is an affirmative defense to liability under the subsection R, the person operating the leaf blower was doing so at the direction of another person who is identified by the person operating a leaf blower and is found guilty of violating the subsection R. So we didn't, didn't add the Larchmont language in this version, which I thought we had agreed to add. Right. So.
Okay, so.
Going back.
Mm-hmm. So, I, I mean, so I, I thought, okay, so I'm with you.
The thing I do, I mean, I do, um, fully support the idea that the village itself should practice.
What we preach.
Yeah, and, you know, I drove past Gillies Park the other day. My understanding was that we were gonna, um, start mulching leaves, and it looked like it had just been all blown off. So, you know, I think there are, yeah, there are things that we can be doing better, uh, who's, yeah. The, all of it, you know, the stuff, look into those and adopt. Thank you.
So, I, I will, I will say that I, this law will not go into effect until May twenty-first, so even, even the previous law that we adopted doesn't go into effect on May twenty-first. And so I think, you know, I do think we only have one golf course in, within the bounds of the village. I mean, there, well, wing foot, well, wing foot.
Yeah.
Um, too, so, um, it's completely in the town, right? It's completely in the town. So, um, and the town doesn't have a leaf blower, leaf blower law, and the Village of Larchmont doesn't have a golf course, but they do have a lot of parks and some big parks. And maybe we need to rethink how this law gets administered. We really have to think, I mean, the, the reality is people weren't here for the first one, and the other reality is we don't enforce this law, so. How are, you know, what, how are we gonna enforce this law? I mean, it's, we're never, I mean, I, I don't know how we would enforce the law on a, on a huge golf club, because our code-enforcing people aren't covering it. So it's really a law that's, um, easier to enforce in residential neighborhoods of smaller lots, and if we're not enforcing it, I think maybe we have a, maybe we're better off trying to educate people to using, to not using the gas blowers until I, I mean, I don't, I don't know. I'm.
So are you.
I'm, I'm, I, I think that, I, I, the, I'm not, the, this law doesn't have the, the change that I really thought was important, which was the provision for, like, the escape clause. I mean, we, we were gonna change that, and so I, I think that, that for me needs to be changed. Um, because I don't think it's fair to just say somebody made me do it. The whole idea was everybody in the chain, whether it was, it was the property owner, the person actually doing the work, and the person, the landscaper who owned the company, all of the people involved are incentivized to comply with the law. Um, and I think if we don't have that, there's no benefit. Um, and, and maybe, but if the village, the village shouldn't be exempt if, if, if residents are, aren't. Um, and I, managing a golf course is a whole different dynamic, and maybe there's like a boundary of doing it within feet of houses. I don't know. And there's also gonna have, there's also clearly gonna be a component of people doing the right thing and working on the honor system, but if we're not enforcing it all, that begs the other question about why.
So, maybe.
I'll, I'll, may I, may I, may I jump in? First of all, we had, we did start enforcing it, uh, uh, with, with a, with a enforcement blitz a few months ago. And, uh, and there, there has been spotty, there was spotty, uh, uh, enforcement before that with, um, with the, with code violations. Um, we can do that. Uh, I think the golf courses have the same excuse that the village had, is that we got a lot of property we can't afford to do it. So if we're gonna, um, exempt them, we, we need, we would want to exempt the, the village too. I think we, I think we just, this is the way it's going. This is going to happen. I think, I think we, we ought to just understand that this is the way the world is, is headed and, uh, and, uh, and, and do it, and maybe get those changes that Nora is talking about in there, so nobody can, um, can cop a plea by saying, um, you know, my boss made me do it.
Or possibly can we, you know, while it is the way the world, that it is the world, way that the world is going, I apologize. But is there technology to support that, like, in terms of large spaces for golf courses, for parks, for our municipality? Is there, it does a technology support that, because what we saw, even when, um, Jeff pro- proposed the, uh, the, the, the mower, that had to be, uh, it, it had to be, um, taken to the parks on a trailer. That was another added cost that we did, we didn't want to spend. So it's just paying attention to all of that. And possibly can, should we, can we wait until the technology supports itself? Not saying that we are not gonna move forward, and that we don't want to be a more environmentally sound community, but if the technology is not there, it's not there. Then my suggestion, um, is, this could go on the next work session, is that we Is that we speak to the department heads that have to enforce. Various different things at our next work session and talk about, have a conversation about what what is the hindrance. On on all levels.
On on this, I I I will, and I I don't mean to keep jumping in, but this will be the last time, on this. We either lead or we follow, and this is, this is a and and we're gonna try and sync up with Larchmont and 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 head in this right direction. Or we'll wait till the world makes us change, I mean, that's essentially what we're saying, and plus, a lot of this, a lot of the excuses on this. Revolve around the monoculture of lawns and the way we treat leaves now, and um and some of that thinking needs to change. I mean, you don't have to rake up all the leaves, you can mulch them where they are, there's a million, a million other solutions to this that don't uh that don't require. Um like a gas powered leaf blowers, so I'll leave it at that.
That maybe, that might, that might be true for, you know, for my yard or your yard or many yards, but I don't think that's true for golf course. Um and I don't think that's true for certain parks and certain fields, so I mean, there are some places that need to be leaf free.
Maybe we just wanna bring it back to this law. And if we're not ready to move forward because of the feedback, then we should do that.
But we've already adopted.
I, that's my point, is that the, what we're talking about has already been adopted.
Right, so.
But if you're gonna revise the law, you can revise it any way you want.
Yeah, right, but we shouldn't leave it as is, is my point, maybe we don't.
But I would agree with Trustee Lucas that the language in the enforcement component is the get out of jail free card. Um, I'm not sure why you didn't incorporate.
I think we intended.
Language, which was that violations could be given to the operator, the homeowner and the business owner. You have to bring everybody into this, and at the end of the day, you gotta enforce it, or it's gonna be like it is now.
Right.
Our street, Trustee Lucas lives on the same street I do, it's pretty good because. The people that do your yard does like five houses on our street and they never use blowers. Um but still, every morning at eight o'clock. I hear the blowers start up, there is no easier law in the world to be able to enforce than the leaf blower. You have your officers drive around with their windows open in the spring and follow every sound they hear. So. The point is, I think, is to have laws that are meaningful at the end of the day, and I'm just not sure it was accomplishes that, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I I would recommend that. We do nothing with this law because. Really worth, even if we passed it tonight, it's not gonna get. So it it doesn't take effect on May first. And and we really think about what we heard tonight and think if we can figure out a law that's that that gets to the heart of what we're trying to do. Without making it impossible for the village and some larger property owners to keep their property clean, and at the same time. To lose point and to Liam's point, get. Educate people about how, about not blowing so many leaves and not creating those piles that are, that Jared mentioned earlier. And figure out. How to educate people to. Mulch in the leaves and we let the leaves lea- let the leaves stay, and maybe we, I think we didn't, we haven't, you know, like, this might be a. A a more of a term of art than a term of science, and there's a lot of science that said leaf blowers are bad for the people, use them and bad for the people that are around them. Um and the gas leaf blowers are worse for. Noise pollution and for the two stroke engines than the electric ones, the electric ones also. Use other kinds of resources, and I think maybe we need to rethink, go back to the drawing board and rethink this. So I make a motion, we.
Hey guys. Sorry. From the record, Melbourne Avenue. So I agree totally with during the summer, no gas law, any kind. Gas should be used in the spring, gas should be used in the fall, if you go out there tonight, try to mulch, it's not gonna happen with the battery operator. Lawnmower, it's not gonna happen, it's not powerful enough, technology is not there today. In reference to enforcement, roll down the windows, I think the officers have other issues to deal with at the same time. Unless you just get one code enforced and it doesn't. So again, in addition, schools are able to use it. It's not right, it's straight across the board, trying to do Florence Park or any other parts, major trees, it's not gonna happen, there's gonna be labor costs, it'll be more overtime. Technology's not here yet, I think the last time I was here, I also gave you new technology on blowers. It's getting better on the gas end, but again, if you go out there today and try to. To blow a leaf with a little. And the old battery thing, it's not gonna work, it's gonna be time consuming. So again, I would just say spring, fall, gas for certain, summer. Battery.
Speaking of overtime, it's getting late.
It doesn't seem like to me. I'm I'm in Mayo.
That's good, we we're also paying the bills for everybody to stay.
Difference residing in Marinerick since nineteen fifty, my family is also sort of a community through our landscape business, which has operated for over seventy years. Like you've heard from uh some recent speakers. And I think there was a misconception going into tonight about. What laws were in effect, I don't think we were necessarily aware of this, had been. Um enacted when I should be going, but um. The the. Gas baller, the gas baller ban is impractical uh right now because of. Uh the insufficient solutions that uh there are right now with the cascading effects on our businesses, employees and our clients. And literature distributed earlier this year, uh that reinforces the ban of community. Alternatives such as encouraging residents to let leaves remain in place on their properties, expulsion were suggested. Uh the reality is that our customers largely want the leaves removed, and in some cases, the safety of residents is at risk. Uh if the leaves are neglected, um there are some elderly uh residents that have. Slipped or complained of a of a potential something hazard if leaves are not properly. Um mulching, although a practice we employ whenever possible is not feasible when the gravitally is wet. Uh eliminating the already reduced window of operation, we have to utilize blowers will make our jobs exceedingly more difficult. All the while increasing the strain on our employees, uh enlarging our overhead, and ultimately, it compels us to pass on additional costs. To our consumers, which uh no one obviously wants. Uh while we support efforts to be more environmentally conscious, it must be done in tandem with common sense measures. Uh that don't harm businesses, our employees and our customers, and are already trying economically, period. And just please consider the the cost and consequences for acting any kind of unilateral ban. If we can allege some agreement as we've had uh this past year at least. That we said to ban them in the summer for gas blowers and um. Even utilize them during the spring and the fall, that's what is a fair compromise right now. Like you've heard, the technology is just not there with the electric blowers to do the work that. The gas blowers can do, uh everyone wants to be greener, I I certainly can speak for for our company to be. I think greener if the technology was there, but right now, it's just not. Uh it's not comparable to the gas blowers, uh and it's also. Not uh efficient with our time. It it's just gonna increase our overhead too much and increase our buzz and eventually we pass that on to our consumers, so. Thank you for your.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um I'm Chan, I work at Beach Point Club, um we are a golf golf club, not like I'm sure, but we have twenty acres of land and. Are we a hundred trees, so we do have a lot of leaves, um we do follow the rule, we do follow the law, although. People are saying there's no enforcement because our neighbors, our members who live uh around us, if they see us using gas blower. They will email us and say they will they will call, um so we we were trying to do the right thing. Uh however, please, you know, um think how much land we have, how much leaf we have, we are happy to work with you guys. For us, you know, once a week is more than enough, and um we don't have to blow our air company in the morning to wake our neighbors up. But one P M, two P M, whatever makes sense. Just, you know, please work with us and um. I agree, there's no technology works, at least for now, um you know, we do have electric blower, but they're only for small space. Um twenty acres is not gonna work for with your uh your electric blowers, so, thank you.
Anyone want a motion? So we have.
Are there any more comments? Do you wanna make a motion?
But we can either make.
We're not close, are we closing this?
And do nothing. And decide we're gonna put something else on the work session agenda for first weekend in January or discuss what we put on it. Or we can um close the hearing and either vote or not vote.
Um I own a landscape company here in Marinerick, and through all the conversation. Um one thought that I have, there's a private road pretty well known in Marinerick that. It's very limited services, and I'm not sure why, to get garbage pickup, uh they get snow plowing, but they don't pick up leaves in the neighborhood. Um they don't, the village doesn't help with storm cleanup, so if you get a sandstorm blowing up over the seawall. Um village doesn't provide any services or cleanups, we have the contract with the neighborhood. To take care of the road, causeway. Um where we have maybe thirteen or fourteen accounts on this road. I think you people know what I'm talking about, these people pay well over a hundred thousand dollars a year in property taxes. With limited services, but they depend on my company to keep the road free of sand, which is a danger. Obviously, it's a long road, can't be swept, can't be done with an electric blower, has to be done with a gas powered blower. So we've had instances where we're trying to clean the road after sandstorms or windstorms. Blow blows the sand up, where we've had the police show up and give us summons, so. I've been in situations where I've come to court, I paid, I go back out to the neighborhood, and there's another company with a shoulder blower. Backpack blower blowing right next to the house that I was just summoned for, so the enforcement is not there, so. My question is, what do I tell these clients that I have to collect the leaves because the village doesn't collect the leaves in this neighborhood like they do. Everywhere else in Marinerick. What am I gonna tell them, because I need to collect them in one spot, and I have the equipment to suck them up, but I have to get them to one place. How do I do that on these properties? How do I clean the road? And it's not the residents, by the way, in that neighborhood. I don't believe that it called, it's people in another neighborhood with the sound traveling, somehow they hear the blower and they show up, it's obvious that we're doing. How how do I manage something like that? So we're talking exemptions for golf course, which I understand, the parks, I understand. But we're also talking about certain applications where there's no other way to do this than with a blower. And I see, I believe it says, there's a seven day window after a storm. Did I read that correctly in the law that would allow us to use the blower? So that sounds like. It makes sense, but it puts us in a position where. We have other accounts in other towns, so now you're saying to me, okay, you've got seven days, drop everything else you're doing, go to Marinerick that has been. Pushing you out with blowers, now use your blowers because now we need you, clean up your storm. And then go away, but do it within seven days, okay? Dave, make sure you get that, or we're gonna give you a ticket. So now you're putting us in a situation where we can't win. So, you know, policing it is great, enforcing it is great. But I'm not the kind of guy who's gonna show up after I just paid a ticket in court. And see somebody else using a blower next door that I'm gonna call, because I think our police have other things to do, and there's other code enforcements like. You know, flooded areas with people with, you know, illegal apartments, I'd rather see time put into that, and yeah, maybe people abuse the blowers and they shouldn't. But we're put in situations, there's so many unique situations that I just don't think one. Blanket law that just says no gas power blowers works. And my other comment is, I'm not sure about the village of Larchmont and their law, but has anyone looked into. Those properties versus the village properties, my understanding is Larchmont properties are a lot smaller, so maybe you can rake them, maybe you can sweep the driveways. But in Marinerick, I think we have larger properties, so now you're telling us we have to do this work manually. That is just a burden on the company, on the homeowner, it um puts us in a real spot because. Like someone else mentioned, our customers want the place cleaned, they have valuable properties. They've done what the law is, but we're we're put in a situation that I got a ticket, that guy's using a blower, I'm just gonna hire him. And now we're competing with each other, fighting with each other, trying to get this thing done with really very little help from from the village, so. My biggest point is, what do I tell the people on this private road that I can't blow the sand off after a storm? And I'm not talking about a storm that everybody else has limbs down, I'm talking about the right wind coming in off the off the sound. Picks up the sand and throws it on the road, that's not, everybody in town is not, or the village is not dealing with that, but this community is. And I have to, you know, what do I do? I think, I think it has to be rethought, I think you have to have more conversation with people who are doing it daily. Um that last comment is the um mulching. Works in certain, certain times, it works from September fifteenth to October fifteen, and maybe November fifteen to December fifteen. From October fifteenth to November fifteenth, that real heavy leaf drop. I don't know if you guys have ever used mulching mowers, they create a tremendous amount of dust.
No way. No way.
It's almost impossible to pick up that amount of leaves in that particular window, and I challenge anyone. To show me how that could be done efficiently and safely and properly, I just don't think the machines can handle it. And I've actually seen mowers overworking so much in dry leaves that the leaves have caught on fire from the heat from the machine. That's a danger. So, yeah, in theory, it's great, we all wanna work with the environment, but. I think there's, there's way more more work that needs to be done before we make this kind of a decision, and yeah, we wanna be leaders. But we don't wanna be foolish about it either, because once we go down that rabbit hole, it'll be hard to get out.
So. Obviously, we have to revisit.
I'm moving close to public hearing.
Second.
All in favor.
Alright.
Aye.
Or just get closed and revisit?
Yep.
Okay, we will be revisiting. Thank you.
You gotta come back.
In January, we revisit. Have a good night, gentlemen.
I think, I think we might.
Thank you.
You're gonna stay? Yeah.
Yeah. Be comfortable.
Okay, we're moving on to the audit of the bills. Uh comment, well, uh the resolution authorizing the budget transfer for over budget expense lines. Uh comment, uh the resolution authorizing the budget transfer for over over budget expense lines.
For a uh transfer of two. Uh two thousand dollars from uh building department equipment accounts, which are two hundred serious accounts. To the uh four ten, you know, supplies line for the department. That seems like office supplies and general, you know, supplies you you find in all it's. Office supplies is kind of explanatory as to what what the what the line is used for. Uh the second one is, uh we had uh for the uh. The staff overtime associated with the fireman's parade. Uh we uh need to transfer uh money from the uh it's like the.
Laura's here.
Oh, Laura's here, that's right. Laura? She's asleep. This is is it, you know, we've done with our uh celebrations budgets, we have separate line cost centers. For various events, so this is just going from uh one account to the other. For to transfer overtime expenses, uh the final is uh for the um. Suicide prevention walk, uh we're one hundred sixty-four dollars and ninety-two cents over on the overtime associated with that event.
Is that, that's police coverage?
Um it could be.
Or is it uh um staff too?
It's staff.
The parks.
Is there a reason why I went over? Is it because of um the event went over? I know it was raining that day.
Uh I, I'm not sure, um you know.
I don't, I don't know, but I know it was raining and then they're the, I think they started late and um. And so that's possibly wrong.
Yeah, and and I'll say, you'll, you'll, you know, for thirty-four hundred dollars, that could only be, you know, maybe maybe having to assign. One or two additional officers to the event, uh because remember they have, if it's overtime, they have a four hour minimum call time. Uh times two, that's eight hours, uh you know, the uh. You know, for every, it 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 could add up pretty quickly, unfortunately.
Um, any comments?
Make a motion to do the transfers.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We don't have any old business.
I'll move to the audit.
Oh, sorry, sorry, my mistake.
You're gonna have to sign.
What?
You have to sign it.
Uh that's the, they should sign the order of bills, not the uh.
Right.
The order of bills, yeah.
Right, once she, once we approve it.
Yeah.
Who be?
Does everyone review them?
Yes, I'll be very quick, I have a lot more, but I'm gonna make three um comments page. Thirty three live view technologies, this is for the cameras, the river cameras. I guess you're gonna take up again, I'm just surprised that. I mean, I believe that it says here, monthly software and equipment. Subscription cameras, December twenty twenty-three. Ten thousand three hundred and sixty-eight dollars, last payment was twenty percent more, it was twelve thousand two hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Do we know what our actual monthly payment is?
Is it because some cameras weren't working?
Is that because one of the cameras wasn't working?
I believe so, I think one of the cameras was damaged, uh and needs to be replaced.
So we have to pay when?
No, if it's lower, it's because, you you if it's a higher number, that it was because we had more cameras in. Proper working order, you what you're asking is, why was it higher last month than it was this month?
Okay.
And I I believe that one of the cameras was damaged and inoperable, so we're not gonna pay for. License or for for software for a camera that's not working.
Okay, that makes sense. Um. Page forty-one. During the work session, the village engineer talked about that the um. Drain lines through fairway were televised with the truck that the village had bought with the town of Marinerick. Um, but we have a charge on here from Fred Cook for almost three thousand dollars for videotape. Why are we paying an outside contractor when we have the old own equipment?
Go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, we don't own the equipment, we share it with the town of Marinerick and we don't always have access to the equipment if we need to get something. So.
And so you couldn't wait a day, I mean.
It's it's not just a day. It's oftentimes not just a day.
I'm sorry.
It's oftentimes not just a day.
So.
I guess what you're saying.
And this was.
That much by the town and just doesn't seem to make sense to me. I mean, I don't know how many lines they televise or we televise, but I don't think it's that complex.
Well, I mean, if it's sewers, it's, you know, that's, you know, a little bit more of a priority than storm. Uh because then you're talking, getting into public health uh infrastructure.
Um, okay, right below that on forty-one is City of Rye. And the caption reads, two thousand twenty-three sewer services, it's January and July. And twenty twenty-three refuse. Village of the Marinerick for Shore Road.
Yeah, so I can explain that, so Shore Road, which is located. Sorry.
Greenhaven.
It's located in Greenhaven, to get to Shore Road, you have to drive through the city of Rye. So those homes that are located on Shore Road, instead of the village collecting the garbage from those locations. We contract with the town, the city of Rye to collect the garbage.
The same with the sewer.
Yeah, because the sewer feeds into their sewer system.
Yeah. Um, and this is a procurement issue, I do think it's important how the village spends money. Janet King on page nine, their combined bill for the month is twelve thousand dollars. Which translates to about hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. Um, I believe this is the contract left over from COVID. Um, and I'm just wondering if we're gonna put this out for bid and look for a better price.
Um, if you're talking about page nine, ten thousand two hundred and forty-three dollars and sixty-six cents.
Right, there's two other lines there.
Correct, it says multiple invoices, so I do not believe that would be a monthly thing, that's gonna be multiple, but I'll.
I mean, we do uh special cleanings uh after events, so if a room gets used, we have to bring someone to a deep cleaning. Uh I mean, there there is a monthly charge for uh cleaning our buildings. Uh you know, we we've talked about uh possibly putting together a bid package or seeing if there's someone available on contract. Uh in general, we've been pretty satisfied with Janet King, I mean, honestly, when it comes to cleaners. You know, the only time you notice them is when they're not doing their job.
I understand, but.
But we we talk.
On the other hand, New York State procurement law is there to protect residents.
And and we've been.
All I'm asking is, why not put out this contract, which is clearly well over the limit that requires competitive procurement? To bid.
I think we're trying to see what our options are, because when we have put this out to bid. When we wind up with a company. Who submits, submits a bid, as opposed to trying to find some sort of contract. So like a state contract where you probably have vendors with a better reputation, better work ethic. We had issues with several of our recent uh sealed bid contracts. For cleaning of the facilities, which have resulted in us having to fire uh vendors, at least on. Uh at least two occasions, and we came close to a third. So it's, uh it's it's something that we we try to be a bit fastidious about, the quality of the. Maintenance and upkeep of these buildings. And we don't wanna be in a position where we have cleaners that we can't trust, who aren't doing the daily work. We're leaving garbages unemptied, bathrooms uncleaned. Uh and it's, unfortunately, it has been a problem in the past, we really haven't had that issue with Janet King, but. It's it's something that is on our radar.
Okay, and and it is the law.
I I I understand, but it's also, I I also wanna make sure that our employees are are working in relatively clean conditions.
No, I and I totally want that too, but I'm just saying, I mean, that's why you have contracts, if people don't perform to them.
That that's the problem is we we have, we've had, we have had to fire our cleaners on several occasions.
And was this, can I ask a question?
Sure.
I know. Um, and was this uh this cleaning service, was it prior to when we first hired them, we did go through procurement?
My recollection is that they, I think they may have been on Sourcewell at the time. Um, I don't know if they're, I don't know if they're on, so uh so for the bear's education, Sourcewell is a. Uh multi-state uh procurement uh system. So we purchase a number of products through contracts that have been let through uh political subdivisions of other. States, other and other municipalities, and we're allowed to piggyback on those contracts. Um I believe they were on contract, on a source well contract, sorry, I can check them. This was in those halcyon days of uh uh the the pan, the beginning of the pandemic.
They were doing special services then, as I recall, they were doing some kind of special disinfecting.
Yeah, it was.
So I just think it would be good to try and revisit it and hopefully find a more competitive. Um reliable vendor.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
I move that we approve.
Can I finish?
Yeah.
Thank you. I'm, that we approved the actual, like, one of the bills.
All in favor?
I'm still, I'm still, I'm still voting no, because I I'm, I I feel that we aren't. Um doing our due diligence in looking at the bills and seeing them, which we're, which. Hopefully, we'll discuss again, it didn't get, we didn't get to it tonight at our very long work session, but. We all have, we all have this document and we'll all read it and.
We all have that, and we said that we were gonna prioritize it at the next meeting.
Yeah, correct.
So.
Next work. And we will.
Work session.
And thank you, we will.
Okay. So we had ten forty, we're gonna move on to new business. Um for a agreement to prepare a request for proposal for the village manager position.
We didn't get to talk about that, so.
Yeah, we didn't.
It's not.
Well. Yeah.
Over that, didn't we?
We didn't do it, we have, it's that, it's gonna be on work session for.
Yeah.
For tw- uh twelve twenty-six.
January eighth, January eighth.
January eighth.
It's just a big eight.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Good job. Resolution authorizing execution of I M A with county prisoner transportation, as we did discuss.
I I make a motion, because that's some, that's an important thing to do.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution authorizing the sale of surplus vehicles, which we did discuss.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, all in favor? Uh this one, resolution authorizing recreation fees and charges for twenty twenty-four. We only had, we had some feedback this year.
We didn't discuss. Last time, but we had, we had a, we had a comment today and.
About the voting.
Well, that was on the harbor fees.
Yeah, this is.
That's the next fee, set of fees.
So we didn't discuss.
I will. I I would, I only do it for the recre, I did harbor under their next, we want all that.
Alright, so regarding the recreation fees.
I'll make the motion.
Well, a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
When do the harbor fees need to be established? I know that the rec fees are important, so the the camp, I mean.
It's it's the same, it's the same kind of situation, you know, the reason. We asked the board to consider the recreation fees and the harbor fees at this time of year. Is because the recreation department and harbor master's office need to start putting together their information. For their mailings that go out in uh January and February. Uh I believe that the uh the fee, the the fees proposed. By the harbor master and viewed with the uh board at work session. I think we said like a two percent increase for non-re, for residents and. Was it five percent for non-residents, and there was like, there were a couple others that hadn't been adjusted in. Four or five years, which I think he requested some uh.
Requested.
One larger increase for.
If I recall, they were all pretty reasonable, I mean, uh they didn't seem out of line.
Yeah, I mean. Kind of the philosophy behind our harbors, you know, it's, it's it's kind of a no frills. Experience when it comes to what you would find with competing marinas. Um and, you know, we've always tried to uh have our fees at at a range that. Kind of supports that activity, um you know, you're not gonna. You know, the only time we ever had Tiger Woods yacht here was during the U S Open, it's not gonna be docked here. You're not gonna find that type of yacht docked here at a, at any time of year. Um you know, our our yacht, our boats are, you know, for the most part, smaller, uh they're not, you know. You know, I said, they're 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 not yachts, they're they're boats. And, you know, we try to keep the uh the fees comparable, I believe Jeff does. Uh Jeff Russo is our harbor master, does uh do an analysis of of his fees on an annual basis and. You know, compares it to what Rice, the state of Rice charging, what New Rochelle's charging, so.
So. But I think the the thing is that we we did have comment tonight and we didn't have comment the last time, and I think. Um, I don't know how we get to, you know, we don't allow comment at work session, so this is when we allow the comment. And at some point, it it may be more beneficial to have comments when we're actually making it. I mean, we, once, once we approve.
Comment now.
No, I know, no, 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 but I mean, I, I mean, you're welcome to comment again, but we heard what you said. And so, and so my point is, the comment is when we're approving them. Not when there's staff who can explain it, so it's not, it does, it it doesn't actually allow us to answer the question. That's raised by the public.
So really quickly, Carl, no more, start there, I've always sat on the red committee, New York's the worst. And I remember we were always on the low end, then recommend from raw, and we're trying to bring it up to comparable to other. Marinas or P structures compared, compared to other local municipalities, so I think we're almost there.
I'm sorry, so you're still saying that we're on the lower end?
We're still.
Yeah, I I I can payback of Carl's, I know from coming to the rec, like, I know our fees compared to other municipalities are. Either significantly lower or lower than others, like, we're just trying to play catch up essentially.
But we, again. But 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 part of it is, again, it's it, it is somewhat of a no frills experience, so we're not charging for frills that aren't there.
But I, for example, I've always hammered that as a camp, and what we offer these children is incredible. Comparisons with other communities, and I've always said, it's a hell of a lot cheaper to go to the camp and hire a nanny or babysitter.
Especially a more, a private camp.
And more fun, right? But again, I think we're getting there. Um so, but we've done it gradually, and I sit on red committee, and I've sat on it many a times. But we're getting there, but we're still at the bottom end, now I don't, don't know much more about the voting, but I think it's probably similar.
I think, yeah, I think, I I remember speaking with Jeff and he kind of explained, I think he explained it at either board meeting or some meeting, that. He slowly, he's he's on the same cycle that we're doing with record, slowly starting to gradually increase the fees, like this year. He he said in the memo, we have it here, that the the most used have been just on or around two percent.
Yeah, and obviously, uh you know, a two percent uh increase in the revenue. Does probably not, probably doesn't keep track with what our, what the our costs are.
Yeah.
We have salary increases, uh there has been tremendous inflation over the last year. Uh so, and 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 even with that inflation, it varies, especially when it comes to. The products that we need to run a marina, like wood and steel and, you know, that stuff, the inflation on that. Is typically a little bit more than your general. The inflation on that is typically a little bit more than your general consumer price index.
Alright, it must've been a long day, but I was just a thought, alright.
I'm gonna.
Good night.
I understand the docks are stuck, need to be replaced every so often, but for the mornings, it doesn't cost the village a penny. And the buildings pay a lot of money for the mornings, and where's that money going? I don't understand.
Also, and and not to say I, I know where the money's going per se, but the, the harbor master um department just put forth a, a new vote that they had, they have to have, cuz their boat was, is not in commission anymore, so it's things that it possibly would pay for. I don't.
Yeah, I mean, we, we don't.
Maintenance as a whole, like, but the, the.
And if you figure out how much income you get from the mornings in the east basin and west basin, and like, that's all gravy. I mean, that's.
I, 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 we don't run it, we don't run it as an enterprise fund, which is like a, especially like you'd see with like a, a pool complex like that. Um, but I, I, I believe that our, in general, our revenues and our expenses are pretty much in line with each other for the harbor operation. And, you know, we also, we don't uh cost account the last penny to the harbor, so things like the fringe benefit rates, uh, the debt service that's associated with various uh harbor related projects isn't part of the, the harbor master's general fund budget. So, but I think overall, uh, if you look at the numbers, we're probably pretty close in terms of what, what the revenue is that we're bringing in as opposed to the expenses to manage the, the harbor, which is a pretty you know, suitably process between a harbor master, uh, he has an office assistant, a laborer, we have the bay constables. Uh, they need uh boats, they need uh, you know, uniforms, they need materials, they need you know, things to maintain the docks, for the boats. Uh, so, I mean, I, I, I believe that our fees are, are, are tracking our expenses.
Also, you know, it would be nice to have pump out stations that work.
And that's something we're, we're well aware.
Most of the time, the pump out in the east basin does not work, all sudden it has not worked over and over. And the western basin sometimes it hurts in terms of this.
Yeah, that, that's um, that's a bit of a different issue, which we can discuss with the board and the requirement for the boat clubs to have their own facilities.
The waters are paying for the mornings and for the docks, I think some of that goes to maintaining.
Thank you. Thanks, Marlon.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Uh. Resolution amending no parking restriction on North Berry Avenue. So. Have we got any?
Yeah.
Okay. No one's, um. No, I'm just trying to get to it. Um, that was uh reducing it by ten feet.
Hmm, yep, and that's just something that, um.
It's, it's a little bit of housekeeping.
Is amending something that was uh written wrong and that he's just trying to fix it.
Okay.
Parking on North Berry.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Oh, yeah.
Ooh, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolution accepting the Westchester Water Works project, A one three nine seven, park lane storage to rehabilitation. Um, and this is our portion of the cost to rehab the water storage thing.
It's about, it's.
About five hundred thousand dollars.
Five hundred seventy thousand dollars.
Uh, make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution authorizing execution of MOU with county for Westchester Records online service. Um, and this is for us to have free access for seven accounts.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second, thank you.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Wow. Resolution authorizing execution of IMA with county to provide mobile radios for VOMPD. Um, and this is for inter-municipal communication with the police departments.
I'll make the motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we already did. Jay, we're gonna move to Ken. Resolution authorizing execution of professional services agreement with AKRF for replacement of the Prospect Avenue, American Avenue, East Prospect Avenue traffic signal. Um, and this is because the traffic signal out by the library was not working and will need to be replaced.
I, I move, so move.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution authorizing budget amendment for police pension.
We didn't discuss that.
You know, this is, yeah, this is a um, uh, for the uh uh police pension, uh, we, we're asking for a uh uh transfer uh to the uh well, there are two treasures, one is for the uh contractual, which, uh, and then one is for the uh uh, the retirement system. Uh. The um uh, as far as the retirement system, uh, the okay, I'm sorry, that's a little, actually, a little bit of an error, we're transferring from uh, in, in the first line, it's uh transferred from ERS to PFRS. ERS is the uh uh employee, employee retirement system, that's the pension system for schlubs like me and Sally. Um, the PFRS is the police and fire retirement system, which is for our exalted police department, uh, so it's, it's a different uh retirement formulas, so uh because police traditionally are on a, a different uh uh career track in terms of the number of years of service and the uh amount of percentage they can get. Uh, their finishing pension typically costs a little bit more, uh, whereas our pension costs a lot, but not as much as the police. Uh. But uh, as far as the uh, uh, the police, uh, with the settlement of the contract, uh, our pension bill went up a little bit. Uh, and, you know, you say a hundred fifty thousand dollars, I think the annual bill is in excess of four million dollars for the uh, the police retirement, so uh well, a hundred thousand, a hundred fifty thousand sounds like a big number, it's uh, kind of a, a, a percentage in terms of uh.
Two million.
It's two million?
On, yeah, if you want her to.
Okay, no, but so it's, it's, well, it's four million dollars total between the two probably. Uh, so, it's two million dollars uh for the police and fire retirement system, so this is accounting for the um uh, the retro payments that were made as part of the settlement of the contract.
Thanks, then.
Um, make motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um. Resolution scheduling public hearings on the hundred year affordable housing project for January eighth and January twenty second, and we said we were gonna change the dates.
Hmm, yeah, so that we can have uh separate meetings, so if we wanna look at that we can, we can, I mean, we can look at the calendar right now, just going on the village website and looking at the calendar. And for January. Ah, it's have to be a Monday.
Can I make a suggestion?
Oh, Lou, it's yours, go ahead.
Um, why, why, why don't we have one, one special meeting, you know, um, uh, uh, that we, which will probably be long and then have the, the second session during a regular me, a, a regular uh meeting, uh, where we can, you know, uh, deal with it afterwards then, alright?
So are you proposing a date?
Well, I, I would think, um, well, depends on where the, where the special meeting would have, we have to add a meeting. If you're gonna have an, an extra meeting, we have to add one meeting, and then we have the, we can have the second public hearing in a, in, in one of our regular meetings.
So how? I think that's not fair, I think we should.
Why is it not fair?
Because it, it shortchanges the applicant that's in their, in our regular meeting.
No, I think he meant.
No, 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 I think they'll, I think they'll both be, and both, I mean, I, I think everybody would be there, I think people are gonna weigh in um on um, on the, the concept, uh, which one they liked or didn't like uh, everything, and I think uh, um, both uh, both respondents will be at both hearings. I don't think we're gonna separate this, set their, separate them by proposal, we already did that.
How well thought out is this, I, because you have two different vendors vying for the same contract, which if you do their presentations, which it sounded like they were going to update them based on feedback they received, could take hour and a half each, cuz they, or even, let's say it's shorter, let's say an hour. And then you're not only gonna have comment on these specific proposals, but you will have comments on the concept of affordable housing, the location and, and other things, so what is the plan for this meeting?
Well, I guess, if you wanna have two, two separate and standalone meetings to, you know, and, and if you think they're gonna be long, fine, I think one, one long meeting and then one, one shorter, more traditional public hearing would, would should be suffice, should, should suffice, let me put it that way.
I think I'm trying to get clarity on the agenda for that meeting, so that I have a better idea of what you guys are thinking.
I, I, I I have mixed beliefs, I don't think we should have two, I think we should have one meeting where they're both there and they make a presentation and we take comment. Cuz I think what the public wants to comment on is whatever the decision is, I don't think they, I don't think they're I think it's more confusing if they're, if it's like, well, it's this one or it's that one, and they wanna comment on both, I think they really wanna participate.
I think they have a lot of comments, no matter what the decision is.
Exactly, I just think, but it's just like, it's.
I think.
Be a more productive and conversation if we
As someone.
Comments and suggestions on the actual plan of what is decided.
As someone who bids on projects like this to be a consultant, it's, I have never been in a situation where I've been bidding against another team, and I'm in a proposal situation against another team, I think that's very unorthodox.
Okay, that's okay.
We have two, I think that, and.
And we also, I, I just wanna say, we had talked about, and this is before Sharon was on the board, about you know, working with somebody who could help us with this decision, cuz this is not the expertise any of us have, so I think we need to put that into place as well.
And what do you, it, it, okay, we, we. Remind, remind me, is that when you, you asked for, when, when we, well, I know I stated that Washingtonville Housing, I'm just trying to make sure this is the same situation, but I said Washingtonville Housing, not Washingtonville.
The Marana Coalition?
The Marana Coalition, um, it would be the experts, uh.
Was that the same? They, they, they've actually weighed in on a project, they can't, they're not the experts.
I mean, they're, they're doing a great job, no, I, I think, we need somebody who can help us analyze the two proposals.
Not, yeah, and I was trying to finish my sentence to say, make sure I understood what you mean.
So, but in past contexts, is that the same situation, uh, even though I know they're involved, not the coalition isn't, but Washingtonville is, but um the coalition, was that the same instance where you were saying expertise?
No, it's when we.
It, it was around the same time.
No, it was when we let the RFP, when we, when we did, when we discussed the RFP. I was, I, I, I mean, I'll go back and watch the meeting again, but I, I felt that I felt that the RFP wasn't specific enough, and I think that's why we only got two proposals.
Oh, right.
But also that we really needed to be working with somebody who was gonna help us guide a decision, because none of us are really experts in real estate development. Um, and
I, I don't think that it would be a bad idea for us to make sure we have expert opinions rather than us rushing through because we want something done, and then maybe finding out later that we didn't quite do as great a job as we want to do. Um, I don't know who the experts are, I'm sure we could find out.
So what were these, I, I wanna know what the, I want, I'm sorry, Dan, um, but I would like to know what, uh, expert, um what qualifications are we looking for, because then I will start looking for them tomorrow, so that they could be ready for the, the, the the public, the January meeting, so what qualifications are you looking for?
We wanna look at somebody who um can help us evaluate which proposal is better for us. So somebody who's got, you know, it could be somebody with planning expertise, somebody with real estate development.
So like, somebody like um Greg, who is our pla- uh, planning, I mean, uh, uh, planning department, head of our planning department or even Gino, who's, well, he's an engineer of housing and stuff like that, but um Greg, or even Carolina, and, and, you know, building expecting and all that, are those experts?
I, I don't.
I think we can get people to uh, uh, get those people to show up at our public hearings, I mean, I, I got a, a several I can call right now, or, or, so we can, we can get them there.
I, I don't think that any of our staff members are experts in real estate development, I think they're all municipal workers, but they're not real estate developers, and I think we need somebody who's got expertise. It might be a team of people, actually, who, who know how to evaluate these proposals in ways that, in, in ways that we're not, and, and ask questions that we're not gonna be able to ask.
Yeah, there were questions about purchasing of land, leasing of land, the parking lot, the purchase, and then us paying back, you know, the one point five million out of the five million. I think there's a lot of technical things here that we are not experts on. And it would be best to have somebody who could go through that, make sure we understand what we're committing to.
So purchasing a land, anything legal, we got Bob, right, Bob? Right, good job, no?
Yes.
Okay.
So for an affordable housing project, we should not have an expert in the field, we should just.
No, no, I'm just not saying that, I'm just.
No, but I was saying it's a combination.
Yeah, no, Nora said multiple people, so I'm literally like naming some people and just, I'm.
I think it should be an outside source.
The legal part, we can handle.
Yeah, I don't mean the legal part of us handling, I mean for the consulting.
Other things.
Look at the RFP, to look at the bids, to, you know, protect us, basically.
Okay.
So, I mean, I, so, I think, I mean, I, I'm, I'm trying to, I mean, I think we need somebody who has experience in Seeker, who has experience in affordable housing and can help evaluate, um ha- evaluate objectively, who doesn't have any stake in the game, who's not somebody who's bid on the project, involved with any of the bidders in the project, just like an outside objective source to um help analyze the pros and cons of each proposal, and also how it will, you know, like, there's, there's, they've said that, that they don't need variances, but do, do they need variances, somebody who's gonna be able to look at the zoning code and just help us really parse these projects, so.
So, well, I, I guess I have, I, I have two things, first, I, I mean, I, I think Greg can't perform the analysis that you're asking about.
Hmm.
Uh, but i- if, if the board wants us to look at retaining an expert, we can, we can do that. Uh, but would you wanna schedule those public hearings before we had that person brought on board?
No, I'd say schedule them and then we find.
Well, I mean, if, if the board wants, if we have to come to the board with some sort of
So how about?
Contract for the person to approve, I mean, I, I don't.
Right, there's a whole process with that.
Yeah, so.
Compromise, if everyone's okay with that. We set, I looked at the calendar, the fifteenth is a holiday, so we're not gonna meet on that Monday. We have the other two Mondays, we also have, you know, New Year's Day and all that, you know, so we have a lot of Mondays. Um, on January twenty ninth, we set aside as a special meeting for affordable housing. And that gives us a month to work on this, which, you know, Jerry, Dan can look for some options or whatever, and we'll reach out, and we'll figure out a process for what we're gonna do, we could always change a date. But at least we get it on the books for today, so that we have something.
So you, you say the twenty ninth?
Yeah, because the twenty second, the fifteenth, we have meetings, the fifteenth.
But the twenty nine, the twenty ninth, it says on the village calendar, no, it's a, oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking December, my bad, my bad.
Why does it have to be?
A Monday.
I guess, I just.
It doesn't.
I guess it doesn't technically. But I did wanna give us enough time to be thoughtful about the process. Because the last, ju- this is my personal opinion, the last thing I wanna do is rush it through and have people be really upset and not supporting something that could potentially be a really good project.
Hmm.
So I'd like to make sure that we're doing our due diligence as we go forward, and so if we do the twenty ninth, then we have to move it either forward or backwards.
There's not a lot of open dates.
Well, what, 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 what do you expect to do on the twenty ninth now?
Just have that day, have the, have the hear, have the, have the, um the uh architects come in and talk, and then have the public make their comments, that's the day, right?
Well, I, I would think, I would think we could, we could, um, we could entertain uh both of the uh respondents um before that and then make um the twenty ninth a, a third and final meeting.
So, just to, just to take a step back.
Thank you.
I mean, like I said, we, we do review plans for zoning compliance, that's something that is typically done by us. We can, we do seeker, we do zoning compliance, we do
Yeah.
All of the technical aspects that you're asking about, but is that something you don't want staff to do or, or not?
Well, that's true.
And, I mean, I'm just thinking about the projects that we do, we don't do seeker, we, we, we're. I mean, I'm just thinking about big projects that we do. We don't do seeker. We we require the applicant to pay. What I mean, let's we do it, but we also charge escrow fees. I mean, I'm not saying that 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 they're gonna be doing this, I mean. Personally, it is my opinion, having been, having worked on projects like this as part of a team that I don't feel qualified to make this determination. I feel that I I don't think any of us has experience in real estate development. I was on the original MAC board, which did not go so well for the village. And so I don't wanna set the village down a path that isn't a path we can follow. There, Helam is doing a very similar project, I think. I mean, it's not an affordable housing project, but it's a, it's a, it's a partnership with a developer to get some municipal space as well. And I I personally think that this is a very big decision for the village. I think I'm troubled by the fact that we got two responses that were wildly different to the RFP. Um, I think that may have been because our RFP wasn't specific enough. And I think that would behoove us to look for some for some outside guidance on this. And I'm not saying that any of us has the bad intentions. I just think we're, we aren't equipped to make, to commit the village to this path.
Well, I I think it's our job, uh and um uh and I think uh uh we've made the decision to put uh affordable housing on that site. Uh we have two proposals. Um, even if we approved it tonight, it would still be in uh two years of uh of uh of uh massaging before a- anything uh a shovel wet in the ground. Um, I don't think we should um we should uh analyze it to death.
We can also go into negotiations with them. It's not like a set in stone. We can go into negotiations once they, once the public has made all their comments. So literally, the the, I think that I, I mean, I'm under the the assumption that the the meeting is for the public to really have their 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 final comments, because we've had several uh several times where the the public has been able to make their comments. This is it. The people will make their proposals, then we can go into negotiations. Nothing is set in stone. But if we needed somebody, I also was in, I also was talking to the village of um Havestra, who just built um their one hundred percent affordable housing. And um the trust, one of the trustees there said that they will be willing to share any resources of any person that may have done anything in their community, which if you're looking for an expert. So I do know people, and I also know people who um who work in housing and everything in uh uh in the county. So if we need that, you need it. I can provide, I can get them to come and give you information.
I I got some names I could call tonight, uh so. I'm I'm sorry, I'm not hearing Bob.
You said uh uh um housing economics expertise.
Yeah, that's, I just wanted to understand what exactly is.
My my only last two comments, hopefully, are I don't see the harm in doing this right, and making sure that the taxpayers are comfortable with it and every member of the board is comfortable with it. And it is our job to do this, but it's not necessarily our job to rush through things. It's our job to analyze it and make the best decision possible for the village. Um, and I do agree that that is the type of expertise we need. Thanks, Bob.
I'm just looking at the calendar and for January.
Yeah, I thought maybe January twenty nine.
That's a good week because it's the fifth week, so there's no meeting scheduled. There are meetings. Um, I think maybe cuz we, I think the eighth, ninth, and tenth, that that might be two, the the ninth is a possibility. Traffic Commission, do they need here?
Yeah, but that doesn't give us enough time.
Because traffic can't, then that means I can't attend, so. Committee meeting, one of us can't attend, so.
The all, so.
The last week or the eleventh.
Yeah, those are.
I would suggest the twenty ninth, so we book it. And then we could focus on the other stuff without feeling, and then we don't have to move the date.
Let's reserve the twenty ninth and the thirtieth.
Is is everybody okay for that for now? And then we'll see how far we move with getting an expert to work and how quickly we can do that.
Um, uh, I would, I would like to hear from the respondents before that meeting, though.
What do you mean?
I'd like to know uh what what the, I mean, we gave them feedback at the at the at the presentations. And uh and uh they uh they uh, if they're smart, they've got adjustments based on our uh our feedback. I'd like to hear what what they've changed, uh um, wh- what what changes they have to present to us. We could do that in a regu- we could do that in a regular uh, in a regular meeting.
Can't even get through this agenda in a regular meeting.
You know, I mean, this is important.
Yes, it's important. We should take it seriously, and I am suggesting the twenty ninth, which gives us plenty of time through the holidays to get through. And to find somebody to work with us and to give the public enough time to show up. There's nothing wrong with going to the twenty ninth.
Let's book the twenty ninth and the thirtieth. Cuz we don't. Are gonna be good for them.
I'd rather book the days now than, and cancel one than not book it and then we don't, don't have days later.
Never know, but Committee for the Environment, I wanna have two more meetings.
Okay, whatever. I mean, what what does everybody think on this? I mean, I'm I'm hearing uh.
Okay, with, I'm okay with uh if the twenty ninth, but I would highly suggest that everybody, since it's it's our concerns to have a um some expertise in a room, that everybody do their due diligence to make sure that that expertise shows up on that day.
Figure it out before that day.
Like, that's just my suggestion.
I mean, I think we need a more formal relationship with whomever's gonna help us.
Agreed. So let's find some people, let's go through the process. And meanwhile, if you could please. The room for those two days. Couldn't hear you.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. All right, so we're moving.
Wait, 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 now, um, did uh, no, Jerry's not on the line, is he?
No, he's not.
He's out, alright.
All right, wait, so.
No, as I said, so we'll 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 look to bring something back through the eighth, if we need to retain someone. And now as far as the twenty ninth and thirtieth. Uh, so that's the days you're looking to schedule the public hearings for.
Correct.
So, first, they've they've said of, uh, they have to call for a special meeting and then schedule a public hearing or?
It's not a public hearing. There's nothing, we're not.
That was the question I raised. I I raised that last week.
On here, um, to make it a public meeting, cuz. Um, so, resolution scheduling a public meeting, meetings on the Hunter Tier Affordable Housing Project for January twenty ninth and thirtieth. Um, I'll make a motion.
I think and or thirtieth, just to cover ourselves.
Okay, and or. Uh, did you just something?
I I think we should, we we should uh, while our minds are fresh on this, I think we should get them in sooner that rather than later. And then if you wanna have a a a formal public hearing on the twenty ninth and thirtieth, that's fine, but I don't, I don't think we should just wait till then. That's uh, that 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 just seems to be waiting ju- just to wait.
It's not waiting to wait, love.
Well, looks like that, looks like it to me.
I mean, I understand that.
I I don't imagine that they're gonna wanna come and make us three, that's three presentations.
No, it's not. It wouldn't, it would just be them, them talking. And then whatever, and then the comments were, if the, if we do the twenty nine, if they do, if we do something earlier with them just presenting, it would just be them. And then if we, if they, if, when we have that twenty ninth day, that'll be for the the public to make their comments.
Yeah, my, it was my impression that that uh Jerry was in touch with them to see when they were available in January, no?
Well, they reached out, so I think a number of people, that's not a hard thing to do. I'm sure they'll be flexible, sorry. So, resolution scheduling public meetings on the Hunter Tier Affordable Housing Project for January twenty ninth and or January thirtieth. I make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution authorizing retention of consultant to assist with preparation of home elevation grant application. That's the gentleman we met this afternoon, well, earlier this evening. You, we had asked him to send in an updated scope of work. So are we not doing this right now? We're waiting. The updated scope of work.
Yeah, I mean, could we get an updated scope of work and just add it to our meeting on the twenty sixth?
Yeah, it's minor items, so. Well, the 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 eight, the twenty sixth meeting, we call it um uh AP and minor items, which gives you the flexibility. I I could ask him.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then we're gonna leave that for the twenty sixth. Resolution awarding contract for twenty twenty three, twenty, I guess, oh, twenty twenty three oh four to furnish and deliver one nineteen foot of a work boat for Harbor Master.
I explained the odyssey of this uh bid process at work session. Uh, given that it's eleven sixteen, I will defer from doing that unless you want me to do it again.
No, we have a forty one year old boat that had a lifespan of twenty five years, and we are within the pre-approved budget to purchase a new one. Um, a motion. I'll motion to the.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
I make a motion to add an item to the agenda.
Second, all in favor?
And then, I make a motion to add. Um, go ahead. Do I make a motion to um appoint a a chair to the Committee for the Environment?
All in favor? Okay, uh. Anyone like to address the board for the second time? There we go.
Fun meeting, interesting meeting. Happy to say, I think the friendly village is back. It was a lovely meeting. Everyone had an opportunity to speak. There was no interruption. I thought it was good. Didn't all agree, clearly this last issue, didn't all agree. Everybody had their say, and that's the way it should be. I also learned that um it's okay for a resident to ask a question to get an answer. And I didn't see any any harm in that. In fact, it was informative. There was a nice friendly conversation. I don't understand why that was such a problem. So I'm glad to see how that continues. Um, there's one other thing I wanted to say. Everyone has an opportunity to speak. Don't always agree.
Anything to do with traffic? Did it have anything to do with traffic?
You were saying that you were lapsing in of comments, so I was wondering if they have anything to do. Thank you.
I am here as a resident. As someone who has not only issued RFPs and then reviewed RFPs, but answered RFPs for many, many years. I think three different jobs that I've been in. Um, may I suggest any sort of loose question about getting um uh the them back? I don't think you need to have them back. If they have adjustments they wanna make to their proposals, they should put them in writing. So you should ask them which women writing, you'll have them before every meeting. They'll have amendments. You're searching for an expertise in uh real estate economics, as Rob pointed out, it certainly can't stress enough how important that is. Who's the one in the village that has the kind of expertise, you're doing a real estate development, you're even a real estate development person. But there's no reason why you can't ask these guys to put whatever changes they may have to the original proposal in writing. You should have them in writing anyway for the record. And as many copies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um. No one else? Report, President Village Manager. Uh, he's not here tonight, so I assume we're skipping that. Right, filed for the record. SLR Professional Services Agreement for Sheldon River Blood Resiliency and Land Use Assessment. And filed for the record Professional Services Agreement with AKRF for crosswalk improvements at Palmer HQ at Maricay School. Um, so, report from the clerk treasurer.
File for record, November seventh, twenty twenty three, Billy elections. And it's all mayor.
Thank you.
Uh, report from village attorney. And then for the minutes, and I assume, we, I, we've already read them and we're just perfect. Okay, minutes, uh submitting the minutes for the Board of Trustees' Work Session and Regular Meetings.
The um Board Trustees, October twenty third, it was not attached. It was, it needs work, so it'll be technically.
So let's not do that. We could do November thirteenth, please. Minutes of the Board of Trustees' Works and Regular Meetings on November thirteenth, twenty twenty three. Did it be approved?
No.
Fantastic. Minutes of the Arts Council Meetings of November second, two thousand twenty three. Minutes of the Ethics Board Meeting of October twenty fourth, two thousand twenty three. Minutes of the Flood Mitigation Advisory Committee Meetings of September twenty eighth and October twenty fourth, two thousand twenty three. And minutes of the Recreation and Parks Commission Meeting of November ninth, two thousand twenty three. And that is it.
Break a record.
Like another forty five minutes for that.